Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If you'd be kind enough to take your seats. The November 4th, 2009 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. We always make a very cautionary announcement at the beginning of all of our proceedings that this council chambers has a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system, so should alarms activate, please leave through the exits and then our marshals will tell you when it's safe to re-enter. As I say, there's no reason to expect that this is going to happen, but it is an admonition in case there is an emergency. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Leroy Spotted Eagle, Spiritual Leader of the Southern Paiute Nation, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. I'm honored again to be here on Native American Month and that the City of Las Vegas recognizes it, so I'm honored here to be with such distinguished people here that appear representing us in the City of Las Vegas. I also would like to, at this time, to introduce to you, the councilman people here, the mayor, to my friend here, who is also a councilman for the Moipabanda Paiutes. His name is Delton Tom, so would you stand, Delton?
Welcome.
So, also, so, you know, I'm, again, I'm honored that I'm able to be here and I would like to offer a prayer for each and every one of us today at this time. Our heavenly Father, Father God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Thank you for watching over us as we slept throughout the night. Thank you for watching over our homes, blessing our homes, blessing our children and our relatives. We ask you to be with us, our heavenly Father, at this time. When I ask for a blessing for each and every one of us that are here today, we ask that you bless them with good health and a long life. Bless the food that they eat, bless the water that they drink, bless their relatives that they have, our heavenly Father. If anyone is sick, our heavenly Father, at this time, I would like to offer a prayer for them so that you can comfort them, our heavenly Father, and be with them. Take care of those doctors that are taking care of the ones that are sick, our heavenly Father, at this time. Our heavenly Father, also, we thank our fellow veterans that have sacrificed a part of their life for us, our heavenly Father, so that we can be in this country free to do what we want, to speak the way we want, act the way we want, our heavenly Father. So we thank our veterans and the ones that have gone on already to the spirit world, our heavenly Father, that have paid the ultimate price, our heavenly Father, and our soldier boys that are protecting us right now, that are on the field of battle, our heavenly Father. I ask that you be with them, take care of them, our heavenly Father, give them the courage and the strength that they need to help them throughout the day, our heavenly Father, in their time. I ask that, our heavenly Father, that you be with our leaders of our country, our heavenly Father, from the President all the way down to the council members here and on the reservations of councils that they have. I ask you to bless them with the knowledge that they need so that they can make decisions for the people, our heavenly Father, in a good way, our heavenly Father. And so we ask you to bless them, our leaders of our country, our heavenly Father. I ask that you be with us, our heavenly Father, throughout this day, our heavenly Father. Watch over us as we travel to and from, our heavenly Father, wherever we want to go, our heavenly Father. Bless our homes, our heavenly Father, that we have. Bless our children, bless our relatives, bless our friends at this time. Make sure everything's good for them, our heavenly Father. And again, I ask you to bless each and every one of these council people here today, our heavenly Father, and the ones that are being honored today, our heavenly Father, as these police officers and all these citizens of this great city of ours, our heavenly Father. So we, I ask you to be with these ones that are here to be honored, our heavenly Father. I ask you to bless them that way, our heavenly Father, and we thank them for what they have done for us, our heavenly Father, for watching over us, taking care of us. Thank you again, our heavenly Father, for the many blessings that you've given us. I humbly pray. Usopp, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be careful. Be careful. Good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and the first item is the recognition of the November Citizen of the Month, and I'll turn the mic over to Councilman Anthony. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, it's absolutely my honor and my privilege to announce the November 2009 Citizen of Las Vegas, Citizen of the Month, Regina Parks. Regina, could you come up here, please? As many of you may or may not know, November is the American Diabetes Month, and Regina is an absolute inspiration model for anyone who has diabetes and is battling with that particular disease. And Regina was just recognized a couple of weeks ago up in Sun City by the Novo Nordis Pharmaceutical Company as one of their national selections for the campaign to be the face of change. And Billie Jean King, mostly you probably know her, the former tennis player champion, came out here from New York to honor Regina and give her a plaque, and I think there's probably some video that may be playing that had deals with that ceremony. That was out there, there's Regina with her puppy, and she, let me just tell you a little bit about Regina. Twelve years ago, she was living in New York. She had a very active lifestyle, went out for walks every day, felt great, went in for one of her annual checkups and find out, found out she had diabetes, didn't know it, didn't believe it, was very frightened about it, didn't know what diabetes was, and didn't know what to do. And she was very concerned, obviously, about her health and what her lifestyle would be from that point on, and she went into, for some counseling, gets, learn about the disease, and eventually she told herself that diabetes was not going to control her life, it was just going to be part of her life, and she was not going to change her lifestyle, and she was going to stay active. And eventually she moved to Sun City Summerlin, where she currently lives, and she has a very active lifestyle. She learned how to play the piano, learned how to play, to speak French, she plays tennis, she plays basketball, she told me she can dunk every once in a while. She plays golf, and Councilman Wilson and I are going to go out and play golf with her, and she says she's going to give us two or three strokes each side, so she's that good. So, and she is also a three-time medalist in the Nevada Senior Olympics for pistol shooting. She's very active in Sun City, part of the Architectural Review Committee, she's with the Sun City Library, and the most important thing to her is her dog Shannon, who takes her out for a walk every day, and when she decides, you know what, maybe I don't feel like taking a walk today, Shannon says, we're going for a walk, and they go for a walk. So it's just, it's an honor to have somebody like Regina that has decided that diabetes is not going to control her life, and she is going to stay active, and I think she's just a role model for everybody that has diabetes, or really any disease that can fight and battle and stay active in life. And I'm just honored to recognize her as a Citizen of the Month. And before I turn it over to Regina, I'd like Raylene Ernie to come up. She's with the Southern Nevada Health District. Just like to have her talk a little bit about diabetes for everybody in the audience here and watching on TV, and just tell us a little bit about it.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Raylene Ernie, and I'm a health educator and diabetes coordinator at the Southern Nevada Health District Office of Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion. That's a mouthful to say, isn't it? Anyways, I'd like to express our thanks to the council, and in particular, Councilman Anthony, for the example, to, he actually sits on our Southern Nevada Health District Board of Health. Sorry, I'm a little nervous this morning. I'd like to thank him for the opportunity for me to be here today. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Regina Parks and thank her for the example that she sets for our community. Councilman Anthony sits on the Board of Health, as I had mentioned, and we are grateful that he has embraced that role and offers, offered us a few minutes today to speak about diabetes in our community. As you know, November is Diabetes Awareness Month. Diabetes, and in particular Type 2 diabetes, is a serious public health problem. Not just in our community here in Las Vegas, but in the entire nation. Here are just a few sobering statistics on Type 2 diabetes. If current trends continue, one in three children born the year 2000 and later will develop diabetes during their lifetime, and for minority populations, that number is nearly one in two, according to the American Diabetes Association. Over 9% of Southern Nevadans have indicated that they have diabetes. Now, that number seems low because a lot of people have diabetes and certainly don't know it, like Ms. Parks, until she went to the doctor and was diagnosed. 9% of Southern Nevadans, that translates into 164,000 persons. This number has increased over the years, and it expects to increase, this upward trend, because many folks have diabetes and they just don't know it yet. Type 2 diabetes was previously known as adult onset diabetes, because adults were getting the disease, but we don't really use that term anymore because today, children as young as eight are developing Type 2 diabetes. While these statistics are very sobering, there are encouraging facts that I'd like to present with you today. First, Type 2 diabetes is a condition that can largely be prevented and well managed. Maintaining a healthy weight, eating a healthy diet, and engaging in at least 60 minutes of physical activity on most days of the week, like Ms. Parks does, can certainly help manage the condition. In fact, a recent CDC Centers for Disease Control study found that even a moderate amount of weight loss can help prevent the disease. In one study, adults at risk for diabetes who just lost 5 to 7% of their body weight, could be as low as, you know, 10 to 20 pounds, and increased their physical activity reduced their risk of Type 2 diabetes by almost 60%. So for those who do not have diabetes yet, there are certain things to do to reduce that risk. For those who have already been diagnosed with diabetes, the condition can be well-managed to lower the risk of developing further complications, including amputations, blindness, and kidney failure. Successful self-management of diabetes also includes maintaining healthy weight, eating a healthy diet, and engaging in physical activity. Our office at the Southern Nevada Health District has developed several free programs for adults and children. We invite you to visit www.gethealthyclarkcounty.org to sign up for one or more of our free nutrition and physical activity programs. We also have an online diabetes resource guide that can assist those in our community who are dealing with diabetes to find local resources and services. I'm going to show you what the guide looks like. It's just a paper guide, and in it, it has a lot of resources such as low-cost clinics, help with medications, help with dental, vision, and many other services and resources. Also classes that are given by several hospitals and different organizations throughout our valley. This guide is available in English and Spanish, and we are happy to send hard copies to those who do not have computer access. You can request a copy by calling our office at 702-759-1270. As I've mentioned, diabetes is a serious public health problem, but there are ways that the disease can be successfully managed and even prevented. Thank you once again for this opportunity to address the council on this important health topic.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's great information. I hope people take advantage of what the Southern Nevada Health District has. So with that, it is my honor and my pleasure to introduce to you a very motivational model for everyone in this community, the November Citizen of the Month for the City of Las Vegas, Regina Parks.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Councilman Anthony, and of course, the mayor and the rest of the council people. Thank you. And thank all of you for coming here today. Shannon would have liked to have been here, but she was just unable to make it. The main message that I wanted to tell you is that, please, you feel healthy, whether you exercise or don't exercise, but, I mean, if you have a headache, you take an aspirin, but you don't check for diabetes. And that is so important. I did not know I was a diabetic. How could I? I had no risk factors. I, there was no diabetes in my family, I was a good weight, my diet was fair, but I did walk every day. I have a twin brother who is not a diabetic, so there is no reason I should have developed diabetes, but I did. Now, I do, as the councilman said, I'm involved in a lot of activities. What you need to know is, in spite, in spite of having diabetes, I enjoy all of these activities. I have to take four to five injections of insulin a day. That is a lot. But it doesn't control my life, it doesn't rule my life, it just becomes like taking the aspirin. So you don't have to be afraid of diabetes. It's not a disease, it's not an illness, it's a condition. You go to have your eyes checked every year, or every other year. You need to check for diabetes. It is so important. We need more education. I mean, it's wonderful, the facilities that we do have, but if people don't know about them, and can't, they can't take advantage of these things. So that's one of the reasons that I participated in Novo Nordis, the Face of Change, and that's one of the reasons that I'm here. And if you let me, I'll talk about diabetes all day.
I won't let you. I'm not going to let you. Thank you very much, Regina, and I'd like to present with you the Citizen of the Month plaque, and over here, we have a sign that'll be up for a month, so you can bring all your friends in from New York and wherever, and take a picture with your own street. How's that? On Fourth Street. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. The good news is Regina said that when I go like this, it is exercise. Oh, two hands. Okay. For our next item, Councilwoman Tarkania will recognize the efforts of one of our dedicated community partners. Councilwoman?
I'd like to ask Dan Lyons to come up here, please. Our city emphasizes volunteerism. We emphasize community awareness and involvement, working together as a team. And today, we honor the community commitment of Dan Lyons, who for 14 years has led the Glenn Heather Neighborhood Association with vigor and dedication. He is one of Ward One and the City of Las Vegas' Most Outstanding Citizen Volunteers. Now, if I can turn the page, Dan. Okay. September 28th, 2009 marked a milestone for Dan, as he completed his 14th year as the Glenn Heather Association President. He helped organize the group, he helped support the group, he held it together for those 14 years. Now, he will tell you, he has made so many new friends doing this work, he has become intimately involved in the community, and he's had the pleasure of fighting the battle on behalf of his special neighborhood. I will tell you, he has not only given the precious gift of his time and talent, but he has helped to educate the residents of his community, and also many throughout other wards within the area. In his role as a senior graphic communications professor with the College of Southern Nevada, Dan motivates students to achieve success, and he has done the same as the leader of his neighborhood association. He's a big believer in computing technologies. He supports modern efforts in all aspects of visual communication techniques, and this certainly is displayed throughout the magnificent newsletter he produces every month. I have to tell you, it's the best neighborhood newsletter I've ever seen, and I'm very jealous of that newsletter, because I send one out each month, and it's, and then I see his, and I said, oh my gosh, can't keep up with that. He is also an author, and at one time served as the Graphic Services Manager for the City of Las Vegas. And if you look at the cover of your agenda, guess who helped put that together? Dan did. So every time we have the meeting, we're represented in some way by Dan. Dan has maintained a lifelong passion for assisting others and has helped educate others about the strength of numbers in advocating or challenging impending changes so that they can best preserve the quality of life in their neighborhood. And so today, I'd like to present to you a certificate of appreciation for all you've done, from the mayor and from the members of the City Council. Thank you, Dan, for all you've done to help us.
Well, thank you very, very much. This is an honor, to say the very least, and I have to tell you, it's, has to be shared. The simple fact of the matter is, the little things I've done, I've enjoyed doing, I'm not kidding anybody about that, but the truth of the matter is, the reason for doing it is communications. The simple fact of the matter is, we all have a problem with our lives where we don't know what's going on around us. Communication's the answer. I'm a firm believer in technology, and the way to do that is probably by the internet, it's the simplest way today, it's cheaper and faster. But I really have to tell you, the citizens of my neighborhood really deserve this award, not me. They've been very, very responsive, we've got a lot of things done, not as much as I'd like to do, but in 14 years, you do as much as you can, you stop. Somebody else can pick up the reins now, but clearly, I'm very, very honored, and I want to thank the city, the councilwoman, certainly the mayor, and the rest of the commissioners for all the recognition. Thank you very kindly.
Congratulations. Okay, for our next item, Councilman Ross is going to tell us about a group of people who are making our schools safer. Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, everybody. What a great opportunity it is for me to be here today to recognize some absolutely incredible people in our community. I am privileged today to be recognizing the School Safety Action Committee and the Northwest Area Command. In November of 2007, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, Northwest Area Command, and Denise Tomcheck, the Vice Principal at the Arborview High School, started a program that would help address and reduce a serious spike in violent crimes in our middle schools and our high schools located in the northwest. This program is called the School Safety Action Committee, and was initiated with the cooperation of the Clark County School District, Clark County School District Police Department, and the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, Northwest Area Command. The ultimate goal of this committee is to provide training and information to faculty, students, and parents in an effort to curb violence, drug usage, and violent crimes, and to create a safer learning environment. Through communication, presentations, and education, the committee has been able to achieve this goal. Law enforcement has been able to educate the Clark County School District administrators and staff about what to look for regarding such things as gangs, their signs, clothing, graffiti, truancy, and this is important. As a result, during the 2008-2009 school year, we experienced a 44.4% decrease in violent crimes that include robbery, attempted robbery, fights, batteries, firearm, and knife incidents, and that is very significant. Furthermore, the percentage of calls for service for violent crimes was reduced, and during the school year of 2006-2007, violent crimes made up 10.4% of all calls for service in the schools. This percentage of violent crimes was reduced after the School Safety Action Committee was in place. During the 2007-2008 school year, calls for service for violent crimes at schools made up only 3.9%, and in 2008-2009, it made up 3.6%, and that's huge. Not only was the trend for calls for service decreasing, but there was less violent crimes occurring, and our students, hopefully, were learning more. The School Safety Action Committee has been a collaborative effort between many different agencies, and I would like to acknowledge some of these agencies today. First and foremost, Captain Chaba Megzala from the Northwest Area Command, the Northwest Area Command Community Oriented Policing Unit, the K-9 Unit, the Crime Prevention Bureau, the Gang Crimes Bureau, DARE Youth Education Section, the Sex Crimes Unit, the Traffic Section, the School Board and School Board Trustee Terry Janison, without her help, we wouldn't have gotten as far as we have, the Clark County School District Police Department, the Clark County School District Truancy Officers, the Clark County School District Transportation, Clark County School District Administrators, and our own City of Las Vegas Detention Enforcement. And this is significant, all of these groups came together to address a serious, serious issue in the City of Las Vegas. We took a stand, and I think it was the first time in the history, since I've grown up in this city, where multiple departments, multiple organizations came together to address a serious issue about our children in our schools. At this time, I would of course like to invite up to the podium Captain Megzala from the Northwest Area Command. Captain, Chief Schofield, I can't forget you, because you are, I think, the senior officer here today, so come on up here as well. Now, I'm not done. Now, I'm not done. I also want to invite up Officer Ray Burney and Officer Craig Dahl. They are absolutely incredible police officers in this community. You need to know that, folks. Thanks for being here. And last, but certainly not least, this woman's inspiration and motivation has been phenomenal. Assistant Principal Denise Tomcheck, please come on up here. You've been absolutely incredible. I gotta tell you, these awards are not enough, and as I looked back, when the ceremonial portion started, and looked at these plaques, I thought, you know, those are nice, but that is not enough. I want everybody in this community to know the dedication and commitment of not only our educators in the Clark County School District, our own Marshals Office, but also the Metropolitan Police Department, because they are committed to keeping our families and our children safe, and they deserve our support. A round of applause. Now, I'm going to hand the mic over to Captain Megzala, because I want him also to talk about an award recently earned because of all this, I believe, and you can talk about some of your officers.
Mayor, City Council, and Councilman Ross, thank you so much for the recognition. Most recently, we submitted the Northwest Area Command School Safety Action Committee Program to the International Association Chiefs of Police, and this was an award for excellence in policing, and hundreds of police agencies throughout the world submitted their programs, and we finished seventh out of hundreds and hundreds of agencies. And Ray, you got that award? And these gentlemen went over to Denver, and they received this award from the International Association Chiefs of Police for this progressive program, and many other agencies are now looking at this program to implement in their agencies. You know, just to speak briefly, because I know people are in a hurry to leave, about the School Safety Action Committee, you know, these officers and Denise Tomcheck take this program to heart. We want to make sure that the environments in our schools are safe, that our kids aren't being bullied, aren't being injured, they're not being hazed, that they can go to school and enjoy the environment, and learn, and be educated, and not worry about, hey, am I going to get beat up today? What type of violence am I going to encounter at school today? So these folks have really took it to heart, put this program into place, and really, it's a very collaborative approach, but for the Clark County School District, Denise Tomcheck has really been the driving force on that side of the house, and Craig Dahl and Ray Burney have done a phenomenal job with Metro Northwest Area Command in pushing this program forward, and I'm very honored and pleased to have these individuals on my team, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain. Before you guys walk away, can everybody who has been part of this whole program, please stand up for us in the audience? I see a lot of educators in uniforms out there, you guys that are part of this. Come on, don't be shy. There you go. Come on. I can't forget, thank you, I can't forget, one individual on my staff, my executive assistant, Michelle Thaxton, has also been a driving force with this group and she deserves a great big round of applause. Thank you, Michelle. Denise, you want to say a few words about this because this has really made a significant difference in our community and that means so much to all of us as community servants.
First off, what I'd like to reflect upon is that it does, it takes a community and it takes everybody, as far as the city council, the, just people in the neighborhood, and there's so many different facets within the school district that helps to support to keep students safe. And again, the committee that comes together each month to address the issues. Just a brief history too, it started many, many years ago, but at that time was Captain Schofield when I was over at Western High School, about the concerns in that neighborhood when I was assistant principal over there. You know, there were plenty of fights that took place down the street from the school and quick phone call over too, at that time when he was over at Bolden Area Command, we had black and white cars over there just ready to assist us. When I moved over to Arbor View and met Ray Burney and Craig Dahl, they were immediately in my office, we were collaborating together on how to get this started. Unfortunately, soon after that was the death of Chris Privet and that really brought to the forefront of what we need to do. I'm sorry, because I always get emotional about that, what we need to do to keep kids Our children have a right to be safe at school. And again, my tears are because it's such a passion, it really is. We've come to a point in our society where, where does safety come to play when it comes to our children? And I take it as an oath as an administrator for the Clark County School District to ensure that. And I appreciate all the help I get here from the men in uniform, our elected officials. Terry Janison, again, has been huge, huge asset to helping us change policies and procedures to ensure that the students within the walls of the school where you send your children are students who deserve to be educated there. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Chief, you and I went to Western High School and I know it was a challenge for me to keep you out of trouble when we were kids. I should remember, he does have a gun. You want to say a few words about your great team?
I just want to thank the city council again and Denise that we've worked all these years to that and of course, my fine officers to do that. And Steve, you were a fantastic student at Western High School, contrary to what everybody says.
Yeah, thanks, Steve.
So I don't really want to add anything else. I think Denise pretty much said the last word and she speaks for everybody in this room and everybody that cares about children in Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, for our next item, we're going to recognize some city projects that have been honored with the DeBor Awards for Excellence in Planning. The awards were presented to the city by the American Planning Association. I'd like to invite the city's planning and development director, Margot Wheeler, to join us at the podium and the awards have special significance towards five and six and Councilman Barlow is on the blink today with a raspy voice, so we're not going to impose upon him, but we're going to ask Councilman Ross to make some remarks, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Margot, I don't know what to say. Actually, I do want to say, but I'd like you to go first, if that's okay, because this is pretty cool stuff. So can you share with us what's going on?
Thank you, Councilman and Mayor and the rest of the council. These were the awards given to this city of Las Vegas at the state planning conference recently. And one was, the first one was for a project, an excellent project, which was the Floyd Lamb Park Plan, which brought together stakeholders, persons from all different aspects of interest in the community, from off-roaders to environmentalists, to those who want to camp, to those who want to maintain it as a natural area, historic preservationists, and those interested in paleontology and the history of the area. Bringing together all these disparate interests to come up with one plan that is believed to serve best the community with the leadership of Councilman Ross, that plan was adopted, it is being implemented now, and he might want to say a few words about the reopening of the visitor's center on, what is it, December 5th?
Yep, December 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, thank you very much. This is a very prestigious, actually. Those of us who live in Southern Nevada are very proud of one of our greatest treasures and that is Floyd Lamb at Tulie Springs Park, but it's always an honor when this beautiful park is recognized by an organization as prestigious as the American Planning Association. The city's Department of Planning and Development recently received the DeBor Award for Excellence in Planning, recognizing the Floyd Lamb Park Master Plan. Before the city took over the stewardship of this park from the state, the, a planning department team led by Tom Perrigo, who has done a phenomenal job, spearheaded an extensive process to create a master plan. Input, of course, was solicited from the public and especially from the families who use the park on a regular basis. Great care was given to conserving the species indigenous to the area and the rich archaeological and historical resources. In addition, the master plan contains designs for future education and recreational opportunities for our citizen. This park consists of nearly 2,000 acres, so this was quite a task and our staff did a great job, especially under the leadership of Tom Perrigo, who put his heart and soul into this park. Tom, I don't know where you're at, but I certainly thank you for your leadership and dedication. You know where he is? All the team members were efficient, professional, and enthusiastic and I'm very, very pleased to be able to recognize all of their hard work and present with the help of my colleague, Councilman Raspy Barlow. Sorry, Councilman, I couldn't miss that one. To Director Margot Wheeler, Director of Department of Planning and Development, this well-deserved award, and that's an awesome award, Director. You got three? Okay. Then I'm gonna hand the mic over to you to finish this.
Okay. The next award that was received at the state conference was the West Las Vegas Plan Update. This is a plan that has existed in the city for a number of years and West Las Vegas was the subject of a nationwide study when the American Planning Commission National Conference came here in April '08. And a group was convened of the residents and concerned citizens in the area and a great amount of work, two full days of effort went into that work from planners all over the country to come up with the furtherance of the plans and the goals that were in that document. And when Councilman Barlow came in, his emphasis was on the implementation of that. Plans are not anything if they are not put into practice and if there is not funding and a timeline associated with those improvements. And so Councilman Barlow instructed us to update that plan yet again to ensure that its implementation in a timely manner and that is the focus of that plan and the West Las Vegas Advisory Board that he has formed is now meeting to work with the city staff and all of the departments to ensure the implementation of that plan and that it is for that community involvement and the emphasis on implementation that that award was given to the West Las Vegas Plan Update with his leadership. So that's the project for Ward Five. I'm taking Councilman Barlow's turn at the mic. And then lastly, but never, ever least, is the Distinguished Leadership Elected Official Award for Sustained Significant Contribution to the Planning Profession that was designated for Mayor Oscar Goodman. That would be you. As we all know, there's nothing that could be accomplished without the leadership of the mayor and the city council and when he came on board, he likes to tell the story, he didn't know anything about planning, but he's been an excellent student and an advocate throughout his long career here and for that, not only was he nominated by our department, but recognized by all of the planners in the state this year for his long-term of leadership in the planning profession in the city of Las Vegas and so we thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Margot. For 10 years since I've been the mayor, I've been trying to learn humility. And I would love to tell you that I'm humbled by this award, but I haven't reached that state yet. Truth of the matter is, and I say it time and time again, that government cannot do anything without the private sector and government can't do anything without having a wonderful staff who's in a position to effectuate the vision of the elected officials that are responsible for the stewardship of this community. And I thank Margot, I thank your staff, I thank the managers' office, I thank everybody who is involved on a day-to-day basis to make this the greatest city in the history of the world and on behalf of the city, I accept this award. Thank you. Okay, for our final ceremonial item, thank God, we are, Chief Spotted Eagle, did you hear that? Thank God. For our final ceremonial item, we're going to recognize a coalition of people that have come together to improve the Carter of Hope. Before I hand this over to, okay. The Carter of Hope is a phrase that was coined by Councilman Barlow several years ago. We were at a function, I believe, at Catholic Charities when we were talking about issues concerning what had thereto fore been called the Homeless Carter. And because of the efforts that the community was making, he coined the phrase Carter of Hope and that's what we refer to when we talk about that space at the north end of the city, going all the way over to City Hall, where the many people who are less fortunate than ourselves find themselves. There's been a wonderful coalition that has been formed from both the private sector, the public sector, and the 501(c)(3) charitable community. And it's with great thanks that the city, through the leadership of Councilman Barlow and the occasional leadership of Councilman Wolfson, since he lives up in Disneyland and doesn't have too many problems. We would like, get out of here. We would like to recognize some folks today and have them come up for these certificates of appreciation. The first is to Terry Lindeman. Terry, would you please come up with our Carter, the Hope Carter Alliance? Terry founded Family Promise and after a couple of bumps with the city, we were able to help her find a home where she has done a phenomenal job taking care of the people to whom I just referred. The next recipient is our chief, Gary Schofield. Chief Schofield. Chief Schofield is an activist. He just doesn't pontificate when it comes to our meetings, he's a real pragmatist, he looks at things very practically and you don't get to. Boy, oh boy, I'm gonna take back everything I'm saying, chief. This is ridiculous. Oh, okay. The chief has given us great direction, he's made a terrific difference. All you have to do is go down to Foremaster and the surrounding area and you'll see an entire change, which not only benefits the community as a whole, but also the business members who have businesses in that particular area and most importantly, the homeless folks who have received the handout where we're trying to assist them and who have taken that hand and have been transitioned into housing and into the shelters where they're able to get guidance and support, so they'll be able to become constructive members of our community. So thank you, chief. The next is Dave Schisler. Dave, are you here? I have no idea what Dave has done. Oh, that's reasonable, he works at night and early in the morning when I'm inebriated and have no idea what you're doing, but Dave is with our rapid response team and has done a phenomenal job, unbelievable job, taking care of the streets and making sure that they're clean and that the area is safe. Then we have Rich Ariola. Rich is a master at community outreach and he's the one that I'm talking about who has the handout to make sure that the folks who really need our assistance, the Ambassadors of Hope, which is a new program down there, phenomenal program where community members are actually assisting and giving these folks directions, so they'll be able to come back into the mainstream. We thank you very much, Rich. Then we have Annie, Annie Wilson? No, we don't have Annie Wilson. Yes, we do have Annie Wilson. Boy, I wish that Councilman Farlow did not have a raspy throat. Where's Annie? Right, Annie is with Metro and is in charge of their homeless efforts and has been very, very active in assisting the city and all of the folks who are involved here in making sure that those folks have a place to turn to and are treated decently and kindly by we who are trying to help them, so congratulations, Annie. Then we have Ken Lobeen. Ken is with HUD. He's been a tremendous community partner. He has promised us that we will be receiving money to take care of these issues and I hope we will. Okay, he promises that we will, but without getting the federal funds, we wouldn't be able to do any of this because it's from those community development block grants that we get the financing to make sure that we're able to carry out our job. Then Cedric Cole is here. Cedric is with our Neighborhood Services Office and I have to give them a tremendous pat on the back. They're phenomenal when it comes to taking care of these issues. I can't tell you how many times they actually touch folks in the community to make sure that when they come to us for assistance, that they're put in the right direction so they're able to accomplish their goals and their dreams and really be part of something worthwhile, so thank you very much and thank your entire office for the great effort. And the last certificate of appreciation goes to Cindy Rodriguez. Where's Cindy? Cindy is with Metro, she's not here, but Captain, Chief Schofield could accept that on her behalf. I see an awful lot of other folks who are out, who have participated in here, I see, I don't want to start calling people out individually, but you know who you are, you know who are involved with the, helping these folks who really need our help, so very, very badly. Right, we have our rapid response, we've got the Neighborhood Services, we have our folks from Salvation Army, I'm sure the representatives from Catholic Charities. Would everybody please stand who's involved? Please, you know who you are. Let us give them a round of applause, please. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You have to feel real good about yourselves because you're doing the Lord's work out there and when you get up in the morning, you're really spreading the blessings around our community, so I thank you so very, very much for your contribution, we really appreciate it. I joke around a lot, but I'm serious when I say to you that the city owes you a great deal of thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Mayor, if I may? That was not the last item of business, actually, Your Honor. It's a staff mix-up, I'm sure, if you'll allow me. You want to leave? Well, we'll come back because... Last month, the Nevada League of Cities held its annual conference in the city of Henderson and it was a great conference held and attended by city-elected officials and staff members from across the state of Nevada. Councilman, would you join me here for a minute, just for a second? At the awards banquet, Councilman Barlow and I serve on the Nevada League of Cities and he serves on the National League of Cities. At the awards banquet, Mayor Goodman was awarded the league's Public Official of the Year Award for his tireless efforts in promoting the city of Las Vegas and the state. Do you want to go get that?
I would.
Okay. Now, unfortunately, when the mayor received this award, he was unable to take the trophy with him, so Councilman Barlow and I would like to present it to him today. I have no idea where that came from. Now, I've got to tell you about the award. This award goes to the Outstanding Public Official of the Year and there are many names on this trophy and it goes, every year, a new elected official gets it and I just want to say it's about time because, Your Honor... Your Honor, it's about time. You've done a fabulous job promoting the city of Las Vegas, the people of our city, Southern Nevada, and the entire state of Nevada, and I'd like you to actually tell the story about the glass half-full or half-empty. Half-empty, Your Honor?
I have no idea what that means. All I would tell you is everybody is invited to share this trophy with me about noon time. Well, it's five o'clock somewhere around noon time. What happened? No, I said it's five o'clock someplace at noon time. So, I am not a selfish person. I want everybody to just share in this libation. I appreciate it. No, this is great. And once again, the comments I made before, you can't do anything without everybody being part of a team, and I have the best team in the world here in the city of Las Vegas. I see my staff is here. They should be working instead. It's unbelievable. No one's here answering the phone. What do you have to do? You have to see me get my booze? Stop it. It's a wonderful city. It's a great thing. It's great we can laugh at ourselves, you know? During these very challenging economic times, to have a bit of a sense of humor goes a long, long way. And this morning, we're going to have a great council meeting. We're going to be talking about things that are going to redefine us as the great city in the world, and it's all going to take place right here in this chamber. So, let's all enjoy it. This is a good day for the city of Las Vegas. Thank you very much. Wait, 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 folks, I've got a very important thing to say. Don't leave, particularly if you're involved with the Carter of Hope. I left out the most important person. I left out the most important person, the one who really has guided us, who has taken us through all the meetings, who has done all of the hard work for the city of Las Vegas, and that's Orlando Sanchez, our deputy manager. Orlando? Bailey, where's Bailey? Yes, please. Bring her up, please. Okay. Does she know it?
Yeah, I just handed him the call.
Okay. I know, that's what... It's a shame. It's a shame, because everything we're doing now that he wants to be part of, to make it into a great city, is going to be for good. All right. Please, I don't... No, I know. And the last thing in the world is, I would never do anything to put your harms way, so I guess we don't have a choice. I just hope we have the votes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you still want us to come when you get your tenure pin tomorrow?
Oh, yeah. That's very good. It's very good. Okay. All right, good morning, once again, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce a young lady who is joining me here today. Bailey Whitley is 10 years old, and her father was kind enough to make a contribution to Nevada Childseekers, which afforded her the opportunity to be by my side. And Bailey, why don't you tell everybody what grade you're in and what you want to do when you grow up?
I'm in fifth grade, and when I grow up, I want to be an architect.
Very good. And what school do you go to?
I go to Dean Allen.
And you get all A's, don't you?
Yes.
I know it. I have never been wrong with that. Since I've been the mayor, whenever I tell somebody they get all A's, you can tell it by their eyes. Their eyes are bright, and they're bushy-tailed, and it's a great thing. So, it's a wonderful having you with us. And the way you vote, green is yes, red is no, and the middle one is you abstain. Okay, I'll let you know what we're doing.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, that's wonderful. We'll start with item number 10, which is any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have a couple items. Item number 32 is a public hearing on abatement at 1054 Benita Avenue. Staffs ask that to be held in abeyance until our 11-18-2009 meeting. And item 43, a review of conditions for a massage establishment license at 7250 Peak Drive, Suite 106, Chiropractic Healing Center, Unlimited Inc. Doing Business at Chiropractic Healing Center. We've also had, at the applicant's request, that be held in abeyance until our 11-18-2009 meeting. And Mayor, if I could, I'd like to make just a kind of a plea from the other council members. Because of one of our planning commission meetings that got canceled or postponed, we would ask if we have any items to be held in abeyance, if you just note these dates, 11-18 or 12-16, we'd like to have them... Beverly would like to have those obeyed to those dates. Are there any other items we need to report at this time? Here and then, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these two items forward, take the appropriate action, please.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that. Oh, I did it wrong. We have to do it this way. I'm sorry. We'll do it this way. And then we push this button. There you go. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11, approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of October 7, 2009. May I have a motion, please, to approve those?
Yes, Your Honor. Auditions and admissions, I'd like motion to approve the minutes, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Items 12 through 21 are on the consent agenda and are considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time? And I do have one, Mayor Pro Tem, and that is, even though I'm going to abstain from it, I would like to have item number 12 continued to be heard in conjunction with items 40 and 41. Item number 12 is approval for final funding of arbitration expenses and for the law firm of Kemp Jones and Colthard LLP to represent the city of Las Vegas in an arbitration filed against it by Asphalt Products Corporation over the construction of Washington Buffalo Park Phases 1A and 1B for the amount not to exceed $200,000. This is in Ward 4. I have to abstain from those items because of a partnership relationship that I have with one or more persons associated with AGO and a real estate investment in property up at Apex.
Thank you, Your Honor. Are there any other items?
Mayor Pro Tem?
DeFiore, please.
Could I ask for item 15 to be brought forward, please?
All right. Okay, any others? I'd like motion to bring item... Or we approve items 12 through 31, with exceptions of 12 and 15, with all conditions, please.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. All right, the motion carries. Thank you. And now we'll call item 15. Item 15 is approval of an extension of a temporary beer/wine cooler on-sale license for Hanson Hospitality Group Inc. Doing Business as Buzz BBQ, 7121 West Craig Road and Suite 101. This is in Ward 1. Mr. DeFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, I have to make a correction on this item. This should be itemized as Ward 4 in Councilman Anthony's Ward, and I did not have a chance to brief him, so, Councilman Anthony, this is an extension of the administrative temporary license. We would ask the council to approve a six-month extension while the investigation is being completed by Metro.
All right, Councilman Anthony, would that be your motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman.
In relationship to this, I did have an inquiry from a resident about why these are being extended, and I thought maybe we should just explain that they're being extended, because we give temporary while we conduct investigations and ensure that everything is going right and that these are people who deserve to be able to do these businesses. And if it shows that they are such, then we make it permanent or we move forward accordingly. The temporary is to give us time, as I understand, to do the investigations.
That is correct. The 90-day administrative temporary license was approved by council in July of this year to allow businesses to get into business sooner than normally it takes through the investigation. The extension of the temporary license, as in this item, would be to allow Metro to complete their investigation, but allow the business to continue on in their operation.
And then if Metro finds something that isn't appropriate, we do not extend the temporary license.
We would bring it before the council for a full vote.
Right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please vote. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll go on to item number 32... 33, pardon me. 33 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 1425 North Main Street in the amount of $27,715. The property owner is Charlene Herman-Thrower Jr. This is in Ward 5. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open. Mr. Smith?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Allied Flooring Services, doing business as Disaster Cleanup of Nevada, to remove old fence and dispose, supply and install new fence as per drawings. That is a six-foot design to be similar to the fence on the adjacent properties. The value of the property, based on the sale date of October 2001, was $130,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses to include $27,715 invoice for Allied Flooring Services, doing business as Disaster Cleanup of Nevada. And just, Your Honor, if I may, I just want to let you know that the property owner was very cooperative with us, gave us permission to go ahead and put the new wrought iron fencing around the property, and also agreed to let us lean the property for the cost of the abatement.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much for that, Mr. Smith.
Mayor and council? Mayor? You may want to see the before picture. I know we saw the after video, but we didn't see the before picture.
All right. Are you able to get us the before picture, please? Thank you very much. And Mr. Thrower's here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Would you like to be heard?
Yes. Mr. The Councilman and the mayor, my name is Herman Throw. I'm the man on the property in question. While I'm here, there's something I'd like to bring to your attention. I noticed that you are involved in keeping the historical places active, recognizing the historical place. That particular business in question is one of the old Howlett's restaurants, and the sign there is significant to the area, and I think I would appreciate it if there's any way you could recognize that property by helping me enhance the sign or kind of improve on the cosmetic condition of the property. I think it would be helpful for the city of Las Vegas, since you are recognizing...
Well, I appreciate that, and it's not agendized at this point, however...
I know, sir.
We will make a point out of there's several different sources that we can go to, including the Centennial Committee for some assistance here, so we will follow up on that. Ms. Redwell, would you be kind enough to make sure that we can address that?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, folks. Would anyone like to be heard?
My name is Anthony Hardley, 123 today. Today, this is a step in the right direction. He said that they cleaned up the property, and the owner said, you know, take whatever it takes to clean it up, even if it's a lien against the property. The objective is, you need more people to step up, even if they don't have any money or anything, if they're the owner of the property, just come forth so everybody can get on the same page. The main thing is to clean it up for the benefit of the neighborhood, so thanks a lot.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to be heard? I'd just like to state, as a matter of record, that in this particular instance, I'm sure, because Mr. Thrower was being... This is a system that costs us about $43 million to just do that. As a... Just for the record, I'd like to say that Mr. Thrower is very cooperative here, and we appreciate that. For those who are not as cooperative, we started a policy, as you know, of being able to impose a civil fine or penalty for each day after the notification took place, which was imposed upon the property, and I'm happy to say that the colleagues over at the County Commission have finally woken up, the light bulb went off, and they're talking about having the same kind of policy that the city has. So, that's $1,000 a day. That's a good thing for the community. Yes, sir?
I want to apologize for not thanking you, the councilman and the Code Enforcement Agency, for your help, so I appreciate it very much. I forgot my upbringing. Thanks, as always, in my category. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow, are you able to do it?
Yeah, I think so, Mayor. I'd want to thank Mr. Thrower for working with our office and Neighborhood Services in particular. And with that, I would like to follow staff's recommendation for the amount assessed in $27,715.
All right, thank you.
And also, I would like to ask that... I apologize, but my throat is completely gone. Ask that Mayor Pro Tem carry the remainder of my items. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I'll be happy to.
Very good, thank you. All right, let's vote on that, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 34 is a public hearing to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of abatement costs, daily civil penalties, and accrued interest for the properties located north of Okeebank Boulevard on the east side of Buffalo Road for a total of $76,789. The property owner is J&amp;D Financial Services, Inc., and this is in Ward 2. This is a public hearing, which is now declared open. Mr. Smith?
Again, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that today's hearing is a request from J&amp;D Financial Services, Inc. to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of civil penalties imposed on the parcels at the city council meeting on November 5, 2008, in the amount of $76,789.1. The cases were generated on February 12, 2008, and were a violation of Las Vegas Admissible Code 9.04 nuisance. The properties were abated on July 24, 2008, and liens recorded at Clark County Recorder's Office on November 18, 2008.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Smith? All right, folks, are you representing the property owner?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Kemfer?
Yeah, finally, please, Your Honor. Good morning, Your Honor, members of the council. Chris Kemfer here on behalf of Valencia Investors LLC. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Wilson for allowing this item to be brought before you for consideration. Our client is the holder of the first deed of trust on the property, and our client consists of an LLC, which is basically 90% or more of Nevadans, lifelong Nevadans, who have hoped to retire by this particular time and hopefully with this particular property, but that doesn't look like that's going to materialize. A representative of our client is in the audience today. That's Cam Usher here. If you have any questions, appropriate for her consideration. Here's where we are. Our client is in the process of getting the property back by way of deed and lieu of foreclosure. We should have that in our hands, hopefully by the end of this week. As you can well imagine, it's a big enough blow to realize that property that you have a note on is now worth half of what you loaned on that particular piece of property. It's a further blow...
on the parcels at the City Council meeting on November 5, 2008, in the amount of $76,789.1. The cases were generated on February 12, 2008, and were in violation of Las Vegas Municipal Code 9.04 nuisances. The properties were abated on July 24, 2008, and liens recorded at Clark County Recorder's Office on November 18, 2008.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Smith? All right, folks, are you representing the property owner?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Kemper?
Yeah, fine, I'd please, Your Honor. Good morning, Your Honor, Members of the Council. Chris Kemper here on behalf of Valencia Investors LLC. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Wilson for allowing this item to be brought before you for consideration. Our client is the holder of the first deed of trust on the property. And our client consists of an LLC, which is basically 90% or more of Nevadans, lifelong Nevadans, who have hoped to retire by this particular time and hopefully with this particular property, but that doesn't look like that's going to materialize. A representative of our client is in the audience today. That's Cam Usher here. If you have any questions appropriate for her consideration. Here's where we are. Our client is in the process of getting the property back by way of deed in lieu of foreclosure. We should have that in our hands, hopefully by the end of this week. As you can well imagine, it's a big enough blow to realize that property that you have a note on is now worth half of what you loaned on that particular piece of property. It's a further blow to realize that in addition to being several hundred thousand dollars or more upside down in that property, that there's been an assessment on that property because the owner of the property failed to maintain it in the way in which that property owner should have. So we agree with staff. Staff's recommendation is that it not be below the $10,295, which was required to clean the property up. What we're going to have to do, you know how that works, there'll be a capital call. These people will have to put additional dollars into that. One point is, we heard today that the property may have also now needed some additional work because of the period of time that the city cleaned it up. And now, Cam has assured me that once they have that deed in lieu of foreclosure in their hands and have the legal right to go on to that property, that they will make sure that that property is cleaned up and kept clean. What they're asking respectfully, in fact, they are begging, is that the reduction be made to the $10,295, that they be given a period of time to pay it. They would like until December 15 to get the other members to come up with the money to pay that with the assurance that they will keep that property in good condition and repair. So we respectfully request that to be your recommendation.
So otherwise, that instead of placing the lien on it, they're ready to make a payment forthwith as soon as they get the title back?
I think there may be a lien on it now.
The lien is already placed.
So we would just like your direction that upon paying the $10,295, that the lien would then be released. And you have Cam's personal assurance that they will keep the property maintained until such time as, well, they can sell it, I suppose.
Very good. Any questions to Mr. Kemper? All right, a public hearing? Yes, sir?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I want to know if they've made any attempt to modify the loan or anything on that foreclosure. You know, the thing is, if these banks and that come to throw the people out of the houses in this economy, I have no sympathy on it.
These aren't even houses, so...
Okay, I don't believe these are houses, Mr. Farlow. These are raw pieces of land.
That is accurate.
Yes, that's what we were briefed on yesterday. Yes?
Again, it's about progress and for the city getting the money that's due them. And if any kind of way property can be salvaged in any way, remember it because it's a tax liability. As long as there are structures standing, you understand? That property is taxable and brings some revenue. But if you end up being a vacant lot, that's when the most danger occurs. So anytime you can save a piece of property in any amount, regardless of what pharmacy and what level of foreclosure, whoever, the objective is that property can be saved and it's in a tax interest for all of us. And then it's an embetment for the neighborhood. So if you can save whatever, please do that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Mr. Smith, do you have any pictures of this property? I didn't see in your presentation pictures of the property. Because these are vacant lots. Is that right, Mr. Kemper?
Yes.
Let's just make sure everybody knows what we're talking about here.
The property has had some overgrown vegetation growing back on it, and the current state of the property, as these photos will show.
What you're showing, Mr. Smith, are four pictures of basically three vacant parcels that are adjacent to each other. Is that right?
Correct.
What was the nuisance that we had to abate?
Just overgrown vegetation all over it and trash and debris all over the property. There was, I believe at the time, there was some couple vagrants living on the property. And so when we went in and abated it, we cleaned all the vegetation off, cleaned all the trash and debris and all the dumping that was on the property out of there, put a fence around it and posted the "No trespassing, no dumping" signs.
Okay, and that comes to the tune of about $10,295?
Correct.
That's the actual cost that the city has paid out?
Correct.
To abate this technical nuisance? Is that right?
That is correct. That does not include staff time. That is actual invoices that we paid out to a contractor. Yes.
Okay. Now, at the time that we did all this, was the homeowner then responsive to any of our notices and mailers about abating the nuisance themselves?
Not at all.
And that's why the city had to go in and do it?
Correct.
Okay. Now, since that time, Mr. Kemper, your client has taken, not legal ownership, but you, I don't know how to describe, the legal relationship your clients have with the property. How would you describe it?
Well, they have the first deed of trust on the property. And the owner of the property, the guy who should have been cleaning it up, has now said, "Don't foreclose on me. You don't have to. I'll give you a deed in lieu of foreclosure. You can take the property back. And once we get it back, then we're able to legally go on the property and make sure it stays."
And you're in the process of doing that, correct?
I have been told by Cam that she spoke with a gentleman today who says he has a deed in lieu of foreclosure. We're hoping to get it by the end of this week.
Okay.
But in any event, we're going to, we'll pay, whether we get the deed in lieu of foreclosure or not, we'll pay the money.
Yeah.
It's just a question of being able to go in and clean it up. You don't, I don't have to tell you, we don't have the legal right to go in and clean it up unless we own the property.
You have no objection to the payment of the $10,295? You'd like a waiver of the civil penalties, which were $65,000?
Yes.
Okay. And those civil penalties, have we leaned this property for those civil penalties yet, Mr. Smith?
Yes, we have.
Okay, so if this council votes to waive that civil penalty, there's a process where you can lift the lien to that extent?
Correct.
The extent of the $65,000.
Correct.
And I'm getting an assurance from you, Mr. Kemper, that your clients will maintain the property during this interim... Well, you can't do it now because you don't own it. But you're confident that your clients will take legal ownership of the property within the next 60 days?
Absolutely. Well, we're going to do one of two things. If he doesn't give us a deed in lieu of foreclosure, we're going to foreclose on the property. We're going to get it back. And once we get it back, we'll make sure it's clean and stays clean.
Okay, and that's very reasonable. What I'd ask, Mr. Smith, is that you just keep an eye on the property, work with Mr. Kemper, because I don't want all the weaves and all the brush and all the mattresses or whatever to come back onto this property during this period of time. I'm sure Mr. Kemper, through his client, will work with the City of Las Vegas.
Absolutely.
So my motion is to waive the $65,000 daily civil penalty that was imposed, but to maintain the $10,295 actual cost.
That's the motion. Let's vote.
Councilman, may I also say that we have until December 15 to make that payment, since they do have to do a capital call?
That's perfectly reasonable.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's part of the motion, then. Let's vote on that, please.
Yes.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wilson, thank you very much. On behalf of all these investors, thank you.
Item 35 is a public hearing to consider a request for a waiver and/or reduction of fees for the property located at 558 Codosa Avenue in the amount of $40,999.32. The property owner is the bank, Morgan JP Chase, and this is in Ward 3. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Mr. Smith?
Again, Mayor and Council, Devin Smith, Manager of Neighborhood Response. Today's hearing is a request for the agent to consider the request of a waiver and/or reduction of fees imposed on the parcel at the Las Vegas City Council meeting on January 9, 2008, and November 5, 2008, for a total of $40,999.32. The case was generated on August 16, 2007, was in violation of the Las Vegas Municipal Code 9.04 nuisances, 16.08 dangerous building, and 16.31 vacant building. The property was abated on September 24, 2007, and August 14, 2008, and have two liens that were recorded at the Clark County Recorder's Office on February 8, 2008, and November 18, 2008. Neighborhood Services received a request for waiver and/or reduction in civil penalties application dated July 28, 2009, on behalf of the buyer, Svetlazor Morve, requesting the civil penalties be waived. On August 12, 2009, Stephen K. Harson, Director of Responds, explained the procedure was in the procedure for the process.
If I could, Your Honor?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Smith, what is the cost that we, the city, has of this property at this time? The total cost?
Disaster Cleanup of Nevada, the invoice amount was for $8,950. And CH Construction on the previous one was $2,794. That was the actual cost.
That's about $11,000 then.
Yeah, the total was $11,848.50.
Okay.
All right. Matthew Dushov, you representing the property owner?
Yeah, 3320, Matthew Dushov, 3320 West Sahara, representing JP Morgan Chase Bank. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with Mayor Pro Tem Reese and negotiate this matter where I believe JP Morgan Chase will be paying the $11,848.50 plus, I believe, additional $10,000 in this matter for a total of $21,848.50 to remove the lien and any interest the city has on this property. They are in the midst of selling this property right now, and we should be able to have a check cut to the city for that amount next week.
Your Honor, Mayor Pro Tem, if I may, there was, we're showing that a payment was made, and I'm not sure how it got made, on 9/09 for $3,296. So the actual cost that we'd be looking for, not including the civil penalties, would be $10,292.
All right, it's a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Is this a house? Is this a residence?
Yes.
JP Morgan Chase, in the last quarter, just recorded record profits. Profits just border on the old scene. They want to reimburse their leadership of, what is the COO? They want $120 million. I want to know if JC Morgan Chase tried to modify the loan of the people that had it in the foreclosure. I want to know the nitty-gritty on this. And if they didn't, no mercy should be shown to these people. This is taxpayer money that JP Morgan Chase is getting retro. And I'm, this is, and to kick people out of their home is just unconscionable. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Hodges. This is a good thing. We're not picking on them because it's a big institution, but at least they are going to step up and make pay. Now, that last item I was up here about, it ended up being a vacant lot. You do get some tax on even a vacant lot, but if it's got buildings on it, it's for the better good for everybody. But anyway, I want to apologize for the last item, and I want to say, I'm not going to jump on the bank, but as long as y'all pay up and the city get their money, that's the name of the game. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing then. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much. Okay, then, so what is the city owed at this time without the civil penalties?
$10,292.
See, you save some money. I appreciate meeting with Mr. Dushov. I feel like the City Council has been a little bit repentant in the civil penalties when people come forward and try to do what's right. There was a civil penalty assessed to this property of $25,000. I, like I said, we did meet, and Mr. Dushov has promised that his client will come up with an extra $10,000. So I would move to waive the reductions of the civil penalties from $25,000 to $10,000 and to make sure that the $10,292 for the city's involvement would be taken care of as soon as possible.
All right, that's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post.
I appreciate the thank you. We'll have a check cut for $20,292 to the city for next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 36 is a report from Pam Gallion, Executive Director of the University of Nevada, Las Vegas, Cannon Survey Center, on the results of the citizen survey.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers and Ms. Bailey. It is a pleasure to be here today to present these results to you.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Pam Gallion, the Director of the Cannon Survey Center, UNLV. We conducted a survey with approximately 1,000 residents of the City of Las Vegas. And we used computer-assisted telephone interviewing. The data was collected between August 12, we just completed on August, or October 10, 2009. Of the 1,049 interviews that we completed, we used 972 in the final analysis. We kicked out anybody from the dataset who we couldn't verify was a resident of the City of Las Vegas. Responses were screened by zip codes and nearest major cross streets, and the boundaries of Las Vegas made collecting data in Las Vegas a very, a challenge. That's why it took us approximately four weeks extra than we thought it would take. My interviewing staff made up to seven attempts on each number. One thing we did in this, it included both a telephone and a cellphone frame, which is new in the field of survey research. We attempted to reach those approximate 34% of 18 to 34-year-olds who have a cellphone only. This does affect overall response rates, but we did manage to, out of this number, to complete about 56 surveys with the cellphone frame. This graph just shows the ward representation of respondents. We did attempt to make sure that we were pretty evenly distributed. There is a, it's about a 94-page report that you will be receiving. All of the data is broken down by the overall results of the city and then by wards. And these are just the percentage of respondents in each of the wards. One of the major aspects of the survey that we were trying to discern were the satisfaction with the citizens of the City of Las Vegas with city services. They were asked for each of the following services, indicate if you're satisfied, your level of satisfaction. We also instructed them to refrain from answering if they had not used the service or were not familiar with the service. On each one of the services that we asked about, of the 28 services, there were between 18 and 27% of the respondents who reported that they did not have any experience or know about that service. High levels of satisfaction were measured by combining satisfied or very satisfied responses. The percentages are presented overall and by ward. These are the services that have the highest level of satisfaction. Communication received from the city, 82%. Emergency medical services, 82% satisfied. Availability of programs and services offered to youths, 81% satisfied. Availability of programs and services offered in general, 80%. The function and reliability of the sewer system, 80% satisfied. Variety of programs and service offered to youth, again, 80% satisfied. And animal control, 80% satisfied. The lowest levels of satisfaction were still very high and came in at about 69%. Respondents were also asked, due to a cut in budget, some services may have to be reduced for each of the following services, which was a list of 22 services. We asked the respondent to indicate whether it would be a very good, very bad, or bad service to reduce. There were, on this particular question, there is between 1.5 and 3.7% non-response for each of the items, so quite a bit lower than the previous question. To the results are presented, the bad and very bad responses are combined to measure the service respondents do not want to reduce. And in the main report, the percentages are presented overall and by ward. Services residents of the City of Las Vegas do not want reduced. Safety services, 87% do not want this service reduced. Response time to traffic occurrences, 86%. Youth programming, 86%. Response time to medical emergencies, 86%. Response rates of violent crime, 86%. Fire prevention, 86%. Senior programming, 86%. Traffic enforcement, 86%. And the response time to violent and non-violent crimes, 86%. So people don't want, even in this time, for services to be reduced. There's another question where we did ask if they are willing to pay for this, and not so much willing to pay for it. Surprise.
We believe in free lunch around here.
This was, this was, this question was the effects, the actions that the City of Las Vegas should be considering during an economic downturn. The respondents were read description, keeping in mind the current economic downturn, which items, if any, should the City of Las Vegas be considering at this time? There were 12 items on this list. Again, the percentages in the overall report are presented by ward. And 20% indicated all services should be reduced, and 8% said that no services should be reduced. So the way this question was framed, it was, do you want, what programs do you want money moved to from other programs? And the top three were programs for seniors, 62%. And the top three were programs for seniors, sixty-two percent. After-school programming, sixty percent. And services for low-income families, fifty-seven percent. There was another survey question where we asked the respondents to try to quantify the effect of the economic downturn was having on them. And in the City of Las Vegas, a quarter of the respondents responded that they are, have been greatly affected by the economic downturn, and about forty percent were on the side that they really, really are suffering during the economic downturn. But yet, during this, these are the, these are the programming that they want to keep and they want funds moved to. Programs respond at least want funds moved to are cultural programs, twenty-six percent, and parks and recreation, twenty percent. Another question was, for the following items, please indicate if during a recession, the city should have more, less, or about the same emphasis on each of the items. The measure of emphasis was for eighteen items that were read to each of the respondents. By the way, this survey did take about twenty to twenty-five minutes to complete. There were, even though it said fifty questions, the survey did generate in excess of two hundred data points, so there was a lot of, lot of data in this survey. City of Las Vegas should place more emphasis on, number one, economic development to create more jobs by seventy-two percent. City of Las Vegas should place more emphasis on foreclosure prevention services by fifty-six percent. Services for seniors by fifty-five percent. Services for low-income families, fifty-four percent. And after-school programming, fifty-three percent.
Ms. Gallion, I think you're shortchanging us on that particular item, because when I read the report, it was much more emphatic than how you just presented it. It says, and this is on page six, and this is critical for what this council is trying to do, because I think it corroborates that we're on the right track as far as our mission to have our own stimulus program during these very challenging times. The quote is, emphasis, City of Las Vegas should place on service items during an economic turn-down. And this is what the report states. When looking at the services that residents want the city to put more emphasis on during a recession, the service most want is economic development to create more jobs. And that's been a theme that has been iterated and reiterated through every single council meeting that we've had when we discuss redevelopment efforts on the part of the city. I just wanted that to have an underlined emphasis, because I think that's what the report would suggest.
Okay.
Fair enough. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, yes.
And may I, just, I think you point out something critical, but I want to read the next sentence to emphasize just how strong that statement is. The next sentence says, nearly three-quarters, seventy-two percent, reported more emphasis should be placed on this item, that being economic development to create more jobs. So, it just wasn't a simple majority of fifty or sixty percent. It was three out of four people think that this council and the City of Las Vegas should put more emphasis on economic development to create more jobs.
And Ms. Gallion, are you going to touch upon the employment status in this report?
Yes.
Because I think that they have to be, that has to be juxtaposed with the emphasis on the creation of more jobs.
Right.
Because that was the most shocking part of the report as I saw it. It doesn't surprise me that people want to have jobs created, because that's what we hear every single day when we're out and about, but the number of people who are unemployed or underemployed in our city is scary.
Very scary.
No other way to put it, scary. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
And Mr. Mayor, later today, on the agenda, we're going to be considering items that oftentimes people have questioned, or they've sent us letters questioning. And I think that what you're trying to say, and what the council has been trying to say is, this isn't just about building a new cultural, you know, center, our Performing Arts Center, which is a wonderful thing to do for the community, or building a new city hall because we all want a new city hall. It's because it's part of an interwoven plan for economic development within the city. And I think that's important. It's sometimes difficult for individuals to understand, because they say, oh, my gosh, where are you getting this money for? We didn't vote on this, when it really is the decision-making of the council that this is what we need to do. And for us, I think it's wonderful that we see from your survey that almost three-quarters of the citizens involved agreed that this was critical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Another thing, the methodology that we used in this survey and the number of responses that we got, this data is generalizable, and about plus or minus three percentage points at the ninety-five percent confidence interval, so it's good data to make a decision with and to quantify what you know. Emphasis, the City of Las Vegas should place on service items during an economic downturn. The City of Las Vegas should place less emphasis on cultural opportunities, thirty-eight percent, and government access TV, thirty-one percent. City of Las Vegas should maintain the same level of emphasis on fire response service, seventy-seven percent. Streetlight maintenance, seventy-two percent. And medical emergency services, sixty-nine percent. This is the slide on employment status. Forty-three percent indicated that they were, are employed. Thirty-one worked full-time. Eleven percent worked part-time. Twenty percent are not employed, and ten, ten and a half, almost eleven percent are not looking for work. Nine percent, or, excuse me, are looking for work. Nine percent are not looking for work. Sixteen percent of the responses are employed in seasonal or temporary jobs. So, we took that data and we created a variable to define those who are either unemployed or underemployed, and I think this is the number that is so staggering, is that twenty-two percent of the respondents that we talked to indicated that would fall into a sub-sample of underemployed or unemployed residents of the City of Las Vegas. This also correlates with the previous question that we asked about how they are being affected in the economic downturn, and where we had about a quarter of them said that they're being, gave it a five, which is being the most affected that you could be during this time. Among the sub-sample, forty-eight percent are unemployed and looking for work, so half of that group is looking for work and not working. Seventeen percent are working full-time and looking for work, and thirty-four percent are working full-time and looking for work. Questions?
All right. Thank you very much for the synopsis. We appreciate that. The report is a part of a study that the city is doing. It's, we're trying to involve the constituency and find out how we can provide what's necessary during these challenging times, and I'd like Ms. Fretwell perhaps to give us an overview as to what part of that process this represents.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Yes, this is one piece of the puzzle, as we've talked over the last several months about our effort to engage our citizens more in our decision-making process. We've initiated the Your City, Your Way Citizen Engagement Project, and it has about four or five different parts, and I'd like to just very quickly hit on them. The survey was a big piece of the puzzle. We also have focus panels underway. Individuals who participated in the survey, as well as other representatives from across the city, will be discussing the outcomes of these surveys, so that they can provide some additional data to you as we evaluate what's going on in our community and how it impacts future decisions for budgets and priorities and all the things that we're working on at this point. We hope to have those wrapped up prior to the end of the year, maybe even in early December, so that we can share those results with you soon. After we finish that part of the process, we will be holding a series of town halls, at least two in each ward between January and February. We will share the survey results that you saw a glimpse of here today, as well as the focus panel results, and some recommended actions that your management team will be making to you in early January for your consideration and finalization of our budget for next year, so that citizens will have a better understanding of what services may be impacted in our community while we go through this downturn, or what actions we need to take in order to sustain services over the course of the next couple of years, so that there's a better understanding as you finalize our budget going into next year. We decided we want to reach out a little bit differently, so we are starting some online and social networking sites. So, Las Vegas will be twittering and facebooking and all kinds of things, and so one of the things we encourage our citizens to do, as you could tell from these survey results, many of them are very computer-savvy and computer-literate, so hopefully, they will take advantage of those networking opportunities and those informational sharing opportunities to help us have a better understanding of what's going on in the community as you make your final decisions about the council's priorities and the upcoming budget and service levels that we need to attain to meet the community's needs. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Pam will be willing to hang around and answer any questions if you have any at this time.
All right. Are there any questions of Ms. Fretwell or Ms. Gallion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
I think I, thank you, Mayor Goodman. I think I noticed somewhere in Pam's book that eighty-one percent of the people that were surveyed were on the Internet. Is Pam still there?
I believe so.
There you are. Is that what I, is that accurate, what I read, Pam?
Have that internet, access to a personal computer or the Internet.
Okay. And since you're back up here, I wanted to ask you another question. You said something about the reliability of this information, something about a ninety-five percent, and then, could you say that one more time, please?
Well, when we, when you look at it, we're at the, we are at plus or minus three percentage points, so whatever percentage point we talk, if we say it's twenty-two percent, it could be twenty-five percent or twenty-one percent.
You feel comfortable, Pam, with the degree of reliability on the conclusions your report has reached?
I feel absolutely comfortable. It's what I do for a living, and...
I saw after your name is M. and E.D. What's that?
Master in Education.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. I think we're headed in the right direction. Thank you very much. All right. Item thirty-seven is discussion and possible action regarding an exclusive negotiating agreement between City Parkway Four A, Inc., and PH ICE LLC to conduct feasibility investigations on property located at three oh-one West Mesquite Avenue, and this is in Ward Five. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Bill Arndt, Director, Office of Business Development. Item thirty-seven is an exclusive negotiation agreement with an LLC, a limited liability company, by the name of PH ICE LLC. It is located on a parcel downtown for, on five acres, which is owned by City Parkway Four A, Inc. For members of the listening audience, City Parkway Four A, Inc. is an affiliate company of the City of Las Vegas, set up for downtown development, including parcels in and around Symphony Park. I'm going to put on the overhead slide showing the site, because it's a little bit difficult to describe as far as the location.
If I could, Your Honor?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Arndt, on behalf of Councilman Barlow, I think this is a site that everybody remembers, where we had all those tires stored from the rate, the pre-race we had, or the after-race we had, that the tires all burnt down at this location?
That's correct. We had the Champ Car Race, which is the four-on-one style racing, and we did have some tires burned there. It has been cleaned up, and State Environmental Protection signed off on the cleanup, so, but that is the location. It's also the site which is north of a property developed by the Malaski Group of Companies, as our IRS office headquarters, as well as the Southern Nevada Water Authority headquarters. The site, as it's depicted on the overhead, is the site north of US five fifteen, south of Bonanza, west of the Union Pacific Railroad Line, and east of City Parkway. And so, it's this site here. The developer is interested in developing an office project as a response to a request for proposal and a solicitation for a new office building by the General Services Administration for what is known as ICE, ICE. That is an acronym for US Immigrations and Customs Enforcement, which is part of the National Department of Homeland Security. The developer has agreed to study the site for developing that project on that location, to study it for up to a year period, and is depositing a refundable earnest deposit of fifty-five thousand dollars. There are some existing agreements that we have that are short-term agreements between City Parkway Four A, Inc., and some private users. We do have an agreement with Three Star Autobody, which is the autobody shop on Bonanza Road on the western edge of the property, the northwestern edge, and they're using a portion of the property for surface parking. We also have an agreement with Nevada Ready Mix for temporary use of the property for staging and use of vehicular parking to help with their operations to the west of the site. And we also have a billboard with Viacom on the southern edge of the site. Those agreements are all in a position that they could be terminated if we chose to move forward the projects or needed to terminate. The billboard in particular could either be terminated or assigned to the developer. This agreement is an exclusivity agreement, so we're not committing terms as far as a sale price or any incentive for the developer. It's really meant to give the developer an opportunity to study the site, to see if the project makes sense. Last, I'd like to point out that there is a plan with NDOT to expand US five fifteen, and that expansion plan could have some impact on the site, particularly on the northeastern edge of the site. We have disclosed this to Mr. Worthington and Mr. Malaski's company about trying to come up with a solution that really accommodates the development, yet still allows that freeway expansion to move forward. With that, I'd like to turn it over to representatives of the developer we have with us this morning, Erwin Malaski, as well as Richard Worthington.
Gentlemen?
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Honorable City Council members, and good morning to you, young lady. My name is Erwin Malaski, and I'm the Chairman of the Board of the Malaski Group Companies, and with me is Richard Worthington, the President of the Malaski Group of Companies. And we are here today to seek your approval to start the process of bringing another federal agency downtown. We've been working with Bill Arndt, Arrent, is it? And with Scott Carter from your Office of Business Development, and a DDA will follow. We are attempting to look at the site with all of its constraints and challenges and design a building that we can submit to GSA for their request for proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Worthington?
Yes, good morning, and I just want to take a moment to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for consideration, and I also want to thank staff for the time they spent on this. Our company's been working on this project since July, and we're very excited about competing for this proposal. We believe it'll bring one hundred and fifty to two hundred jobs to the downtown area. This is for Immigration Customs Enforcement's offices. This is not an overnight facility for immigrants or detainees. I don't want to lay your fears in that, in that regard. It's a sixty-seven thousand square-foot building that we're planning at this point, three stories, on what I want you to understand is an incredibly impacted site. And if I may, this aerial's a little bit hard to look at, but the site is impacted by a rail spur which cuts right across the center of the site. Thank you, Bill. And south of that is a fairly significant sewer line that bisects the property almost directly east to west, and the property is actually very irregular shape, too. Let me just show you this image. It really shows up, but, as you can see, the outline of the site here, it's a very irregular shape, so it's a difficult property to deal with in terms of the spur, the easements. There's also a major drainage easement on the south side of the property, so we were very lucky to be able to squeeze a building in pursuant to the government's requirements for setbacks on new federal facilities and develop site parking in the proposal. So, again, we're grateful for staff's time on this, and we'll be back before you with a DDA that sets forth the terms of the agreement, and we remain available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, or comments?
Your Honor, just a comment. When staff briefed us on this, I made a comment to this. Bringing this kind of building to that area, I know that, all of us know that neighborhood well, that is significant. This is going to make a significant impact on the people who live in that area, on the crime in that area, on the traffic... on the crime in that area, on the traffic in that area. So I hope you guys get this on and keep moving in this direction because it's really going to be a good thing for that area.
Yes, and thank you for that. And I just want to make another comment, as Bill mentioned to or alluded to earlier. City Parkway Four was the other transaction that we did a few years ago. And that generated four hundred thousand square feet of Class A office and nearly eleven hundred visitors and residents in the downtown in that commercial building and complex, along with many commercial amenities to the, what we'll call the Symphony Park adjacent neighborhood that we're very proud to be associated with. So we have a track record, and we're very proud of the idea of bringing this development across the north side of the freeway to Bonanza.
And Your Honor, if I can, and Mr. Worthington, that's exactly what I wanted to mention. We're moving on this side of the freeway. We're moving on this side of the tracks, so to speak. And that's significant for that neighborhood, the people in West Las Vegas right there. That's huge.
Well, the theory about redevelopment, that you plant seeds that grow fruit that eventually spawn other trees that grow, is really a true one because here we're leapfrogging across the freeway. And who knows future opportunities? We may be talking to our neighbors about other buildings along Bonanza, and that's really how it starts.
Councilman Ross, you're absolutely correct. This is a new venture that we hope to get on with the GSA. And it is across the freeway, and it is the start of what could be a larger concentration of office buildings in that area. I think this is a good start, and we are, I think we're in a position to try to be very competitive with the GSA on this opportunity.
Your Honor, one more time. If I can, Mr. Malaski, absolutely. It's exciting to see this because as I've grown up here and, you know, been by there thousands and thousands of times with Mr. Ahern up the street doing some significant things that he wants to do, that he's already got entitlements for, the things that you guys are doing. And Councilman Barlow, it will really change the entire face of that corridor. And that's really exciting as we progress through the city of Las Vegas. Thank you.
And let's not forget three hundred-plus jobs.
I think it's one hundred and fifty to two hundred. But there will be also, am I correct? But there will be also a lot of construction jobs that are generated, been building this, if we're successful in winning the award. Oh, not to mention tax revenue, as Rich pointed out.
I don't know why that's important.
Which is true. Councilman Barlow, this is in your area. Do you have any questions?
He can't speak. He can't speak.
Oh, okay.
He's very limited.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I do appreciate you calling me earlier today, I mean, this week, earlier this week. And I am in support of what it is that you're trying to do in regards to this site, so thank you.
Thank you.
This isn't a public hearing, folks, but if you want to speak, I'll give you just a moment, please. We've got a busy schedule.
Thank you, Todd Parlin, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Mr. Malaski did a beautiful job on the previous building. And I would like to ask him if the economics will allow him to have this to be a LEEDs building also.
Thank you, that's a good question.
Mr. Mayor, I only want to say...
Wait, 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 Mr. Worthington's going to answer.
Just to answer that question, the government sets for stringent standards with LEED equivalent, LEED certified. And we have yet to see the final on that, but I believe it will be a LEED equivalent facility.
Thank you.
When you say the other side of the tracks and all that, that's a beautiful thing. But any kind of development that's going on anywhere within the city or the county or the state or whatever, that's important for all of them. We need to embrace ourselves as a nation that we got to come back. You know what I'm saying? So anything y'all doing, whether it's on one side of the track, it doesn't really matter. It's progress at its best, and I love it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
We actually straddled the tracks.
Did you want to be? Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Stephen Spahn. I'm one of the co-owners of the building right next door, four eighteen Mesquite. And I think this is a great idea. We've seen the blight of that neighborhood and the challenges that go along with a lot of dumping that goes on in that lot, a lot of homeless, that, a lot of encampments that have a tendency to get started. And so, it's very exciting to see something happen over there.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you for your comments. Mr. Arndt?
Mr. Mayor, if you could indulge me, just two more comments. Rich was correct in pointing it out that there's a tax revenue benefit to the project. Should he be successful in the competition with GSA? The property is located with the Redevelopment Agency, so the vast majority of new property taxes would in order to the benefit of the Redevelopment Agency. And Mr. Malaski was kind enough to thank me, as well as Scott Carter and my team. I'd like to recognize Stoney Douglas and my team also helped with the agreement and with the project as well. So thank you, Mr. Malaski, for the remarks.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Barlow, thank you very much. You know, the city's been very, very proactive in trying to create this type of atmosphere in that area. I remember when Mr. Malaski came in and wanted to build his IRS building. I believe that the city helped him on that. Then the Water Authority Building, where we've been able to go over there and participate in the twenty-four-hour fitness gym. This is, and I don't like to use that term, the other side of the track or separating the track. It's in the city of Las Vegas. And I know that we've got that new state building down there on Fourth Street and Bonanza. We are making a headway, and it's because of people like you that continue to surprise even myself on some of your projects that you come forward with. And I just know this is just the start. And I just want to offer my help anywhere down the line that we have to have help to see if we can't get this put at that location. So I'm going to, on behalf of Councilman Barlow, just ask that during this process that we also look at some type of a labor agreement with the residents in the area where we can and have some type of help for them because this is in their area. And we would like to, we've always tried to be consistent in trying to get help from the area. And so, I would like to put that on the record also. And with that said, I would follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item to get this started.
Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
We hope so. Thank you. We will be back to see you if we're successful.
All right, let's stay well.
Thank you.
Item thirty-eight is discussion and possible action regarding the third amended and restated agreement to design, construct, and lease a performing arts center by and between the Las Vegas Performing Arts Center Foundation, a Nevada nonprofit corporation, City Parkway Five, Inc., a Nevada nonprofit corporation, and the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, a political subdivision of the state of Nevada regarding the site located at three sixty-one Symphony Park Avenue within the Symphony Park Master Plan Development. This is in Ward five. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you, Mayor. This item before you today is really a cleanup item. We needed to make a technical amendment to our disposition and development agreement with the Las Vegas Performing Arts Center Foundation, also known as the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. As you know, the project is under construction as of today. It is on schedule and on budget, and we're making tremendous progress with the project. The Clark County School District has made a award from capital funds from the school district of five million dollars to fund construction costs associated with the education building. You may recall on the project, there are primarily two buildings for the Smith Center's campus. There's a large theater, and then to the west of that building, there's going to be an education building. And within that building, there are going to be programs for school-aged children throughout the year. And this is a partnership that the foundation reached with the school district. For the school district's contribution, the school district will have certain use rights to the facility over a twenty-year period, with an option to extend that for an additional twenty years. The structure of our agreement with the foundation for operation of the Smith Center for the Performing Arts is really one whereby the city is going to be owning the buildings and the real estate. And then, we're going to be entering into a long-term lease and operating agreement with the foundation to operate the facility. The foundation's going to be responsible for operating it, funding the operations with help and support from the Reynolds Foundation. But because of that, our lease and operating agreement really dictates how they operate the facility. We needed to make some cleanup to allow the school district to have use of the education building under the lease and operating agreement, which is part of the disposition and development agreement. The school district funds, as I mentioned, must be used for capital projects or facility construction. They cannot be used for operations. The funding that the school district chose to use, they're not taking money from operations. It's money that had to be used for capital and their capital programs. The Redevelopment Agency is getting a benefit because of this infusion of capital. The Smith Center, the Performing Arts Center Foundation, had promised the city and the Redevelopment Agency that they were going to reimburse the Redevelopment Agency three million dollars of the funding that the RDA put up for a contingency fund for the construction of the building. And they exceeded that three million, above and beyond the three million. They were able to get the five million dollar contribution. So because of that, three million dollars is going to be released back to the Redevelopment Agency. And then, the vast remainder of that, nearly one point five million, is going to be released to the Las Vegas Performing Arts Center Foundation to pay costs associated with construction, namely, pre-development costs so that they can continue the work that they are underway with. The city's also able to use the funds to help pay water district connection fees, which are coming due as they're progressing on the building for the education building. So the funding is in place. The school district has already approved this funding at their board meeting. You, as a council, have already approved this funding. This is really a technical cleanup item to amend the development agreement, as well as the lease and operating agreement. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions to Mr. Arndt at this point? All right, thank you very much for the report. We have a motion on behalf of the councilman.
Again, Mr. Arndt, you're very, very thorough in your reports. We, as a councilman, really appreciate that, even in our briefings. On behalf of Councilman Barlow, I know he welcomes us with open arms, and I will make a motion to follow your recommendations for approval of this item with all conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Post?
Hold it, hold it. I lost my button.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Arndt. Item thirty-nine is discussion and possible action regarding an exclusive negotiating agreement between the city of Las Vegas and the Cordish Companies, Inc. for the development of a casino hotel, a live district and sports arena on approximately twenty acres of Las Vegas Boulevard and Stewart Avenue. This is in Ward five. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you. This agreement before you is an exclusive negotiation agreement with the Cordish Companies for studying the feasibility of developing a site that we're currently actually on today at this meeting, the current City Hall campus, as well as the Stewart Avenue parking garage, and also a site that we had acquired east of Las Vegas Boulevard. On the overhead you see before you is a map showing some of the large projects that we're working on in the downtown area. The project that is highlighted in the green is the campus that we're looking at today and is the subject of this agreement. The acreage combined, when you look at the City Hall site, the Stewart Avenue parking garage, and the acreage east of Las Vegas Boulevard between the freeway and Stewart Avenue encompasses about twenty acres when you include some of the right-of-way and some of the alleyways that are on the parcels to the east of Las Vegas Boulevard. So it's potentially about a twenty-acre site that we're looking to contract with the Cordish Companies to study for development. The agreement is to study developing really a series of projects that would be built over time. One of the projects is looking at the feasibility of developing a hotel and casino on the current City Hall campus. A second phase of the project is to look at the development of a live district, which is a trademarked concept that is an entertainment destination for visitors, as well as residents. And the Cordish Companies can go into that in a little bit of detail. It's also meant to look at studying the feasibility of developing an arena, which would be built specifications that could potentially house professional hockey or professional basketball. The way we've defined that in the agreement is eighteen thousand seats or larger, and they're going to be studying the feasibility of that. The negotiation period will be for a two-year period. The developer, Cordish Companies, does have an option to extend the term for one year if they see fit. During the negotiation period, the Cordish Companies have agreed to not negotiate with any other person or entity in Clark County for the development of this project. And we think that's tremendously important. When you hear a little bit about the Cordish Companies, their reputation, and the accolades that they've received, not just from their clients, but from groups such as Urban Land Institute, we thought it was really important to get exclusivity with this company for studying this project, namely, the arena in downtown Las Vegas. Cordish will provide the city with a deposit of one hundred thousand dollars, which is refundable if we don't reach agreement for the project, whether it be the casino and the live district, or the entire three-project deal with the casino, the live district, and an arena. During the negotiation period, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We've done a lot of work ourselves as a city. You supported our engaging the CSL group out of Texas to study the feasibility of developing an arena. And we do have that report, and certainly, we received the support of Clark County in looking at the feasibility of developing an arena for the region. So I do thank Clark County for their support of that study. But more work needs to be done. We need to update that study. We also need to look at the feasibility of developing an arena and the accompanying projects on this specific site. Are they feasible? What's the market feasibility? And because of that, the city has agreed to fund a maximum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for third-party studies engaged by the Cordish Companies. We are looking to benefit from this study work really for the project. Is it going to work on the site? And because of that, the Cordish Companies have agreed that if they are unable to proceed and move forward with a project, moving into a disposition and development agreement, which would set all the terms for moving forward the project, including terms for the real estate and terms for any public financing and private financing, the Cordish Companies have agreed to transfer that work to the city so that the city, at the conclusion of the E&amp;A period, if we did not reach a deal through a DDA, a disposition and development agreement, the city would ultimately benefit from that work and own that work. In that regard, I'd like to read into the record a small change in working with the Cordish Companies. There was some language on a page of the agreement that the Cordish Companies felt was not clear. We met with them, and we agreed. So it really doesn't change any of the terms of the agreement or the spirit of the agreement. It's really some clarifying language. It's in the backup, the agreement itself, page six. I have copies for the city clerk, as well as for the mayor and council. And I'd like to read that change into the records because it's just a brief phrase to add into the record.
All right, please do that.
On page six of the agreement, the second paragraph, which begins with the phrase, "Prior to incurring any third-party expenses," at the end of that paragraph, the second to last sentence of that paragraph, we're proposing to modify it. The sentence currently reads, "In addition, ownership of all studies, reports, or other deliverables generated as a result of any approved third-party expenses paid for by the city shall be transferred and assigned to the city." We wanted to make a change because we really need to give the Cordish Companies flexibility to engage all the third-party companies they need to do all the third-party studies, namely, the design and the development. If they're to engage an architectural firm, they need to be able to have access and ownership to those studies to complete them with a firm during the term of the E&amp;A. We would still get the right to take ownership of those studies if we don't move forward with a DDA. But during the term of the E&amp;A, it was always our intent to allow the Cordish Companies to manage that work. We do have an approval right, so we get to pre-approve any of those expenses that they expend from the funds that we're allocating. But we would like to give them the flexibility to engage the architecture team with that. So the proposed change that we're making, which you have before you and which I'll read for the public, the second to the last sentence, we're proposing to modify that to read, "In addition, ownership of all studies, reports, or other deliverables generated as a result of any approved third-party expenses paid for by the city shall be transferred and assigned to the city." And then adding a new phrase to the end of that sentence, as you see in bold and in italics, and will be submitted for the record here this morning, "If a DDA is not entered into between the city and developer for the live district site and/or the City Hall site." So this is really meant to give Cordish the flexibility of engaging the design professionals that they need to do the studies to see if this project will work and succeed on the site. With that in concluding, before I turn it over to our guests from the Cordish Companies, just to like to make a few remarks about why the city selected the Cordish Companies for this project.
If I could, Mr. Arndt?
Certainly.
Okay, why do we need a deposit for this E&amp;A?
We really don't. We typically have a policy where we negotiate in good faith and an earnest deposit from a developer if they're going to be studying the site for a significant period of time. We did that with the Malaski Group of Companies. The Cordish Companies has agreed to put up the earnest deposit for the two-to-three-year period. It is refundable, so it's really just meant as an act of good faith that they're going to proceed and do all the due diligence work that they're setting out to do.
Is, is a hundred K enough, or should it be higher?
Uh, it's, it's really negotiable. Uh, typically, the, the more important question that we look to answer is, what kind of deposit are we getting with our disposition and development agreement? Because with those agreements, you have defined terms. We have purchase price, we have any incentives that are going to be provided, if any, from the city, and with that, we also have a firm development commitment, that the developer's going to be starting the project by a specific date. They're going to start construction, get out of the ground. Because this agreement really is just a feasibility agreement to study development, the, we've been a little bit more flexible with our private development partners on the deposit. Uh, with the DDAs, we have a hard and fast rule, five percent of the purchase price, but with our ENAs, we've been flexible. Uh, so, we think a deposit's appropriate. We think this dollar amount's appropriate since it's really meant to secure their performance of doing the feasibility work on the site.
Okay, what about the hundred fifty K that we're going to be spending? Uh, can you expand a little bit more on that? I have a little-
Sure, there, there are really two sets of studies that we're, we're looking to do. One is, is the project successful? Can the project be successful independent of this site? Or, uh, is, is it feasible? And for that, we have to look at each component, the hotel casino, the arena, and the live district. The arena in particular is a challenging project. It's an ambitious project. Uh, we had looked at, through the CSL study, a construction cost of approximately five hundred million dollars, and most arenas built to professional sports standards throughout the United States have had an element of public financing. Um, it's, it's a large project, it's certainly not a project that the city could do on its own. We need to come up with a public-private partnership where we have private capital going into the building and also potentially public capital. We don't have that formula nailed down a hundred percent for certain, so that's one of the big questions. The second set of work really is those feasibility studies, the design work, master planning, doing massing studies for the site, things like that.
Is a hundred fifty thousand dollars going to be enough, or is it too much?
We, we believe it's the right amount. We have that work that we've already done with the CSL group, the Cordish Companies, and I'll, I'll let our representative, uh, speak on the, the work that they've done on their own, independent of the city, looking at the feasibility of this project. They've already done a lot of work, so this is really meaning to polish off the work, really to, to know for certain, uh, if the project's going to make sense for this site, how it can move forward, the timing, and all, all the pieces of the puzzle that we need to, to make the project move forward.
You think, you think it'll be enough, though?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, may I just, on this one precise element, I would imagine that the third-party expenses are going to be much more than a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Cordish has already put out money, and they're going to continue to put out, uh, much more money, I would imagine, for the next two or three years. We're just obligated up to one fifty, so it's not like we're paying all of these third-party expenses. I have to imagine they're going to pay two, three, four, five, or many more times that amount, am I right?
I, I think that's correct. We, if, if we needed more funds, we all, we of course could come back to you and, and request them. We're trying to be mindful of our budget, and, uh, we're not immune from this downturn. Our revenues, we're projecting a drop for next fiscal year, so we're trying to be good stewards of the revenues that we have in our budget. Uh, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, you're right, it's not a ton of money. We think it's enough to get the initial studies and planning done. There's probably going to be a lot more work that's done during the DDA phase of the agreement, and at that time, uh, we, we would negotiate new terms, and certainly, Councilman, I think your observation's correct, the developer likely is going to be spending some of its own money outside of the hundred fifty thousand during this term, likely to spend a lot more money during the disposition and development agreement term of the project, should we be successful in reaching, reaching a deal.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, as I understand here, it states that, uh, we talk about the approved third-party expenses paid for by the city shall be transferred and assigned to the city if the DDA is not entered into, correct?
Correct.
Then the next sentence says, "If necessary, developers shall assign ownership of any set studies, reports, and so on to the city." Now, are we, uh, there are going to be studies done with the hundred fifty thousand we give. There are going to be studies done by the amount of money they put in. Uh, at the end of it, if they do not enter into it, do we get all the studies or just the ones our hundred fifty thousand paid for?
It, it's the latter. It's the studies that we pay for. Uh, certainly that could be negotiable if, if they did work and we thought it was, was meaningful, and the Cordish Company had the ability to maybe assign the work. We certainly could negotiate that. That's not uncommon in the private sector where you have a private development company and work on a project, they can't get it across the finish line. They may assign that work to a, another private developer, so I think that's a good question. I, the answer to your question is no, we won't have ownership to that work, but if it's meaningful and needed to move the project forward with someone else, we could-
It wouldn't be meaningful to them if they're not going to do it, and that's why it would be meaningful to us, and I, I, might be meaningful to us, uh, and that's why I would think that would be something we would want to have if we could.
We, we can certainly discuss that during the, the term of the E-N-A period. Um, we also want to be mindful, some of their work may be proprietary. They may be looking at doing a project that may be competing with other projects in the Valley, and so if there's proprietary, uh-
Well, I'm meaning anything besides proprietary. That's because there's going to be some that's not going to be proprietary that we're not paying for, and I'm just saying it would behoove us if we could to obtain that also because we might use it for some other reason. Thank you.
Mayor, just want to, I know I've gone on a little bit, I just want to make a final concluding remark, and it, it's regarding the, the map that you see on the overhead. We, we're showing you this map for this item because this is really continuing the strategy that we've laid out before you on some other large projects in downtown. You see in the map Symphony Park and the potential Hotel Casino in Symphony Park on the northern ends of the site. You see the Live Work Forest City campus, the five blocks in yellow, and the potential new City Hall. Should we get your vote of approval and get the financing sold that we can move forward with that project? The CIM group and the redevelopment of the Lady Luck property is another large project. You see that in blue, surrounded by encompassing the, the block around the historic U.S. Post Office that we're programming for a museum, and then you see the acreage in green. And what we're really looking to do is realizing that we're not only investing our, our tax revenues dedicated for redevelopment and economic development, we're also trying to be good stewards of the real estate we own. And think like the private sector, how do we use our real estate? And the City Hall site, the current site that we sit on, is over six acres. You throw in the Stewart Avenue parking garage, it's well over seven acres. We're moving that campus to one city block, two-point-seven-five acres, in the core downtown next to the office district, realizing that having an office building in the heart of the gaming district doesn't make a lot of sense. The private sector wouldn't do that. So we're really trying to take a private sector approach to managing our assets, and the, the final remark in introducing the Cordish Company and the representative we have here today is that we've been very selective on which development companies we work with. We're choosing partners that we know that could be committed long-term to downtown, that own their projects that, when they finish, and have a vested interest in making the projects work and succeed, and we believe we have that in the Cordish Companies. They have expertise in gaming, they have expertise in entertainment, and they have expertise in sports anchor development. They've worked with, uh, both professional leagues, the NBA as well as the NHL, uh, two of the professional sports leagues that were considering for an arena from that arena study that we did a while back. So, we think it's the right partner at the right time, and with that, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Portellus, who is a partner with the Cordish Companies. He's here with us today. Uh, he can introduce himself and the company and answer any questions you may have of him or his company's interest in developing the project.
Thank you, Mr. Arndt. Before we hear from Mr. Telleus, I'd like you to step up, Mr. Telleus, and listen to what I have to say, because it's a message that I want the Cordish folks to hear and to believe in, that today is the first day of the rest of our lives. This council has been steadfast about trying to move the City of Las Vegas into a position of being the world-class city. And through no fault of our own, we had to endure the horrific effects of nine eleven, which put everything on a standstill, and now we're in the midst of perhaps the worst recession in anybody's memory in this room at least. And, uh, it's extraordinary how the vision of the council is actualizing itself, as evidenced by what I call the Wolfson map, because Councilman Wolfson asked the Business Development Office to prepare a demonstrative exhibit which would reflect the intention of the council and what you would set out for the public, an understanding of what we're trying to accomplish. Please tell the folks in your company that a miracle has taken place in the desert here over in Symphony Park with the creation of the Lou Ruvo Brain Institute in the Frank Gehry Design Building. To have, uh, that facility here is remarkable because the whole world, when it's complete in the next month or so, is going to look at the exterior, and they're going to say, "This is in downtown Las Vegas. This is not a casino. Uh, this is a medical facility which is going to address the cure of neurodegenerative diseases." And inside that building, a partnership has been formed to have it staffed with the Cleveland Clinic personnel, one of the five great medical institutions perhaps in the world, and that's taken place as a result of the vision of the council. Without, there's remaining steadfast that this is going to be part of a plan which is most ambitious, that would never have taken place. The second thing we wanted to accomplish is to have great culture in the City of Las Vegas, and the Smith Center of Performing Arts is evidence of that. It's like the phoenix coming out of the ashes. It's an extraordinary facility, and when you speak to the folks associated with it, they advise me, and I have no reason but to take them at their word, that when one enters that building, they're going to be awestruck as to the magnificence of the interior, and it has sufficient funding of fifty million dollars from the Reynolds Foundation, which will go towards its endowment to have great art and culture and music and dance and opera and plays and all the things that great cities are all about, right in the heart of our city. Today is one of the final pieces that we're heading towards, and that is, for a city to be a great city, to be a world-class city, it has to have a place with which the people who live in the community can identify. Councilwoman Tarkanian, perhaps more than anybody in this room, will remember when the great rebel teams were playing here. Many of us who came from other places throughout the country, who relocated in Las Vegas, found a place where we were galvanized, where we felt an identity, where we had a sense of self in place as a result of rooting for the rebels and going to the ballpark and going to the arena, and not necessarily knowing each other by name, but recognizing the folks who felt like they were part of Las Vegas. And I believe that this is the step that is going to once again give us that identity that great places have to have, where when I say to somebody, "Where do you live?", I don't want to hear Chicago. I want to hear Las Vegas, when they've been here for ten years. I don't want to hear New York, when they've been here for five years. I want to hear Las Vegas, and this is what's going to take us there. I really believe that. Uh, Scott Adams and myself went back, I think Betsy was with us, too. Ms. Fretwell went back to Baltimore, and I think we went to New York, and we met with David Cordish, who was the founder in effect of the Cordish Company. Um, and we met his sons, all of whom are most accomplished. Then we had the privilege of meeting you, and the one thing that the three of us felt is we're dealing with tough businessmen. Uh, you gave very little quarter, to be quite frank, but you had something that money can't buy, and that is you had a reputation that preceded you. Uh, the casinos, the Hard Rock Casinos down in Florida, uh, which you took to the highest levels, uh, was most impressive. Uh, I spoke with Jerry Abramson, the, the mayor of Louisville, a good friend of mine, um, and he said, "Watch them, watch that Cordish Company because they're going to be tough." But what they did with our downtown in Louisville, they made it into something that nobody ever dreamed of, even to the point where I believe they're engaging in eminent domain now, which we would not do, in creating more land so that your live entertainment complex together with the arena will continue to grow down there. He said that you can't recognize what it's done as far as energy to the downtown, and the same thing is true in Kansas City. And Councilman Barlow, with whom I had a brief discussion yesterday, indicated that he was at Staples, where you only have a license agreement with them, and he saw the live entertainment complex there, and he said it was remarkable. He says that will do to our downtown like nothing else could have an effect on us. So, uh, we're counting on you, because this is our dream, to have this kind of venue in the heart and soul of the entire valley here. And, uh, as Mr. Arndt said, this is not an easy decision to pick out one developer because we've had many of them come and talk to us about having projects in our downtown, but this is the right one. This is the one that you work so hard on, and your legal staff works so hard on, with our legal staff and Mr. Adams crafting the agreement to get us to the place where we are today. And, um, from my perspective, uh, this is, um, the tipping point. This is what will take us from being a, a great city to the world-class city. I really believe that. And you said something, and I'd like you to address this in your comments to us. You said something when we were meeting in the office, I guess, two days ago, as, as to why the Cordish Company is getting involved with the City of Las Vegas on this project during the most challenging of economic times, because one would think that you don't go forward during these times and you pull back and you don't progress because of the economic feeling that's out there. And if you'd be kind enough to address that, I think that that's the message where people will become true believers, as I am, and I hope that the council is, in going forward with these plans today. So let's hear from you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just for the record, my name is Portellus, I'm with the Cordish Company. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council for having us here. It really is a privilege. Also really want to thank Mr. Adams, who we've been talking to now for roughly four years, and he's been terrific to work with, and Mr. Arndt, who we're getting to know and, and like very much. Uh, Mr. Mayor, literally, you stole my opening line, so you said it much more eloquently than I ever could. Um, you know, we understand the great pains the city has taken to bring great arts and to bring great healthcare, and now the city's being faced with another great opportunity to bring a world-class sports venue and entertainment district. Uh, we're very excited to be a part of that, or hopefully to be a part of that, and we're ready to get started and roll up our sleeves and start the feasibility analysis. Um, to go along with what, um, the mayor asked me to, to comment on, you know, we're, we're at such an unusual period of time in our history, as, as the mayor said, you know, none of us can remember anything that's, uh, similar to it. And what we've found over the hundred years of the history of our company, uh, that will actually, our, our hundred-year anniversary is next year, is that the smart developers and the smart cities are the ones that plan and position themselves for success in the difficult times. And so we see an opportunity for us to get started with that process right now. Uh, another aspect of that, and we've seen this time and time again across the country, is that arenas and the venues that surround them have played, uh, significant roles in creating the steady growth and, of trajectory that, you know, people like. It's not, you know, we're not talking about the booms and busts, we're talking about steady economic growth, and time again, you can look at case studies for that. You don't have to look any further than our backyard in Baltimore to see what Camden Yards has done for the inner harbor, where we also have another arena there now for professional football. So, uh, we see the same opportunities here. As I mentioned, we're ready to dig in, uh, and employ all the resources of our company to figure out solutions and to come, come up with something that's viable and benefit to the city and its residents. So, uh, with that, I, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and again, thank you. It really is a privilege to be here.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of, uh, Mr. Telleus or Mr. Arndt at this time, or comments? Uh, Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have, and again, thank you, it really is a privilege to be here.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Mr. Teller or Mr. Arndt at this time, or comments? Councilman Anthony, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Teller, the footprint that you're going to be studying currently includes this building right here, and this piece of property. If for some reason the new city hall didn't move forward, and we had to stay in this building, can you still continue your study development of the rest of the property, or maybe some other property that comes up, you know, to put an arena and the rest of the development, or maybe part of it? Can you still do that?
You know, thank you for the question. We're not a company that gives up easily. You know, we're going to analyze all aspects of the project, and if that's something we've represented with, you know, it's different than what we're looking at today, but it's something we would consider and analyze.
Okay, great, thank you. And my preference is the National Hockey League to bring the Detroit Red Wings out here.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Wolfson.
Mr. Teller, thanks for coming, and I appreciate sitting down with you the other day. I've just got a few questions and maybe some observations. As a follow-up to Councilman Anthony, this E and A concept, though, includes the potential development of three things: a casino hotel, a live district, and that's something that your company has coined, that's, it's trademarked, right?
That's correct.
That type of development, and a sports arena. And this E and A encompasses the idea that you would develop all almost twenty acres. Isn't that right?
Yes.
I appreciate your answer, and I appreciate Councilman Anthony's question, but really what we're talking about here is the development in a conceptual manner of all three at the same time feeding off each other and benefiting from each other at the same time. So that requires all twenty acres.
Yeah, you know, that's a very good point. You know, one of the things that, you know, we're asked by professional sports teams across the country to come into areas where they already have existing arenas. And one of the reasons is because of the district that we build around the arena, and the synergies and the value that we add to the franchise and also to the city. And so it's really, you know, you want to take a holistic approach to it and look at the entire package, and that's how you get really the bang for the buck in terms of what we can do.
Your company has experience in the development and construction of three other sports arenas in this country, isn't that right?
Yes, you know, we've been involved in planning, you know, different arenas across the country, and our latest was in Kansas City, Missouri.
And I don't know if you know the answer to this question, Mr. Arndt or Mr. Adams, and by the way, it took you four years to bring the Cordish Group here, Scott? When was the last time a hotel casino was built in downtown Las Vegas? Anybody know? Not the revitalization, not the remodeling, I'm talking about a brand-new hotel casino in downtown Las Vegas. I guess by everybody's silence, it was so long ago, we don't know.
Councilman, I know the main street was redeveloped as far as the new hotel casino from scratch, mine are saying it was the Fitzgeralds, I don't know the date, but it's been some time.
Many, many years ago.
Eighteen fourteen.
The point was that it was...
Fifty years before we were founded as a state.
It was thirty or forty years ago, is that right? And this concept includes the construction and development of a brand-new hotel and casino, potentially on Las Vegas Boulevard, where two freeways interchange. Is that what we're talking about here?
That's correct.
The, to adopt your label of the Wolfson map here, the green, which we're looking at, is about twenty acres, and we own that land, the city of Las Vegas owns that land, isn't that right?
That's correct. We acquired it, originally we thought about expanding this property to the east, and then we realized, what would the private sector do? Would they expand an office building in a district that's not an office district? In land that may have a higher and better use, that may have a higher value. And so, we had acquired the land originally to expand city hall, and then we realized, Councilman, what you're saying, what a tremendous asset we have, given the location, given the Las Vegas Boulevard frontage. But we acquired the land, we acquired it arms-length negotiations, good faith, we didn't use our power of eminent domain.
So, we own these twenty or so acres, and we own it free and clear, there's no encumbrances, no liens, no mortgages, is that right?
That's correct. All of the acreage that you see in green, there are some parcels in those city blocks where we were not successful in acquiring. We negotiated in good faith at arms-length, and sometimes you have success, sometimes you don't through that process, but all the parcels in the green, we do own, we do own free and clear.
Okay, and when we talk about a potential DDA, Development Agreement with the Cordish Group, which would be the next stage in two or three years, hopefully, we're talking about a public-private partnership, and you're talking about the private sector being the Cordish Group, the public sector being the city of Las Vegas, because we own this land, which I'd like to say is worth many, many, many millions of dollars, and we're not committing to anything now, we're not agreeing to anything now, that is land that we could leverage as part of this public portion of whatever we decide to do. In other words, we may not write checks or otherwise spend taxpayers' money in the sense of out of the general fund or any other funds, because we own very, very valuable land.
I think that's a fair statement, I think it's premature to speculate exactly what incentives we'll put on the table, and what incentives might be the subject of that ultimate development agreement, but you're correct in stating that the land does have a lot of value, and that potentially is something that could be thrown into the equation. But again, as far as the exact terms, whether we offer an incentive on the land, or some other incentive, or there's a lot of maybe private sources, it's premature, but the lands, and having that, and owning that, not only free and clear, but at a pretty low-cost basis. The city hall, we've been here for well over thirty years, and there's no debt on the property that we're sitting on now, so that definitely makes it a lot easier in trying to reach a partnership with the Cordish Company.
And then my final observation, question, whatever you want to call it, is that we're talking about a development that is right adjacent to the C I M Lady Luck development, and I would imagine that by entering into this E and A with the Cordish Group and potentially a future DDA, this can only encourage and help and move along the C I M's plans for the eventual development and finalization of their project. Would you agree with that?
I think that's correct, and I'd even go further to say that I think it would probably help the entire gaming sector downtown. You have pretty much red experience, tremendously close, it's within walking distance, and gaming in particular is a type of use to where there's synergy when you have neighboring properties that are successful. Success breeds success.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Teller, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Wolfson.
Did you need to say anything now? Mayor Protim, did you want to talk? First, Bill, I wanted to ask you, at the city manager's meeting yesterday, I wrote forth a call that I had received that the parcel numbers weren't correct, because some of them were in Ward One, and I represent Ward One, and it's not near there. Did anybody check that out? I just want to make sure.
Councilwoman, I checked it personally last night, parcel by parcel, all the parcels are correct.
Good.
I spoke to the citizen that raised the concern, and it appears that maybe she received some incorrect information from the county assessor, but the parcels as identified in the agreement are correct.
Okay, thank you very much. And then I wanted to ask you, could you explain to those in the audience, and then we have a lot of viewers on Channel Two that watch this, what live means, what it represents?
Well, live is our brand, you know, we trademark the brand live, and essentially what it is, is it's, you know, it can take different forms, there's no set formula for it, but it's the entertainment and the program that goes around sports venue, or oftentimes it just is by itself, because of, you know, what we refer to as our live blocks are self-sustaining, that it's not necessary to have a sports arena adjacent to it. And essentially, what it is, is we provide free acts, you know, oftentimes over two-hundred acts a year that are free, and they're real acts, we get real name artists, and what that does is it draws people to our district, and then they stay before the game or after the game, and that's essentially what a live block is, if that's helpful.
It's full of life.
It's, yeah, it's full of life, exactly. And it's very, you know, typically it's a very urban design, it's, you know, it's a walkable design.
Restaurants.
Restaurants, bars, comedy clubs. We also like to host art walks, and oftentimes will be the start or the finish of a running race or an athletic event. It really becomes a communal gathering place. Oftentimes, it's where the high schools have the pep rallies and those sorts of things, because it's a nice open-air venue to have such events.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Teller, thank you very much for meeting with me, I really appreciate it. I also want to reflect back to item thirty-six, which was our citizen survey that Ms. Gallion represented to us today, and the one item that the mayor brought out, as well as Councilman Wolfson, about what the survey showed as far as trying to create energy from our economic development company, our group. And this here is exactly what we've been talking about for the last four or five years with the city of Las Vegas. I look at this as an opportunity to further our trying to create jobs for our economy. And I think that's one of the strategies that we have right now, is to help the economy be stimulated. I was able to go up with the mayor and Councilman Ross to Reno, and I seen a baseball diamond with Councilman Brown. And what you was able to see was, we talk about twenty acres, up there they had about seven or eight acres, and they put a baseball field on it. And we was able to get there a little bit early, was able to watch the people walk from all areas of the city of Reno to come to this location. They're also having a live entertainment district with restaurants at this location. And it was tremendous to see, you was able to be able to intermingle with some of the residents, why do you come here? Do you enjoy it? I seen people excited, they was be able to put their hands on something that happened in their city. Yes, it was just a triple-A baseball team, but to me it was tremendous. And if we can just be half as successful as some of your other projects that I've heard about, that I've seen, I remember going down to San Diego with the old Jack Murphy Stadium, and it was exciting, it was fun, and be able to take my kids to Dodger Stadium. But to be able to go down there and watch a baseball game at the new, I can't remember what they named the new field, I think it's Petco or something like that.
Petco Park.
In San Diego, along the oceanfront, the old naval station, and to see the hotels, the old buildings that they incorporated in the outfield, to me it was just tremendous to be able to have a hotel room and just walk across a couple of bridges and get into the ballpark. I think that we need to have all this energy put into our downtown at this time, because I think that the people that we represent ask us and want us to do that. And again, I just think, all the comments the other council members have made, I want to thank you for your efforts. I know that if we work together, we can be successful, and I want to thank Mr. Arndt, Scott Adams, and as well as Betsy and the other council members for wanting to support something like this in our downtown area. And I just hope that I live long enough to be able to go to a basketball game or a hockey game. And I'm not a hockey fan, I'd like to see the Detroit Pistons or... Thank you.
Councilman Ross.
Your Honor, if I may, and Mayor Protim, you brought up a good point, and Mr. Arndt or Betsy, or, it's been a long time since we've had a report on other cities who have been extremely successful in the redevelopment efforts, and when he mentioned the ballpark there on the waterfront, I mean, that was an area that was an industrialized area at one time, and they built the baseball field, and the effects that it had on the economy, the effects it had on jobs and the surrounding areas. Can we have, down the road here perhaps, not a large report, Mr. Arndt, because I know how much you like to talk about these things, but give us some numbers. Give us, you know, even in our own city, and do a comparison, if you will, in some of the other major cities that have done some redevelopment in those areas, in the brownfields and such. I do need to make one comment, Your Honor, before a vote is taken. This item, thirty-nine, relates to the potential development of the current city hall site that we sit on, the adjacent property across the street. Because of that, this development will be in part due to the new, will be possible in part due to the new city hall project. And as Secretary Treasurer of the Southern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Council, the building trade is currently involved in negotiations with Forest City to secure union jobs for union members on that project. And in an abundance of caution, I am advised by the city attorney's office that disclose and abstain from voting on all matters having any kind of nexus to the city hall project until I receive further directions from the Nevada State Ethics Commission. So I needed to get that on the record, Your Honor.
Well, I know you were going to get that on the record, and then I heard that that was the advice of Mr. Gerbic. I, like I said, I disagree with Mr. Gerbic, but I do. I think this is so attenuated that I would like to have your expression of affirmation for the project, but I understand that you have to follow your attorney's advice, which is an amazing thing, because you followed your attorney's advice, and that got you an ethics violation, so. I, it's like Alice in Wonderland around here, I just don't understand anything that's happening, but I know you support it, and I know that you want to see the jobs created, and I know that you believe in the project, and at least empirically, that's enough for me.
I think, Your Honor, if I may, also, and Mr. Gerbic, you can give me some more legal counsel, when a council member needs to abstain on an item, they can still talk about the item, am I correct?
The state ethics code says that when you have a conflict of interest of the type that you've just described, that you disclose, in some cases abstain, but may otherwise participate. Nobody knows what the words "otherwise participate" mean, but I think that your comments on the record today certainly fall within the intention of the language.
Well, if I may participate in comment only, Your Honor, as I've asked the city manager and Mr. Arndt as the director to bring us some statistics on some other redevelopment areas, I can't say enough, and it was Mr. Malaski and Mr. Worthington just a few moments ago, just talking about another building in an area of this city that needs some significant help, and here we have someone stepping up to the plate, forgive, excuse the pun, to do something magnificent in this city, and that is terrific. And I understand this is just, you're going to do a study, we're just entering into an E and A on this project, a prospective project, but that is tremendous. Councilman Wolfson's questions and reference to the Wolfson map were tremendous, because it's all part of the big picture, every puzzle piece that's going to fit in there perfectly to create economy, to create, yes, a bigger tax base, and yes, of course, to create jobs. So, Your Honor, you know where I feel, where I am on this.
I do, I do. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Gerbic?
I don't accept that, this advice, I really don't like to give this type of advice, and I want to make clear on the record that if we get a different opinion here in the next month, month and a half, that you'll be back in the voting.
Okay, I certainly hope so. All right, have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor, again, with all those comments on the record, please, again, on behalf of Councilman Barlow.
Well, it's not public comment, but if you want to hear a councilman, that's fine. Yes, ma'am?
Who would run the casino? The city, the city, which was probably all...
Wait, wait, you have to give your name, and then we'd be happy to hear your question.
June Ingram, Charleston Airport Preservation, thank you. Who would run the casino?
We're not that far.
Oh, we're not even close to that.
If that came about.
Well, the city's not in the casino business, it would be run by private people.
Private person.
Sure.
Okay, I believe...
Although I'd like to be in the casino business.
I believe the Plaza was the last hotel built in Vegas.
The Plaza Hotel?
I think so.
I think that was in eighteen sixty-nine.
No, but I believe the Plaza was the last.
Point's the same either way, it's been a long time.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So is it the Plaza, was it the Plaza?
I don't know, we're going to take your word for it.
I think it was, thank you.
Mayor, I want to be real swift. It's back to the same old thing. You're a pioneer. You see, if you do nothing, you get nothing done. If you don't take chances, you never advance. So, it's a possibility of a sports arena, and it's a possibility, but the word industrial, I haven't seen this on one of y'all's agendas in years. the word "industrial," I haven't seen this on one of y'all's agendas in years. See, it says something about an industrial complex also. So I don't know what that's gonna be, but the objective is, a sports arena is more than needed. But, but, and gambling, well, the casino business, all over the situation now, but we need to move up and move into, as, as you said, you got the, the medical place, come what, move forward and, 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 and dream. Things happen when you move forward. This, you, you brought these people in, now embrace it. That's all I got to say. If we're gonna pull out of things, we gotta think positive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you're doing a good job, keep it up.
Thank you. Okay.
The Plaza is the last hotel built, the Plaza, on Main Street, not Las Vegas Boulevard.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, on behalf of Councilman Marlowe, uh, you know, it's great to be a Ward Five resident. Uh, I, I truly believe that. I, I know that Councilman Marlowe has always been, uh, upfront, uh, for as long as I've, seems like, since I've been here, since he's been at City Hall, that he, he wants to bring good development to the city of Las Vegas. And, uh, I, I appreciate his questions, I appreciate his concerns for the people he represents, as all of us do. And, uh, again, Mr. Tellis, thank you very much for, uh, being here today, Mr. Art, for your presentation, for the questions from the other councilmembers. I certainly appreciate that, those. Uh, I think enough's been said, I'll just make a motion to file a status recognition, uh, at this time with all conditions, and hopefully we'll be, we'll be able to come back and, and, uh, get that D D, DNA. So, that's, that's my motion, Your Honor.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Yes. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor Goodman, if I may, according to, uh, Mr. Jerbic, I apparently Googled to find out, uh, when the last property, Hotel Casino, was built. It was, uh, the Sundance Hotel, which is now the Fitzgerald's in nineteen seventy. Everybody's shaking their head out there. Where were you five minutes ago there, Mr.? Nineteen seventy-nine, the Sundance.
All right, thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Item forty is discussion and possible action. Okay. Let me, yes, unfortunately I have to abstain from item twelve, um, forty and forty-one because of the, uh, relationship I have with one of the principals who was associated with APCO, uh, as I disclosed earlier today, so I'll turn it over to the Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor?
Yes.
Forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one?
Oh, here, at this time?
Yes, prior, prior to this.
Okay, all right, um, I, I made that note, of course. Yes. Okay. Thirty-eight as well, councilman, or did we already do that?
Uh, we, we just, uh, completed the, the thirty-eight.
Okay, so we want?
Want to bring forty-nine.
I know, the councilman asked me to do this, and I blew it. Okay, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one. Pardon me. Um, forty-nine is report and possible action on the Corridor of Hope Collaboration and Ten-Year Homeless Plan. Fifty is discussion and possible action on interlocal agreement for shared funding between the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, and the cities of North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City to contribute three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and fourteen cents for regional homeless coordination and inclement weather shelter. And fifty-one is discussion and possible action on a memorandum of understanding between the city of Las Vegas, Clark County, and the cities of North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City, Southern Nevada Hospitals, and West Care Nevada, Inc., to contribute two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and one cent for a community triage center located nine-thirty North Fourth Street. This is in Ward Five. Uh, Dr. Morris?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Lisa Morris, Deputy Director, um, Neighborhood Services Department. I'd like to ask that items forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one be heard together.
They, they are.
Obviously, as they were, thank you, Mayor. Uh, with me today are Tyrone Thompson, Manager of Neighborhood Initiatives, and Tara Olmer, our Homeless Administrator, and they will be making a presentation to you this morning. Also in the audience, we have Mary Ann Eustick, who is the current Committee on Homeless Chair. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Good morning.
We just barely made it to morning, going into the afternoon. Again, Tyrone Thompson, Neighborhood Initiatives Manager, in the Neighborhood Services Department. Uh, today we will give you an overview of homelessness in Southern Nevada. We're actually gonna look at the homeless census of two thousand and seven and show you what it says for two thousand and nine. We're gonna make you aware of the vital collaborative partnerships that are just essential in order for us to do this great work with the homeless in our community. Um, we will inform you of the funding and resources towards homeless efforts. Most importantly, we're gonna talk about the city of Las Vegas investment. What are we paying for and what are we getting for the investment? Um, we will review the strategy, key strategies of our ten-year homeless plan and actually celebrate accomplishments that we are doing in the homeless community. And then lastly, um, we will talk about the ways in which we, as a city, how we're moving forward. I'm gonna hand it over to Tara, and then I'll be back.
Good morning, once again. Uh, my name is Tara Olmer, I'm your Homeless Administrator here at the city, uh, with the Neighborhood Services Department. Um, wanted to just briefly cover some, uh, key information in regards to the two thousand and nine homeless census. Uh, beginning in January of two thousand and seven, our region began coordinating a homeless census, which focuses on counting the number of homeless that we have in Southern Nevada. Um, this census report provides an estimate of the number of homeless in our area and identifies the key demographics which assist with homeless planning and coordination efforts. As indicated on the slide, there are approximately thirteen thousand homeless people currently in Southern Nevada, which is about nineteen hundred more than what was counted in two thousand and seven. The census numbers does not include the homeless that are in jails, hospitals, or in rehab facilities. What I would like to point out is that we have almost doubled the amount of shelter provided to the homeless since two thousand and seven, which results in less homeless persons on our streets. This census is mandated by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and has resulted in over fifteen million dollars allocated to our Southern Nevada Continuum of Care. And that continuum of care primarily provides case management, housing, and other services, um, to those homeless that are mentally ill, chronics, as well as our youth veterans and families. The next census will take place in January two thousand and eleven, and is funded by our Committee on Homeless Regional Budget, which will be discussed later. The full census report can be accessed online at www dot help hope home dot org. One of the things that I wanted to share this morning was, um, what the core homeless needs are. Um, the shelter needs include the extreme hot and cold, uh, days, days and evening, as well as emergency shelter. Um, transitional and permit housing is definitely important. Uh, supportive services such as the basic needs, transportation, childcare, food, clothing, identification, hygiene, and household items need to be provided. Discharge planning efforts are very key, um, as we need to ensure that our exit offenders are not, um, released back into homelessness without support, support services. Drug, alcohol, and mental health treatment and counseling services are definitely needed. Without effective case management, we run the risk of many of those that we assist returning to homelessness. Employment and training is, must be present in order for, um, our clients to be able to support themselves and their families. And a coordinated regional case management system is necessarily, is necessary to effectively manage it all. For our region, it's our homeless management information system that is paid for by our Committee on Homeless Budget. Um, housing services, I did want to mention that the housing services, um, for sp- the special homeless subpopulations are also critical. Um, and these are those popu- populations with critical needs such as our chronics, our families, um, domestic violence victims, as well as the veterans, youth, and our seniors. All of these pieces put together provide the framework for what is needed in order for us to effectively take here, excuse me, to effectively take care of our homeless. This next slide shows all of the collaborative partnerships that makes it possible. Um, it is important to stress that we cannot address our homeless problem alone. It takes everybody working together collaboratively in order to serve our homeless. All of the jur- different jurisdictions and different entities work very closely together. There are several committees and subcommittees and ad hoc committees with representatives from all of the partners that scrutin- scrutinize the budgets, they ask the tough questions, and they try to leverage together as many resources as possible, um, to make sure that we are doing the best that we possibly can. So how do we pay for all of these core homeless needs to be able to help, truly help our homeless? Um, be- at the very top is the continuum of care. These are funds that are granted by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development as a result of our census data and a joint regional application that is put together by our Regional Homeless Office. This pays for case management and housing services, mostly for our homeless that are mentally ill and that are chronics. Um, where it says local jurisdictions, that's where all of the local jurisdictions contribute some level of general funds for the core homeless basic needs and gaps in services. Private donations can include any donations or support from the private sector and/or the overall community. The federal funds include any competitive dollars that we have, we may have received or are currently receiving. For example, we've received a SAMSA grant to provide treatment services as part of our discharge planning efforts. United Way provides funds towards homeless efforts through their immediate needs process. Um, some entitlement funds that are allocated towards homelessness includes CDBG, ESG, HAPWA, Home, and LIFT. And of course, there are stimulus funds that we will be receiving this year, um, for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, as well as our CDBGR. So what has the city of Las Vegas invested into this homeless effort? Well, to begin with, the HPRP stimulus funds was approved by you in May. This funding would target those that are harm, that are homeless due to the economic overturn, downturn. It is not intended for our chronic homeless population. Um, it is specifically for prevention and intervention services, and that is at two point one million. The next is the federal funds that we allocate, allocate to our homeless service providers, recommend, recommended by our Citizen Review Board, and that includes all of our CDB, ESG, HAPWA, and Home, LIFT funds. Um, these are for basic homeless services, and that is in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand. Um, this year, you authorized us to use three hundred thousand of our eighteen percent set aside, um, funds for affordable housing, and we, we use that money to, um, help house those homeless that were mostly in the homeless corridor, and Tyrone will speak most, more about that and with our accomplishments with that program. Um, the next is the SNRPC Committee on Homeless. Um, it pays for our inclement weather shelter, our homeless management information system, and the census. If not funded, we would lose more shelter beds, which was, which would result in more homeless people on the street. Uh, we would not have a coordinated management system, nor would we qualify for the HUD funds that we receive for our continuum of care that for the last year, uh, last couple of years equal a little over fifteen million dollars. This is agenda item number fifty. The next thing that we fund is the West Care Community Triage Center. It focuses on chronic inebriates diverted from our emergency rooms and jails. It is funded one-third by the state. Um, there are, there's also a SACTA grant that helps fund it. It's also funded one-third by local government and one-third by the hospital, so you have that collaboration where everybody is contributing for this community triage center. If the community triage center ceased to exist, there would be enormous, um, it would be an enormous impact on our community. Um, the overburden would be placed on our emergencies rooms, and it would result in displacements, um, extended emergency care wait times, um, increased costs for the hospitals, the healthcare, the jails, and the community overall. Um, we also would not have a place for those homeless that are chronic inebriates because at this point in time, um, shelter policies prevent them from going to our main shelters. So right now, the West Care Community Triage Center, um, provides that support for those individuals, and this is agenda item number fifty-one. I also did want to mention, with the Committee on Homeless and the West Care Community Triage Center budgets, um, this year they reflect a five percent reduction compared to last year. We will be continuing to work together on evaluating and reviewing the budgets, the priorities, and the programs. Wanted to briefly speak about our ten-year homeless plan. Um, every, everything that we do falls under that, that ten-year homeless plan. The ten-year plan was approved in March of two thousand and six. Um, originally, there were eleven strategies, and they have been streamlined down to four. The first strategy is to increase the availability of stable and sustainable housing. Um, the city of Las Vegas, we will continue to develop and sustain affordable housing programs consistent with our Federal Department of HUD five-year action plan. We have adopted the National Housing First approach to assist the homeless towards stability efforts. The second, um, strategy is to strengthen the partnerships and our capacity of community and faith-based organizations. Uh, we do that by providing support, funding, and resources to our community service providers. Um, and by doing that, we avoid an effective, fragmented, duplicative system, and we will continue to try to improve coordination and the utilization of our limited resources. The third strategy is to prevent individuals and/or families from becoming homeless. Um, early intervention can prevent homelessness. We have found that it is more cost-effective to assist the household during a crisis from becoming homeless than try to assist them once they do become homeless. The fourth strategy is to facilitate the transition from homelessness through case management and support services. Um, case management and relevant services are critical in reducing and eliminating homelessness. Without these services, homeless clients lack the support necessary to transition and to maintain that stability. Our plan is consistent with the regional ten-year homeless plan. A revised, updated homeless plan will be provided at a later date. So at this time, um, Tyrone will share with you some of our accomplishments.
Many times if you say the word homeless, you would think, wow, you're just never going to, to make any leeway on it, really won't accomplish much, but we really want to stand before you today and really tell you about the accomplishments that we've had. And of course, it's with the great staff that we have that's working daily out in the trenches here at City Hall, and also our community partners. Um, but I want to specifically state that Neighborhood Services Department, through the use of federal funds and some of our general funds, um, since two thousand and six, I want to give you a little snapshot of some of the things that we've done. Um, in, since two thousand and six, um, over sixty-three thousand individuals and families have received multiple homeless assistance. That doesn't mean that sixty-three thousand people received assistance, it just means that, um, families receive multiple services, such as social services, operating costs for our homeless shelters, um, different employment services, um, food pantries, outreach, healthcare, mental health services. Um, you really see a lot of alcohol and drug treatment, uh, services that are needed, and again, like Tara said, homeless prevention is, is a key. Twelve hundred plus new and rehabilitated low-income affordable housing units came online. Uh, two thousand, two hundred and ninety low-income households receive housing and/or utility assistance. Uh, there's many times that people will come to City Hall or go out to our community partners that have received funds, and we're able to help them if they are in a, an eviction situation, and we're able to prevent that homelessness if they're able to sustain themselves for the following month. So that's been very successful. Uh, ten thousand plus homeless received emergency shelter services. Our shelter system is huge, we, that's just something that we definitely need. Uh, seven hundred and ten individuals and families received homeless services. And lastly, four hundred and eighty-six city jail inmates received discharge planning services. Just to kind of talk a little bit about that, um, is that when inmates come into our city jail, if they identify themselves as homeless, um, when they're about to be released in one to two weeks, they have an option to interview with our case managers in Neighborhood Services, and what we try to do is, upon their discharge, we want to make sure that they get into some type of, um, housing program. Maybe they're able to stay with an aunt or an uncle, or maybe they're able to actually go into some type of treatment. So we've been able to, uh, assist four hundred and eighty-six homeless city inmates. In mid-July two thousand and nine, um, the council, um, you approved the. In mid-July 2009, the council, you approved the $300,000 set-aside funds, and we also had some general funds that we set aside to have a homeless pilot program. And with that program, through the intervention that we do through the Corridor of Hope Alliance, we would go out there pretty much on Mondays. Now, we're just doing it on Wednesday evenings, where we're actually going out into the corridor and just asking people if they need help. With that, we targeted 20 households. We were able to get 20 households in, which is a total of 52 family members, and we immediately put them into housing. We also provided intensive case management services. We actually contracted out for a qualified mental health provider that could help us with stabilization services, because those of you that know, when you get into housing, if you're not used to being in housing, you kind of need that person to walk with you daily and help you get your food stamps, and there's a possibility that you may be able to qualify for social service, I'm sorry, Social Security funds and income. Also, an additional 80-plus individuals were housed or relocated with their families in other states. Many times, people will come in and say, you know, I've been in Vegas for like two years, I've been homeless for two years, I've talked to my uncle in California, looks like I might be able to get a job. We will, based on circumstances and by actually confirming on the other end, we will pay for bus tickets for people to relocate with their families home. And then lastly, the majority served in the last three months were from the Corridor of Hope area, and again, they were from our shelters, they were from actually off the streets. One thing I want to let the council know, that a lot of the people that we worked with in this pilot were our new homeless, the people that, based on the economic downturn, lost their homes, whether they were renting or buying, or just, just lost their, their And then lastly, as we move forward, there's just some key points that we want to remind the council to look, look towards and consider. The first, again, I want to talk a little bit more about the, the new homeless. We need to realize that at the beginning of next year, there's a scheduled reset of mortgage loans, and that may have a tremendous impact on more of our new homeless in our community. Funding availability for all the services and partnerships, I mean, paying for the price for homeless, I don't think we can even think of what the price tag is, but there's always scarce resources and a lot of budget cuts. Security monitoring and mitigation for problem areas. We are in poor economic times, like the mayor was talking about with our high unemployment rate, how there's just the need for, for jobs. And limited affordable housing availability, there's just not enough housing stock to house everyone. As we move forward with our regional partnerships, per the direction of mayor and council, there was a, a presentation that Nancy McLean did from Clark County Social Services, I should know that, I worked there, from Clark County Social Services, and she was talking about the Fertitta Center and all the challenges that they're having at the county. And your direction was for us to meet with the county staff, and we have done so. Our city manager and the county manager held the first meeting with us, and we have been meeting ever since, city staff and with county staff, just to try to think of ways we can leverage our resources so we're not working apart, we're working kind of together, working smarter. That's how our city manager calls it. And then lastly, as you see, you have Agenda Item Number 50, like Tara said, and that's to fund the Regional Committee on Homelessness. We ask that you approve that, because again, it's a 5% reduction. There will not be a loss of services, I wanted to emphasize that. The committees that were working behind the scenes were able to shave off some of the money, but be able to keep the direct services. And that is the same thing with our Item Number 51, which talks about West Care and the need for the Community Triage Center. And in closing, mayor, council, and city manager's office, we'd just like to thank you for allowing the city to address the homeless efforts. I'd also like to thank the dedicated city staff from the various departments. We always have to collaborate. Sometimes we get to plan our collaboration, sometimes it's an emergency collaboration. So we really appreciate everybody being able to just respond. And then lastly, thanks to our community partners for their endless 24/7 work in our 24, 24 hours a day city, because homelessness is, is always here. So with that, we thank you for your attention, and we ask that you consider Items 50 and 49 through 51.
Thank you very much for a very thorough report. Are there any questions of the lady or gentleman?
Just one for clarification, Mayor Goodman. The amounts that you're requesting, the 314,000 for Item Number 50 and the 257,000 for Items Number 51, that is just the City of Las Vegas' portion?
Correct.
There's a greater number, obviously.
Yes.
And that's just for the fiscal year 2009, 2010.
Correct. And it comes out of our general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Just one quick comment, if I may.
Captain Ross.
Thank you, and thank you very much for that thorough report. And I wanted to say something about the accountability of what we're doing as a city, but more so to our city manager and her efforts as looking at this challenge as a regional issue, because that's what it truly is. And it's nice to see that we're working with county and, and working in, in that direction. So that's good to see.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, could I have a motion, please?
Uh, follow status, I'd like to approve of Item Number 49, please, with all conditions.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries?
Say motion on item 50, please, with all conditions.
All right, let's vote on 50, please. Motion carries?
Say motion on item 51, please.
Thank you, let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to the Mayor Protem on Items 12, 40, and 41, because of my abstention.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you very much. Item 12 is approval for final funding of arbitration expenses for the law firm of Camp Jones &amp; Cothard LLP, who represent the City of Las Vegas in an arbitration file against it by the Asphalt Products Corporation over the construction of Washington Buffalo Parks 1A, 1 and 1B for an amount of not to exceed $200,000, this is in Ward 4. And Item 40, the discussion of possible action regarding possible appeal from decision by the Nevada Arbitration Association and Asphalt Products Corporation for City of Las Vegas, case number 05108, another matter relating there, too. This is also in Ward 4. And Item 41 is discussion of possible action to pay the award of Asphalt Products Corporation for $980,000, $980,361.60 plus interest, another matter relating there, too. This is also in Ward 4. In my briefing on Monday with Councilman Ross and Councilman Anthony, I asked Councilman Anthony, because Councilman Anthony was not at this level when this took place, I didn't feel like it was fair to Councilman Anthony to make the motions and, and do the discussions on these items. So I am going to be representing Councilman Anthony in Ward 4 with the, the decisions that we make today. Mr. Gerbick, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. This will hopefully be the last time that you will have on your agenda a line item relating to APCO and the arbitration that has been going on for the last couple of years. Let me just stop for a minute and talk about the process before I get to my recommendations and what we're here for today. As you're aware, when we entered into construction contracts, at the time we entered into the construction contract for the Darling Tennis Center, state law mandated that arbitration was the way you resolve disputes in those types of contracts. We had no other choice. At the end of the construction, APCO decided to go into arbitration with the city. They started the arbitration, the city didn't. But when it started, it went on for the next two years. The way arbitrations work is, we pick one arbitrator, the other side picks an arbitrator, and then you have a neutral arbitrator. So arbitrators are not like judges. They are there actually, in part, to advocate for the person who selected them. So APCO's arbitrator did have the ability and did admit on the record that they did advocate for APCO. I wanted that to be clear, because in that, that background, it's easier to understand this opinion, because it was that particular arbitrator who authored the majority opinion. It was a 2-1 opinion, and many of the observations that were made by that arbitrator, I think, bear some scrutiny and should be commented on today, and I think they bear directly on whether or not you decide to direct me to pursue an appeal in this case. First of all, let me let you know what can be appealed and what can't be appealed. When you appeal an arbitrator's ruling, it's binding arbitration, you can only appeal matters that are errors of law, not errors of fact. So factual determinations cannot be appealed, errors of law can.
Mr. Gerbick, if I could, how long has this been going on, please?
It was about two and a half years.
Thank you.
The, and let me also go back and say what APCO was looking for. At the end of the project, APCO was looking to recapture about $7 million in alleged damages. In the process of pursuing that, the city has spent approximately $3.2 million. APCO spent at least $4 million. At the end of the day, the net judgment in APCO's favor is about $980,000 plus interest. And I can say right now, there are no winners in this one, one way or the other. And the process that existed-
Oh, yes, there is. The attorneys, the arbitrators.
Not this one, but perhaps the private practice ones.
I'm serious, too, you know. This, this is a, a process, to me, that is, is ludicrous and insane to have these three attorneys get, what, a million dollars apiece, basically, for their, their work? And they, to me, they, they had the opportunity to just drag it on, 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 and drag it on, and that's what they did. And to me, that's wrong.
I understand completely. Remember, arbitrators, unlike judges, are paid for by the people who are part of the arbitration. So we pay for the arbitrator that we choose, APCO pays for the arbitrator that they choose, and then we split the cost of the neutral one. And the average cost combined is about $1,000 an hour for the arbitrators. And this went on for about two and a half years. So that is part of the reason for the enormous cost associated with it. I wanted to mention that that is no longer the law in the State of Nevada. Ted Olivas is sitting in the audience, and he brought me to Carson City in January to testify regarding changes that needed to be made to that law. And I didn't think that the committee was very receptive until I pointed out to them that at that point, we were about $2.5 million into the arbitration. There was an audible gasp in the room when people realized that this did not create an efficient situation, it created a very inefficient situation that resulted in what I consider to be a runaway arbitration. But at the end of the day, the law has been changed, the legislature enacted, let's see, it's Assembly Bill Number 48. So now, in construction contracts, we have to first provide for an alternative means of resolving a dispute, and then we can actually go to court, where the taxpayers and the city have already paid the salaries of the judges, and they have the incentive to move these cases along quicker. I think it's a much more efficient system. I never thought I'd say that, but I'm on the record now. In any case, at the end of the arbitration, APCO was awarded $2,400,000 approximately. There was, of that amount of money that was awarded, about 1.4 million was in retention that we didn't consider was in dispute. We had always planned on paying the retention, we had the retention. There was also about $280,000 awarded to the City of Las Vegas. So when you back those numbers out from the 2.4 million, the net to APCO is $980,000 as a result of the arbitration. Let me talk about the appeal for a moment. As I said earlier, you can only appeal errors of law, not errors of fact. So what can you get if you do appeal this? The only thing that can really be attacked in this is that $980,000 slice that we're here to discuss today. There is no way in an appeal that the city is going to have its request of the arbiters restored and granted. So what we're really going to be fighting over here is $280,000, and that could happen several different ways. One, we could go and we could argue that there were some errors of law, and I'll talk about those in a moment, that were made, and awarding that $980,000, that would be heard by a district court judge. The district court judge could very well reband this back to arbitration for arbitrators to make a new finding based on the correct laws established by the district court judge. That would once again send us into arbitration, and even if we handled it in-house with city attorney staff only and didn't call a single expert witness, we still have that $1,000 an hour arbitration cost that I talked to you about earlier, and it risks turning something on that, again, could go on for an endless period of time. That's why when I get to the end of it, I'll cut to the punchline, I'm not going to recommend that this decision be appealed. I'm glad to answer any questions regarding it. Let me talk about some of the things that factor into that $980,000 that I would consider errors of law. The contract itself says that subcontractor claims are not to be considered. Subcontractor claims are deals between the contractor and a subcontractor. In fact, our contracts require that we be indemnified from subcontractor claims. We just want to hire a contractor, we want to pay him, we want to deal with them, we don't want to deal with all the subs. Well, in this case, the arbitrators decided, in spite of the contract language, to hear the claims of the subcontractors as advanced by APCO. So a good portion of the award of the $980,000 is in subcontractors, and I'm sure they will all, if the council approves this settlement, they, they will all be at APCO's door very soon to get their checks, because that's a good chunk of the judgment right there. Another thing that they said was that delayed damages were going to be awarded to APCO. That was also something that was specifically not part of the contract. There were portions of the, of the findings that I thought were just at odds with the testimony, but that's my opinion. There is a portion of the dissenting opinion that I think bears some scrutiny, because I think it kind of puts us in, in a better light and can help understand what happened here. The arbitrator that was selected by the city was Jim Olson, and he authored a dissenting opinion that's actually longer than the majority opinion. And he goes through and dissects the majority opinion and then makes some observations at the very end. APCO asked for sanctions against the city from the arbiters or attorney fees, and they got neither. And that prompted Mr. Olson to write a special section on pages 153 and 154, where he talks about the majority opinion and some of the, some of the things that's contained in it that just aren't accurate. During the course of the arbitration, we had a number of expert witnesses, but one of the experts for the city, a city employee, is Jerry Walker. Jerry Walker's testified many times before this council before. He is an example of just the best of the best, in my opinion, of city personnel. Jerry Walker appeared before the arbitration panel and testified in detail as to why the tennis courts were breaking and who was at fault. At the same time, APCO had an employee that testified, and this employee was not only an employee of APCO, but was in the, was hired by APCO on a contingency fee, so he got a percentage of what was awarded. The arbitrators said that Jerry Walker's entire testimony was to be disregarded because he was a city employee and therefore he was prejudiced, and they shouldn't listen to him.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
What page is that on?
This is page 1. Well, I'm reading now the dissenting opinion. I'll, I'll actually read it, it's page 154.
Is that in our backup?
I'm sorry?
Is that paperwork in our backup?
Yes, thanks.
154?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I'll, I'll read the paragraph. Page 154 starts at line 18, and this is, this is arbitrator Olson's comment on the majority opinion. He says, amazingly, the majority also votes the city for Walker's investigation of the city's counterclaims, stating, quote, "Mr. Walker was not an independent and an unbiased consultant. However, the majority saw no problem with Frainer," that's the individual who testified for APCO, "the majority saw no problem with Frainer's involvement in the beginning of the project and with his analysis of APCO's claims. The double standard in the majority opinion is glaring on this point." If you read this last part, you will understand that when you hire arbitrators who are partisan, you're going to get partisan opinions. I know that probably sounds like sour grapes to people listening at home and to people who are going to report it, but that's the fact, and that's what I believe. In any case, that brings us to what we're here for now.
Mr. Gerbick, isn't that the whole point of arbitration, that there is no partisan
bias in, in an arbitrator, that they look at things for what they are and make decisions based on that, similar to what a judge does, as you started off?
Well, as I, as I said at the beginning, that is the difference between arbitration and judges. It should be, it should be a process where people sit down, and they don't look at who's paying their salary for that particular part of the arbitration, but they look at the facts, they weigh them, and they deliberate, and they reach a decision. And in this particular case, the decision is a decision, and it is binding. In spite of all that, like I say, I am not recommending that we pursue it any further, because I think that in the course of winning in district court, you could actually end up losing and end up paying more money. We're here today to discuss three different things. One is the final funding of the arbitration itself. That's an amount not to exceed $200,000. Most of that money will go to the arbiters for their last couple of months of deliberation. The other item is to pay the judgment. I'll have Mark Vincent come up and explain the numbers and how much you'll have to augment the budget way to pay that particular judgment. And the final item is to decide whether or not you want to appeal, and again, it's the recommendation of me and my staff that we don't. With that, I'm glad to take any questions.
Thank you.
May I, Mayor Protem, ask one question for clarification, Mr. Gerbick? I understand that we pay the attorneys that we hired, independent of our in-house attorneys. We pay them, and the other party, APCO, pays their attorneys.
That's correct.
But the cost of the arbitrators, is it split between the parties?
What we do is, we pay for the arbitrator that we select.
Okay.
APCO pays for the arbitrator they select, and then we split the cost of what is supposedly the neutral person.
Okay, because I notice, and I don't want to get too far afrae here, that the two arbitrators who each party selected billed the parties 10 times more than the neutral arbitrator did.
Actually, I think if you look at it, I think, is it, HOG is the neutral arbitrator on there? I think it's $69,000. That's APCO's- I think it's $69,000. That's Apco's arbitrator. The reason that number's so low is because Apco paid almost all of his fees. The fees that you see for arbitrator Wilson as the neutral arbitrator, that is half of what he charged for the arbitration. The other half is picked up by Apco.
So what I have in front of me, which shows that arbitrator Wilson, his total was $468,000 and change, is just half of what he billed?
That's correct. Mr. Jervik here will put the numbers together for me, but I believe that's half of what he billed for the entire arbitration.
So this arbitrator billed $1 million for his work on this case?
That's my understanding, approximately.
Turn your mic on, please.
Were the advances made by our outside firm for half of Wilson's fees?
So if I look to the month of January of '08, and I'm working off a document that was provided to us, where this particular arbitrator billed $45,000, is that just our half of that month for this arbitrator?
I don't know if that's a multi-month billing, but it would be just half of what we would do today.
What I want at some point in time, and I don't know if it's germane to our discussion today, is for some explanation. You see what I'm looking at, Brad?
I do.
January of '08, $15,000 change. January of '08, $29,000 and change. That's about $45,000 for one month, one arbitrator, and that may only be half. If that's only half, that one arbitrator billed $90,000 for one month, and did he have other lawyers in his firm also working on this matter, or was that just his work?
I have no idea who was working on this, but I know Mr. Jervik shared with me a little snippet of not just the arbitrator's fees. Again, I don't know who assisted them behind the scenes and might have been involved in the billing. But the arbitrations itself were pretty impressive, as far as the amount of food that was provided, as far as a drink and stuff like that was provided. It was really, you know, you don't go to a courtroom and litigate and have hot cookies and cocoa waiting for you when you walk in, but you did at these arbitrations. And so like I say, I think the whole process itself, in my personal opinion—
Mr. Jervik, you're just making me madder and madder.
I tell you, it doesn't make me happy.
I just suggested to Councilman Wolfson, maybe he ought to change his line of work. Continue, Councilman Wolfson.
I think that's it for—
Okay. Yes, sir.
For the record, Mark Vincent, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Regarding the Item 41, I just want to clarify some of the numbers on the agenda item. I think the agenda item indicated that budgeted funds were available, and that's not entirely correct, and I wanted to correct that for the record. As Mr. Jervik indicated, the retention and the $980,000 claim, plus interest on both those numbers for different periods under different rates, amounted to a net of $2,201,586 that we owe. We had retention, as Mr. Jervik already mentioned, already on the books, monies that we had withheld from approved billings. Plus, we also had some project fund balance left over that we never reprogrammed out of this project because of the litigation. We thought we might need the money. Those two combined add up to $1,982,186. There's a balance of $219,339.70. That amount is not funded in the project, and so it would be our recommendation that in order to make the claim as payment as required by the arbitrators, that we would augment that $219,000 with the transfer out of the Parks Capital Projects Bid Reserve Fund. And so that's, anyway, just want to clear that up for that item.
That'd be part of the motion.
I know, too, that Commissioner Brown is here, and—
I know a couple comments before Commissioner Brown does.
Rejoice, me too, or are you going to?
I'm going to.
Okay. Go ahead.
In the majority opinion rendered in the Apco case, the arbitrators mentioned that this was a high-profile project in Councilman Brown's district, and insinuated that part of the problem was due to pressure put on the city's Public Works Department and the Architectural Services to get the project done by the end of 2004. I have spoken with the city attorney regarding that statement, and he has indicated that, in his opinion, Councilman Brown's involvement with the tennis complex was not out of the ordinary, had entirely appropriate. What really makes me mad is, we've all had projects in our ward that we've asked staff, that we have, I guess by asking them, maybe they feel like we're putting pressure on them, but I don't think that there's any undue pressure added by us asking them. I've got two projects right now. I wish they had been done three months ago, but they're not. And I really feel that Councilman Brown really got slammed because in the newspapers, that, because of this opinion, and to me, it's not justified and it's unfair. You know, we as councilmen, we're always looking to honor one another, say things. I've asked Councilman Brown probably a dozen times if I could name, if we could name something after him, because of his love for the sports. It is near to my heart. Getting a significant project like the Darling Tennis Center built and completed on time in order to have nationally televised tournaments is exactly what Councilman Brown was elected to do. He is well-known for being a champion of public facilities and open spaces for all of our citizens. It's my opinion, only my opinion, it is unfortunate that the majority opinion chose to put his name in the decision and award in this case, and to me, it was unfair. Brad?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I think that was very well put. I know Commissioner Brown would probably like to speak in a moment here, but I've worked with a lot of you very closely for the last 17 and a half years. I've seen a lot of council members come and go, but I don't think there's any dispute amongst this council or any other council that I've been in front of, that Commissioner Brown was absolutely a number-one champion of open spaces and parks and recreation activities for everybody in Las Vegas. I can tell you, I remember when this project got started, and I remember when it was finished, and his involvement was exactly what the involvement of a council member should be, which is to make sure these things get built and they open on time. And as we all know, the Tennis Channel had just approached the city with an opportunity to move a major tournament that used to take place in another state to Las Vegas to this really wonderful complex. And in order for that to happen in the spring of that particular year, this complex had to be open on time. I don't see anything wrong with anybody suggesting or insisting that that happened. But these courts are not broken because a council member wanted it committed and done on time. These courts are not broken because somebody let this thing to bid before the plans were completely finalized. If you can go to the overhead for a moment, because I'm not an engineer, but when this was explained to me, it was perfectly obvious. Imagine this white sheet of paper in front of me is one of the tennis courts. This would be the perimeter of the court. The way the design for the courts was presented had four, excuse me, six light standards to illuminate the court around the outside. So on the outside of the piece of paper, if you could imagine each of the corners, and then on each side, would be light standards. The courts themselves, they're built on post-tension slabs, which means they are supposed to float. So that is, whether it gets hot or cold, or moist or dry, these courts will slightly move, and by allowing them to move, they don't crack. What happened is this, where I am now drawing these feeble little circles, is where the light standards were placed. As you can see, they acted like thumbtacks, holding these tennis courts to the ground, and they didn't move, and within six months, they began to crack. Now, somebody wants to point a finger at a staff member who wanted to get something done on time, or a councilman who said that, you know, "We are entitled to have this complex built," and say, "That's why this happened?" Like I said, consider it in the light of the other things said in the opinion. Consider it in the light of the comments made about Jerry Walker. Consider it in the light of all the other things that were required by contract, that were decided by two out of three people, that were no longer required by contract, and I think you get the answer. With that said, I will be glad to turn it over to Commissioner Brown.
Mayor Protem, may I just ask, before Commissioner Brown speaks, please? The approximate costs to the city of Las Vegas for our lawyers, outside lawyers, our arbitrators, our experts, et cetera, is about $3.5 million?
Yeah, $3,555,000.
That's about $3.5 million, right?
Right.
Would it be fair to say that Apco spent the same amount of money themselves in this litigation process?
In all likelihood, more. I know that when they asked for attorney's fees, they had to come up with a number— that was before the opinion was written, and a number of bills came in after that. So my guess is, and it's just my guess for the record, is that they're in for $4 million plus.
My final question is, we are not obligated by Nevada or by statute to suffer from this process the next time around?
That's correct.
Because the legislature changed the process. Real quickly, what would be the new process should the city of Las Vegas and a contractor get into a dispute over a significant project? What would be the process, and why is it potentially better?
What we have to do under state law is to provide some alternative dispute before going to court. What we're putting in our contracts now is non-binding mediation, very different than arbitration. You get a mediator over, you spend a couple hours, maybe half a day, sitting around, trying to get both parties to come together, and if you can't resolve it then, then you go to court. So we're not talking about a very expensive, non-court process. We're talking about a very quick and very useful process. We've actually used mediation in the past. It's been very successful for us and for the people that we negotiate with, but that's the process now.
But if the mediation didn't work, and I understand the goal is to see if you can get the parties together in a room and have the mediator work it out. My wife does that as a judge all the time. If that doesn't work, you're still going to end up in a court of law—
That's correct.
—potentially a trial—
That's correct.
—would it be less expensive?
In my opinion—
If this case would have gone to district court and gone through a trial, would it have been more expensive or less expensive?
In my opinion, less expensive by far. One, take all those arbitrator's fees, which are over $1 million, and cut them out. And then imagine, because a court has the interest of comedy in mind, they want to get these cases done and over with, they want to bring finality to it, you're not going to look at two and a half years in front of a district court judge. I don't know anyone that would tolerate that. I think that this probably lasted about three or four months, therefore, our total attorney's fees would have been considerably reduced.
And that's the answer that I thought, and that's what I wanted to hear.
That's it.
But again, though, I remember back when this was first, the lawsuit had been filed, our then-city manager, maybe Betsy can reflect on this also, Doug Selby, offered them a settlement fee, which today is actually more than what they got.
That's correct.
And it could have been settled if they would have settled it way back when.
That's correct.
They would have received more money. We would have saved money, but they didn't do that.
That's correct. Like I said, they asked for seven, they spent four, they got one.
So, Councilman Brown, your booby friend is going to bite you up, please. You always ask to get that fixed. We never have.
Your Honor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, it's good to be home, and I do still consider the city of Las Vegas my home. I debated over the last 24 hours whether I wanted to come down and speak, and I decided, obviously, to come down to quote a dear friend and a gentleman that I respect his opinion. He said, "You know, you raise your children well, you educate them, and you always protect the family name that you pass on to them." And that's why I'm here. Basically, the public record that was in this document, I think, needed to be responded to for me personally. And even hearing the conversation from Mr. Jervik, learning some additional things, certainly the 155 pages, I was only able to peruse quickly last evening, but the quote is, "It appears from the testimony and exhibits that this was a high-profile project in Councilman Brown's district, and that he and his staff were putting pressure on the city's Public Works Office of Architectural Service to get the project bid as soon as possible, so it could have a completion date by the end of 2004." So obviously, as the old saying goes paraphrased, of course, "An accusation unanswered is an accusation not denied." If I let that statement stand without rebutting, then it becomes a truth, and it's dead wrong. I'll say that to start, and I'll say that to end. It's a dead wrong comment. It came as a surprise, and trying to get through 155 pages, the one thing that was obvious is, it's filled with claims and counterclaims and bidding procedures and construction policies and procedures, a host of things that nowhere calls out in the ruling or the decision and award why this statement was made. I couldn't find anywhere that it said testimony was presented that specifically said. And perhaps, perhaps it's in some of the subpoena documentation or the testimony that was given, and maybe that could be looked at down the road. But I couldn't find anywhere in there, and yet they call the opening paragraph "The Findings of Fact and Conclusions of Law," and that's certainly disconcerting. It's giving you the impression that this is the fact, that either me or my office or both created this pressure situation. I don't know why. The second thing that comes out is, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Jervik, he gave me counsel for 12 years, but during this two-year process, and many of you sitting up there were part of these briefings, never was it brought to my attention that the legal team representing the city felt that this quote or my involvement was a legal issue. I would have hoped if, during a testimony of a city employee or somewhere during these proceedings, that someone said, "Part of the reason we're in trouble is because Larry Brown put pressure on us to get it out on time." I would have hoped that our legal team would have come to me and said, "You know, we probably need you to come and testify." I was never asked to testify by the arbitrators, by either side, and on a couple of occasions, I asked the question to our legal team, "Why?" I probably knew more about the players involved and the stakeholders and the community than anybody, and yet, I'm under the belief to this day that if they had felt that this comment was going to be made, they would have given me the opportunity to respond. I think that's the only fair thing to do. Because I wasn't asked to be there, this comes as a great surprise, and I don't know why. The reference to the office staff, I can only say that my staff, it was very clear, and city professionals that had dealt with Ward 4 when I was there know this to be true, that my secretary and my liaison did not speak for me. They worked with me. I gave them direction, and we worked to serve, obviously, the citizens in Ward 4 and the city at large. But they would not speak for me. So for that statement to be made in a document that took two years to create, to say that a staff professional at the city got a call from a secretary and felt pressured to get the bid out on time, that again is, you know, it's frivolous, it's untrue. I think it's a cheap shot at two people that likewise were never asked. I don't think, Mr. Jervik can correct me, I don't think my secretary or my liaison was ever asked to testify or be subpoenaed. So those kind of comments are just, I don't find the relevance, and perhaps there are answers to it. The fact that the paragraph starts with the words "it appears" from the testimony and exhibits, that confuses me. And what Mr. Jervik said, Mayor Protem, if you'd indulge me for a minute, this latest one—
Absolutely.
And Mr. Walker, and I concur, Mr. Walker is about as precise and accurate and detailed as any person I've ever met in my life, but if Mr. Walker was not an independent and unbiased consultant because he works for the city, they're taking, I'm assuming, testimony from a city employee or city employees and making a strong statement about me, now that doesn't, that doesn't balance out. It really doesn't. Why? I may never know. And perhaps as I read through this, and perhaps as more information comes forward, some of these questions will be answered. But what I do know, what I do know is that the Kellogg's Air project was, in fact, a high-profile project. That is a true statement. But Kellogg's Air was no different than the Mountain Ridge Little League complex, than the Betty Wilson Soccer Complex, Durango Hills Golf Course and Community Center, all of the project, most recently, the Majestic Park Softball Complex, all high-profile. So yes, that's a true statement, but how I dealt with the Kellogg's Air complex is no different than why— why, what I dealt and how I dealt with every one of my park projects. And I'll stand by that statement for the rest of my life. So that is a true statement. And what I do know when it comes to the park projects, and Mayor Protem, I appreciate your comments as I always do, and no, I don't want anything named after me. Hopefully, I'll live for a long time and will not have anything. But some of these professionals that are still here today that I've worked with for 12 years know that when it came to a park project in my district, I immersed myself in it. I was involved in the preliminary discussions, trying to find the right site, what kind of sports fields are we going to put there, what kind of park amenities, battling with Mark Vincent to not only find the money or steal the money, but secure the money and make sure the money was going to get there. That's the kind of relationship I had with parks. So I was absolutely engaged with every park project, and I make no apologies for that. I make no apologies for Kellogg's Air, and I make no apologies of being part of a council that over the last decade created these facilities all over the city that aren't internationally recognized. No one can combat that. So if I am being accused of influencing or putting pressure on, that's dead wrong. I'll stand by that these high-profile parks that myself and this council got on the streets, I'll take that. I'll take that as a criticism. And as far as the staff that I was fortunate enough to deal with, the Mark Vinsons, the Larry Hogises, Charlie Kays, and those people were professional enough that if I was too aggressive in saying, hey, can we get this done, or what about putting another soccer field, they would have the respect, the mutual respect to say, "Councilman, we can't do it." Mark Vincent, not on one occasion, on 100 occasions, said, "There's no money." That's the kind of relationship that I'll stand by on the public record that I had with the professionals here at the city of Las Vegas. And that won't change. And just as far as this, getting the bid out on the streets is kind of an insinuation that that started the dominoes, so as Mr. Jurbik pointed out, I'm responsible for that. That's crazy. When I first started the city, Public Works used to have this computer program, and I am by no means computer literate, but they showed me how to get to it, and on it was a spreadsheet, Project X, budgeting, notice to proceed, estimated construction time, finish date, everything. And they used to put a specific date, January 1st, whatever the case. And you can bet every week I'd press that matrix on, take a look at it, and find out what the status of that project was. I will swear to that. And it got to the point where they changed it from January 1st in whatever year to first quarter whatever year, because I held them. If they said the project was going to be done on January 1st, 2005, I held them to that, because that's what I was telling my citizens and my constituents and the people out there, this is what the city's going to provide. So the bidding process, I don't influence. Staff presents and provides us with the spreadsheet, with all the details. And it's, I think, it remains as an elected official, our responsibility to take a look at that spreadsheet and say, "We're making a commitment to the citizens, we're spending tens of millions of dollars. I think it's our obligation, and certainly within my right, to say, 'Staff, how are we doing?'" Not a date anymore, it's the quarter, first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, but it got done. And once again, I'll stand by that. The bottom line, again, no apologies, absolutely no apologies for my role in Kellogg's Air, and I'm proud of it. Because what has Kellogg's Air, along with many other projects in the city, what has it done? What has Kellogg's Air done for the city of Las Vegas in its short time being open? I'm guessing there's hundreds of thousands of people, mostly Las Vegans, certainly people from all over the country, and, as the mayor very well knows, internationally. They come to Kellogg's Air, they come to Betty Wilson. What have we done as a council to provide that? I think we've given the people what they want most. Seeing their tax dollars right in front of them, where a soccer player, a baseball player, lacrosse player, someone going to the community center, someone walking their dog, someone jogging, someone playing at the Darling Tennis Center, they feel that the city has given them and provided them what they want. And again, no apologies for that. Your Honor, Mayor Protem, thank you. I needed to clear the public record, because once again, someone makes up a statement, a falsehood, if I don't respond to it, it becomes a truth. I hope you understand that I presented the truth today. Thank you very much.
Very well put.
Mayor Protem, may I ask Mr. Jurbik a question? And Commissioner Brown, this may aid you if you'd like. The document that we've been referring to is the arbitrator's decision, 157 pages or whatever. But there was a hearing that took months, and this was a recorded hearing, was it not? Are there, what do you call them, court reporters?
I don't know if it was a tape recorder, court reporter, but it was recorded, that's correct.
These hearings were recorded, and did we get transcripts from these hearings?
I know our attorneys did. I know that Bill Henry attended them before Mr. Jurbik started with the office, and I'm sure that they're out there somewhere. I don't have them in my office.
The portion in the decision that Commissioner Brown referred to that referred to him, did it cite to a transcript page or a volume or anything like that?
No, Commissioner Brown read verbatim from page two of the award and decision, and that's all it is, is just one paragraph.
Commissioner Brown, the author of that page or whatever, that portion of the decision did not cite to a place in the record, but there is a record available. And it, you know, might be interesting for you to look at that record to see if there is any testimony that backs up that assertion or not, because I doubt if there is.
I can assure you that if any of the lawyers, myself included, had ever thought that this was going to be a blame game that would point fingers at everybody in the city, including Councilman Brown, he would have been notified immediately and would have been there. If there was some throwaway line that somebody said at a hearing that an arbitrator later seized upon and put in an opinion, well, I got to tell you, I was just shocked to read that, as, probably not as shocked as Commissioner Brown, but plenty shocked to see it. But then as I read the rest of that opinion, you know, I got to tell you, no project that we're involved in, everybody's 100% right or 100% wrong, we know that. But then this project did go out to bid before the plans were finalized. But if you stop right there and say, "That's why this happened," you're wrong, because we have a lot of projects that start that way. And very quickly, we go through the process of revising the plans and working very diligently with the contractor. We have sit-down meetings when we finally agree this is what's going to be built. And where's some flexibility involved in these projects, and you all know that, you know, sometimes you add things. Commissioner Brown made a change to this project, which, you know, I don't think anybody can fault him for getting involved in this. Right in the middle of the project, somebody came to the city and said, "There's this new type of astroturf you ought to use on these fields." This is the tennis complex now. This is the whole Kellogg's Air complex. And so a decision was made in the middle to abandon natural turf and use this new astroturf for a portion of the project. Well, that's water-saving and makes a lot of sense. You'd want somebody to be involved in that. So those are the kinds of decisions that I was aware that Commissioner Brown was involved in when he was Councilman Brown, and they were just the exact kind of decisions he gets elected to make. And so when I saw this sentence in there, it shocked me. But when I read the rest of the opinion, if you read the majority opinion, it really is incredible to me. And that's my personal opinion, but I look at it and I think, it's just, everybody's at fault in the city from top to bottom, because it's an easy way to not explain why this happened. You know, this is a real simple issue. Somebody made a decision to pin these courts to the ground by putting the light standards inside the court instead of outside. That's what I thought we were there to decide in arbitration. But again, if, you know, this is the same group of people that completely disregarded all of our expert testimony, completely disregarded Jerry Walker's testimony. Like I say, if there's any hero in this, it is Jerry Walker and Public Works. I think they did a great job.
Thank you.
But that also bet.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have a comment.
Please.
You know, Commissioner Brown made reference to a lot of projects that he is personally responsible for, along with city staff. But this isn't the first park that the city of Las Vegas has built. I've been in construction a long time. Concrete cracks, there are reasons for that. What are they? I'm disappointed. I mean, I think the public's getting the short end of the stick. I think that the contractors getting the short end of the stick here. What a waste, what a waste of resources and time and effort. Just go out and fix the concrete tennis courts. That's all they needed to do without going this far. And I'm really disappointed, Mr. Jurbik, and I absolutely feel that this was a waste of a lot of time on people's parts and a lot of finger pointing that isn't justified. Commissioner, I'm with you on this. Thank you for your dedication and contributions to the city, because we're going to carry those on. Thank you.
Councilman Anthony, please.
I'd just want, I'd like to make one comment. If you haven't been out to the Darling Tennis Center, you need to go out and see it. I mean, this is a world-class facility. It's nationally known, internationally known. There's been championship games played there. There are people constantly going out there. It's used by the citizens of Las Vegas. Check out their, how much the courts are used. They're used constantly. There was a senior Olympics, there were 40, 50 seniors out there using the facility. This is an outstanding addition to the city of Las Vegas and to Ward Four, and I'm just proud it's in Ward Four. I know Commissioner Brown is proud of this facility, and I believe the city council and the mayor, this is a great facility. And at the end of the day, this is going to be something that is going to be great for the country and great for Las Vegas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
I was just going to say, and I've mentioned other times here in meetings, that sometimes it's just having the title councilperson that is intimidating to others. And, you know, I'm not saying one person was right or one was wrong, but to go on such flimsy bit of information, it seems, is a very bad, very wrong thing to do. I've been through experiences in my own family where things like that happened, and it is true, I really believe you have to answer. You have to deny, you have to let the facts be known, and then hold in your own heart all the good you did and how that's just a minor bump someplace in the road that's, that somebody of an arbitration group that is very questionable itself in how it did things put in there, maybe for shock factor, who knows. Sorry it happened, and I'm glad you came, Larry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Anthony, this isn't a public hearing.
I understand, but I got to speak on behalf of Mr. Brown.
Okay, just, just, we've allowed it.
This man's been wrongly treated.
Yes, yes.
We all, I know we all know that.
We need, we need your name, Mr. Anthony.
It was a concrete problem with the, with the tennis court, whatever, and when they put the post inside the thing that you said, and it cracked. Had nothing to do with this man. You can't destroy that man for that.
We need, we need your name, please.
My name is Anthony Hoggis, I'm sorry about that.
We know who that is. We appreciate it.
Mr. Brown is not the fault. Blame everybody. Don't blame no one person on this. This was a mistake. They stuck them six posts into something that was supposed to float, and it cracked. Give me a break. Don't do that to that man. Don't destroy his future.
Thank you. On item 12, what's your recommendation, please?
I recommend that it follow staff recommendation and approve the final payment.
That'd be my motion. You've heard the motion. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion passes. And your recommendation on item 40, please?
On item 40, I'm recommending that we not pursue an appeal in this matter. And so that that should be a motion, follow staff's recommendation to not pursue an appeal in this matter.
Any question on that motion? Hearing none. Cast your vote, please. Please post. Motion carries. And item 41, please.
Item 41 is to approve the award as described in the decision and award to Apco in the amount of $980,000 plus interest.
With the caveat that Mark explained to us?
Yes. He just explained the funding source, not so much the amount itself, but it's to approve the settlement or approve the award and decision.
Thank you. Any question on the motion? Hearing none. Cast your vote. Please post. May I, if I could, real quick, please, Ms. Ganem, Ms. Gonam, and Ms. Hamm, we're running real late today. I think, what are we going to have to ask?
I was going to ask, Ms. Fretwell, how long will our personnel session last? 30 minutes?
I have lunch, we've brought lunch in.
All right. I think, as the Mayor Protem was going to do, he was going to say that we're not going to start our afternoon agenda for at least another hour and a half. So I'd be back there about 2:30.
Well, these young ladies were in my office, and I told them that they'd be here right about 1:10, 1:15, and they are here. So I just wanted them to know that we won't start without you this afternoon. If you want, if you've got something else to do for an hour and a half or so, feel free to do that, please. Thank you.
Anybody who has an item for this afternoon, we're not going to start the afternoon agenda until at least 2:30. We have to work through the supposed lunch hour on personnel issues.
And if I could, for the record, I am going to be leaving you in the hands of Mr. Jurbik for the rest of this afternoon, and I have a plane to catch to San Francisco. I have a Ninth Circuit argument tomorrow morning.
Okay. I want you to hear some comments, though, that I have, now that the vote's been taken and I abstained, and I felt it was inappropriate to say anything prior to having the matter behind us. I think I'm allowed to do that. I might not, Mr. Jurbik, since I'm not voting, but a lot of things about this stunk. There's no other way to put it. I had heard from folks with the city staff that this was going to be a slam dunk in our favor, and we continued calling the city staff on that proposition, and it surely was no slam dunk. I think that the opinion, if you want to call it that, of the arbitrator, I think it was slanted. I think it was full of inconsistencies. I would be ashamed to be a participant in that kind of process and send the parties a bill as they sent. I wouldn't pay them. I would make them justify each and every dollar that they're asking for, because I think it's virtually a fraud that's been perpetrated upon us. And I just want those statements on the record. That's where I come from. All right, item 42. And I would also ask Ms. Fretwell to make sure this never happens again. I know you're working on it, and I'm not going to ask you to say anything at this point in time, but let's make sure it never happens again. Item 42 is discussion and possible action regarding a new package license, subject to provisions of the Fire Codes and Health Department Regulations for Best Fellas, Inc., doing business as Super Liquor Midstrip, 2301 South Las Vegas Boulevard, in Ward Three. Mr. DiFiori?
Mayor, members of the council, you have behind you, or in your investigative books, a copy of the Metro report on the area of concern on the applicants. You'll see that primarily the area of concern is on Mr. Novak. Mr. Suliman is a licensee with the city of Las Vegas and has been before the city council many times before. They're here today to answer any questions you might have, and Sergeant Lowe is here to answer any questions you might have on the Metro report before we make a recommendation.
All right, fine. Gentlemen, would you like to be heard? Please identify yourselves for the record.
My name is Renzi Suliman. I'm a 50% owner of that Super Liquor Midstrip, president of the corporation, Best Fellas Corporation. How can I see?
And I'm Jeff Novak. I live at 2579 Red Planet in Henderson, and I'm 50% owner also of Best Fellas.
All right. If you have anything you'd like to tell us at this time before we hear the recommendation?
We're just looking for, to be approved for that, you know, license, temporary six-month review or something, you know, whatever Mr. Jim is.
Very good. Are there any questions of Mr. DiFiori, the officer, or the applicants? All right.
I do, Your Honor.
Oh, okay, certainly.
In the report, the backup information, Your Honor, from me, I'm less concerned about the pending case you have, I'm more concerned about why it was omitted from your report. And I think the detective will go onto that for us, I would assume. So if you could address that, I'd appreciate that.
Glenn Lowe, Sergeant with Metro Special Investigations. The detective is not here with me today that did the report. However, yeah, he did admit during his, or omitted the fact that he was arrested during his interview several days after his arrest for the DUI.
If, again, Your Honor, if I may, may I ask the applicant, why? Why did that happen? I mean, the Metro requirements in their applications are pretty clear in regards to previous arrests or infractions with the law. Can you address that?
Yes, I can. The detective that interrogated me never really brought it up. It wasn't even questioned. And my counsel told me that it was going to be reduced down to a lesser charge. So I really didn't get into all the details of it, because it was going to be reduced down to just a careless driving charge. So since she didn't bring it up and didn't address it, I didn't really, thought I had to be forthcoming about it, since it was going to be a lesser charge.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks for...
Well, the question was, were you ever, were you arrested for it?
Yes, I was, yes.
Well, were you asked the question whether you ever were arrested? Well, will you ask the question whether you ever were arrested?
Not for that particular charge, no, sir.
Well, they don't ask you for a particular charge. I guess the way you ask questions is...
Any arrest.
Do you have any arrests?
Any arrests, that's true.
Didn't they ask you that question?
I can't recall really asking that to me. It was just that she was asking me all kinds of questions about my background because she went back 20 years to when I was living on the East Coast, and that issue just didn't come up. So it wasn't that I did not answer it, it's just it wasn't... you know, she didn't ask me that question.
Okay. You know, I'll take it at your word, but it seems very unusual to me because that appears to be the most logical question that somebody would be asked.
Well, if I could ask this question, too. Was there paperwork that you filled out for this application?
Um...
I mean, this wasn't an oral investigation or interview or application process?
It was primarily an oral investigation.
But there was, as I'm looking at Mr. DiFiori, there is paperwork that you fill out in this process, and on that paperwork, it says, have you been arrested?
Um...
Thank you.
No, no. It's... I'm sorry, just I can't recall whether or not there was paperwork I had to fill out or not.
Yes, Councilman.
Sergeant Lowe, is there documentation that says... that asks him how many arrests he's had, and he omitted this one? Is that correct?
Yes, any arrest. It asks for any arrest.
And he omitted this one on that document?
I'm not sure about the document, but when they come in for the interview, which is after they submit the paperwork through the city, then they're asked those questions about their arrest record, if they have one.
And he failed to...
Yes, he did not... he did not say that he'd been arrested.
Officer, do you have a document in front of you?
Well, I just have my area of concern report. I don't have the...
Oh, we have what you have. Ordinarily, we have a questionnaire that the applicant fills out, and we don't have that in our backup.
No, we don't necessarily. That you'll find on the Work Card Appeals, but we don't have it for the investigative report on the licensees.
Well, I think maybe we want to change that. Maybe we should have it.
Okay. We can certainly make that change.
It's not a tough change.
No.
Any other questions? All right, this is in Councilman... Mayor Protem's way.
Mr. DiFiori recommends to us.
We met last week with the two applicants, and quite frankly, Mr. Novak expressed remorse in some of the charges and some of the activity that took place over the last several years. While we do have outstanding, or at least one outstanding, charge that is heard... is subject to be heard probably at a later date, I did suggest to him about the best recommendation I could make at this point in time would be a six-month temporary license, pending the outcome of that charge and the litigation that he is in at this point in time, subject to the special use permit conditions that were approved earlier this year, those being that the hours of operation were limited, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The sale of individual containers of beer wine coolers, screw cap wine, is prohibited, and all products shall remain in original configurations as shipped by the manufacturer, and no repackaging in groups smaller from the original manufacturer shall be permitted. Giving him a six-month temporary license will give us an opportunity to review the outstanding charge and make a decision on a permanent license at that point in time.
Sergeant, do you have any problem with that recommendation?
No, I do not.
Thank you very much. I appreciate Sergeant coming down and being here with us today. Mr. Novak, you know, we really take this serious in the city of Las Vegas, especially with these type of licenses that we give out. We don't skim out anybody and everybody. They are a special use permit, that's what they are. And we appreciate those who come forward and have all the paperwork filled out and they have somebody here going to swear by them, okay? It's sometimes hard for us to follow staff's recommendation, but with Metro concurring today, I am going to make a motion for approval of a temporary license with a six-month review. And if there's any problems out there, you have to let us know as soon as possible. And if we have... if we come to the opportunity to say yes or no in six months, I hope to say yes. So you need to just hold your nose to the grindstone and do those things that are necessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, if I could be more specific on any problems, if we could add to that condition, that if there are any incidents where Metro is contacted to the business location or citations or arrests, they have to report that to us within 48 hours.
Well, but again, I'm looking more at him, his personal itself. If we have any problems along that line, can we condition that also, or...
We can. We can condition that as well.
That's more of our additives with that. Okay, with that being said, I'll follow staff recommendation for a temporary license with a six-month review.
Councilman, please. And that's all the conditions on the SUP as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Wait a second. Show mine, yes, please. I've got this little thing that's hard. This is... it's all over the place, my little arrow.
Mayor Goodman, just for the record, Councilwoman Tarkanian asked me to cast a yea vote for her as well.
All right, so it shows all yeses. All right, good luck and make us proud, please.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 44 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a temporary locksmith license for NK Enterprises, Inc., doing business as ABC Locksmith, at 3981 West Sunset Road in Suite E. Is the applicant here?
It doesn't appear that he was. He was notified by certified mail to be here.
Right.
However, I'm ready to move forward with the recommendation.
All right, at this time, I'm going to excuse Councilman Barlow. He is a little bit under the weather here. I don't want him to get me sick anyhow, so go home, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, hope you feel better.
Councilman, can I talk to your staff at lunchtime?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, this was asked for a six-month review due to the concerns that we've had in the locksmith industry over the last year. Mr. Kaufman is a licensed locksmith in Clark County, and in Metro's investigative report, they had no areas of concern on him. We certainly don't have the concerns that we do on other locksmiths in the industry. My recommendation today would be to issue a permanent license for this business.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. DiFiori? Hearing none, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I'll make a motion to follow staff recommendation. Will you assign them, please?
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, earlier in the council meeting, Mayor Protem made the announcement that item 43 was being obeyed to the 11-18 city council meeting. The request was made from staff during the draft agenda, and during the draft agenda, the item 43 appears today as the Able Lock and Key. Item 43 on the permanent agenda is the item for Chiropractic Healing Center, and we would like to move forward with that. The applicant is in the audience today, and she's here to hear, to be heard for item 75 on the special use permit. So I would like to recommend that we recall 43 to not obey it to 11-18, but to hear that today in conjunction with item 75.
All right, let me ask Mr. Urbek, is there any problem with that, since we announced it in advance earlier?
I don't believe so, as long as the parties are still present.
All right, fair enough. Then we have a motion then to reconsider item 43?
That'd be my motion, Your Honor.
All right, and we're going to hear 43. Let's vote on that first, to reconsider 43, please. All right. No. Okay. 43?
I did. Okay, all right, the motion carries.
And now we're going to call 43 and 75?
If your planning staff is not here on item 75.
All right, then we'll call 43. 43 is discussion and possible action regarding a review of conditions for a massage establishment license subject to provisions of the Planning Codes, Chiropractic Healing Center Unlimited, Inc., doing business as Chiropractic Healing Center at 7250 Peak Drive, Suite 106.
Can we just... Trail this to the second item?
I was going to... Maybe we should trail it to the afternoon item so we can hear both at the same time.
I think that'd be a good idea, and she's willing...
That's the best.
And the applicant is willing to have it heard at the same time.
Okay, fine. As I say, we'll probably get started again about 2:30 this afternoon. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. So we'll call 43 and 75 this afternoon. Very good. Thank you. All right, then we'll go to item...
Go ahead.
Okay, item 45 is discussion and possible action.
44.
44? 44 is discussion and possible action regarding... no, we just did 45. 45.
What's the other one, then?
It's a different one.
Let's see, 46.
45 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a temporary Class II Secondhand Dealer License for bargain hunters, doing business as bargain hunters. That makes a lot of sense. At 1200 South Rainbow Boulevard, and this is in Ward One. Mr. DiFiori?
Mayor, members of the council, this is back for a six-month review. During that period of six months, we've had an applicant, her husband, come forward for key employee since Ms. Luxembourg has a full-time position outside of her nature of her business. We have also had some discussion with the applicant on identifiable items in the Secondhand Code and what needs to be reported to Metro on a timely basis and what needs... what records need to be kept. So I think we have a better understanding today than when she first came in and made the application. My recommendation today would be to extend the temporary license for an additional six month period pending the Metro investigation of her husband as a key employee. If that comes forward as a favorable police report from Metro, then we'll ask the council to grant us the authority to issue the permanent license for this location. If it comes back unfavorable, we'll bring this back before the city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. DiFiori. Any questions to Mr. DiFiori? Folks, please identify yourselves for the record.
My name is Stacy Luxembourg.
And I'm Neil Luxembourg.
All right. Would you like to say anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, you've sat here a long time to say nothing, but that's okay. All right. Any questions of the Luxemburgs? If not, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
I was able to visit the bargain hunters, found it a very nice place, a good, kept business, and I would like to recommend approval of the recommendation for Mr. DiFiori.
All right, let's vote.
With all ordinary conditions.
Okay, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you, folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 46 is discussion and possible action regarding a 90-day review of a temporary martial arts instruction business license for Chung Su Kim, doing business as CS Kim Taekwondo School.
I couldn't do this right. I was thinking about Kwon Do.
That's right.
No, Mr. Kwon Do.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Kim is here today. He explained to me before the meeting that he had tried to get a certified court interpreter...
Oh, don't go there again.
But...
No, we called him Mr. Taekwondo the whole... the last hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
I don't think you can handle this either.
I can't. I can't. I can't. I give up on this one. All right, go ahead, Mr. DiFiori.
But he understands what we're going to be discussing today, and I'm ready to move forward on a favorable recommendation. During this last 90 days, he was... the primary of concern was his financing of the business, and we have resolved that matter through Metropolitan Police Department. He was also asked to provide us with a list of his clients and their telephone numbers, and also to limit the obtaining of their fees for this 90-day period. He has met all of the conditions that we've required. His background has been cleared, and I'm ready to move forward with a recommendation of a permanent license for Mr. Kim.
Okay, fine. Mr. Kim?
Yes, sir.
Did you understand what Mr....
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Kim. I owe you an apology. I didn't refer to you last time by your appropriate name, and I apologize for that. But I want to just say to you that I'm glad everything is going well, that the martial arts instruction studio seems to be going well. Is that right? Yes. Well, congratulations, Mr. Kim. Is the appropriate motion for a permanent license?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, that is my motion.
All right, let's vote on that, please.
Thank you, sir.
Post, please. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Item 47 is discussion and possible action regarding a new locksmith license for Speedy Locksmith &amp; Key, doing business as Able Lock &amp; Key at 1913 East Charleston Boulevard in Ward Three.
Your Honor, if I could like make a motion to hold this in advance until our 11-18-09 meeting, please.
All right, 11-18. That's the motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 48 is discussion and possible action regarding an appeal of a denial of a reflexology establishment for Tal Hong, doing business as Mildfoot Massage at 2600 West Sahara Avenue in Suite 117, and this is in Ward One. Is the applicant here?
Mayor, he is not, but I have an explanation for that.
Okay.
When he was... when the Metro police report was completed, he was given notice by letter for him to obtain a copy of that police report. He failed to do so. In our notification of this meeting today, I also suggested that he obtain a copy of the police report before he had this item heard. He did not do so. Sergeant Lowe brought a copy of that police report with him to the meeting with his certified court interpreter in the courtyard. He read the report, and following that, through the certified court interpreter, he offered a letter withdrawing his appeal. So I've got his letter from him today. He's not here. He's going to withdraw his appeal, and I'd like to submit this on the record.
All right, then we'll make it part of the record. Now, what do we do? Do we move to strike?
Yes.
All right, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I move to approve your recommendation.
All right, a motion to strike. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll go to 52. This is Bill Number Z, 2009-2, amends the city's official zoning map atlas by changing the zoning designations of certain parcels of land. Councilman Anthony, do we wish to have the bill read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Does it have to be the entire bill?
No, just the title, please.
Bill Number Z, 2009-2, in ordinance to amend the official zoning map atlas of the city of Las Vegas by changing the zoning designations of certain parcels of land and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony, do you have a motion, please?
I'll move to adopt.
All right, there's a motion to adopt. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, there's a motion to adopt. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-three is Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-one. Councilman, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bill Number two thousand nine forty-one, in ordinance to revise the hillside development standards and guidelines to reflect their applicability to non-residential development and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. And Councilman Anthony, your motion, please.
I'll move to adopt.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-four is Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-two. Would you read that, please? Oh, pardon me. Would you like that read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-two, in ordinance to amend the downtown centennial plan to allow certain alcohol-related uses within the Parkway Center district by means of special use permit and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. And Councilman Anthony, your motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-five is Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-three. Councilman Anthony, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-three, in ordinance to temporarily allow the sale of used motor vehicles in town center without the requirement that the use be incidental to new vehicle sales and to provide for other related matters.
All right, thank you. And Councilman Anthony, your motion, please.
Move to adopt.
Thank you. Please vote on that. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-six, which is Bill two thousand nine dash forty-four, is eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we're going to move on to the new bills. And new bills, Items fifty-seven and fifty-eight, two thousand nine dash forty-five and two thousand nine dash forty-seven, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, November seventeenth, two thousand nine. Mr. Urbic, would you read those, please?
Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-five is in ordinance to amend the city's regulations pertaining to alcoholic beverages, including updates to licensing categories, standards, and definitions, and providing for other related matters. Bill Number two thousand nine dash forty-seven is in ordinance to update the city's drought conservation measures in accordance with the revisions to Southern Nevada Water Authority's drought plan and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. I'm going to assume that Councilman Barlow will be available on the seventeenth. Councilman Anthony, will you be available on the seventeenth?
I will be there.
Excellent. So these are assigned to you for your consideration. We'll move on to item number fifty-nine. Fifty-nine is to go into closed session to discuss upcoming labor negotiations. May I have a motion, please, to have a closed session?
Somewhere, John.
All right, thank you very much. Following the closed session, the council meeting will be in recess until one-thirty, so an hour from now, pardon me, two-thirty, I mean. An hour from now, I apologize to everybody, but we've been working nonstop. Okay. We're going to vote on that motion, please. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you for reminding me. We'll be in recess until two-thirty. Two-thirty. Well, it's good morning, Lois.
And it's mostly taking on the, it looks like from the going, but it's mostly taking on the other side because there's a building here.
That's right. That's correct. It is offset mostly to the south, but there is an impact.
How much of an impact?
Well, the eighteen feet that we talked about earlier is what this proposal shows, and we certainly would like to go in that direction, as we're looking with Ugasla. And so that's what we're going to put forward today.
Oh, we are putting, we're going to pay it today.
Exactly.
So I'm here, I'm watching you.
Exactly right.
What is just so important is...
Why is it important is because this is going to be a one-way west. This is going to be one-way east, and there's only one way to get under the railroad tracks.
I didn't even, I don't think we have this whole part of it, so this is all going to be one-way.
To make this one-way way, we have to bring them together before the railroad tracks, and this is an attractive spot.
Okay. I didn't realize.
That's kind of what's right.
But you're bringing them together here, aren't you?
Right.
Yes.
It also increases the cost. In looking at the plan, though, it looks like most of the property that you, you want one here in that area is for sidewalks.
And landscape, right. That's much of...
And that's what we're trying to do in the downtown, in the new jobs, they're trying to try to do that. There's something else, yeah.
Well, I would be good.
And that's what you're saying, long-term. Well, except for if we develop it, then they might hold us to the same standard, so.
Well, you're not putting something that way there. Yeah, it, well, they can't, they can't, I mean, you can't, they can't force a part of it exactly or something.
Of course.
Can you?
No.
No, no.
But we can require that whatever development goes in conforms to the standards in place.
And the standards in place would be the eighteen feet?
Not necessarily, but there is a widened sidewalk and a landscape. So depending on the width of the street that goes in...
I'm sorry, I'll let me just get...
Right, right, and I can't speculate, you know, what we're going to end up with.
No, no, that's okay.
Yeah, that's what we were looking at. And so you end up with three lanes in each direction, in each direction. This is four lanes.
Well, the left turn lane, we don't really count as a through lane.
And then you've got the pedestrian area here, you've got a...
Well, this is a bicycle.
Or, sorry, that's a bicycle. Bicycle lane, they're together, and then the five-foot landing. And that's what you would expect from us.
Well, again...
So that's ten, fifteen, seventeen, twenty-two feet? No.
No.
It's just where this, see the right-of-way is right here, so that eighteen-foot that was...
I think her question is, yes, not doing this, but they came in for development. Today, what would we require in terms of a buffer?
Plan or whatever.
The, the, would we require them to meet downtown centennial standards? The answer is yes, but the dimensions depend on what the width of the road is. And so would we require eighteen feet from here? Possibly not. I can't really say.
So this is ten feet now.
Right.
But that's, this is our existing property line, so as it stands right now, we don't have to dedicate anything. Is that right?
Under the current design.
Yes. So, I mean, this is a huge... But you've got a, my property. But you would, rather than being in a right-of-way, then be a private property.
Some, some might, and it's difficult to say right now, because Bonneville is identified as the transportation, as a transportation corridor. So there are certain allowances that we can exploit on Bonneville. That means that it doesn't necessarily have to be the full width. We can potentially, depending on what's there, what exists, what you're proposing, we can look at other things.
How kindly would you look at us if this didn't get purchased by the city?
Um, to me, but, um, whether it's purchased or not will make no difference to me.
This, yeah, the negotiations, things they don't...
No. Well, I know, but a lot of this is...
Well, I'm here, I'm on the private development side, and this project is really public development side.
You're on the private development side? Meaning, meaning when you work with private developers, where they can...
All right. I don't work for them, but I represent public works to make sure that our interests are preserved as private developers come in to develop.
Okay.
So this design is being done by the public side, and I'm kind of separate from that. So even if these guys are mad as heck at you, I'm not, and so, and I'm the ones who would be...
And we wouldn't be mad as heck, because honestly, right now, we're working on a project without a right-of-way, which is what we plan on doing. And this is just a future plan, that someday, we can see that, why we need to ask them there. So there's a lot of anger, wondering, yeah, it's just what it is. What, what are you preparing? What is the schedule here? Are you going to be, get these couplets and things? We are going to be doing that first phase, which is showing that we're... We are going to be doing that regardless of what happens. To where? We're going to be doing this couplet right here.
Plus, whether we make it this way or stay within the existing right-of-way, or in the home, you need an additional one or two feet is negotiable, and that's why we started...
Okay, maybe they could take them.
Well, you can already see, you can already see me.
Right, left turns, to allow left turns.
It's a whole... Check. That's okay. It's all right.
Again, the reason that we're looking at negotiating that is just to...
Oh, no, I appreciate that. That's great. We're duking. I'm Jamie Pino.
Well, we're asking to have additional time so that we can negotiate. Sixty-eight, sixty-four. Six weeks. We wanted to go the one month, but the agenda is going to be really big, so we moved it to weeks next. So it'll be the sixteenth of December, and that gives us, again, more time to work.
I appreciate it. It's been very, it's been very... She sent out the troops.
Yeah, we feel, we feel rescued.
Thank you. Hi, how are you? Thank you. Jamie, I'll make you remember before we...
Hello, nice to meet you. Okay.
How are you doing? Forget, forget. Hang on, here we go.
I can't have my phone.
They'll let her answer all the emails.
I don't need to come back.
You do.
Great, thank you.
Well, I don't think I've lost weight this time. Do you wear that every time? How did I, I've only been a county councilman about a thousand times. So I kind of sit far down in the galaxy, right? It's like...
I was, didn't I? Just absolutely. All right, go on, back.
You know what I'm doing? I don't know.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for bearing with us. I promise you that we worked the whole noon hour. You have my word on that, and we worked all morning long, so we'll try to move this along as quickly as possible. Not a very difficult afternoon agenda. Item number sixty, is any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and enacted upon at this time? Mayor Protown.
Thank you, your honor. We have four items. Item sixty-five is a special use permit thirty-four oh sixteen, applicant Clearwire Wireless LLC owner, LXT Four LLC. Appeal filed by the now by the planning commission for a proposed eighty-foot tall wireless communication facility approximately five hundred and sixty feet north of Meadows Lane and approximately five hundred and thirty feet east of Decatur Boulevard. Deputy request that be held in abeyance until our twelve-two two thousand nine meeting. Item sixty-seven is a GPA thirty-five seven twenty-nine, applicant City of Las Vegas owner, Live Work LLC at all, request to amend the master plan of streets and highways, modify two-way of the transportation and streets and highways element of Las Vegas two twenty-twenty master plan, add a secondary electric to connect Bonneville Avenue with Clark Avenue between Casino Center Boulevard and First Street, and to reclassify Bonneville Avenue from an eighty-foot secondary to a hundred and twenty-five-foot parkway arterial between Casino Center Boulevard and Main Street. Staff's working on a resolution of this item. They would like to have that be held in abeyance to our December the sixteenth, two thousand nine meeting. And item seventy-four is a special use permit thirty-five seven thirty-one, applicant La Pita Meat Market LLC owner and VNI Lake Mead Promenade LLC at sixty-four thirty west Lake Mead Boulevard in Suite One Fifteen. The applicant would like that to be held in abeyance until our twelve-sixteen two thousand nine meeting. Are there any items at this time? And then, your honor, I make a motion to bring these three items forward, take action, please, at this time.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post.
And, your honor, if I could, please.
Yes.
I have a request to pull item seventy-six forward because they've been here for a long time, and they have another appointment ASAP, please.
All right.
It won't take that long.
Very good. Seventy-six. Seventy-six is RQR three-six-one-eight-nine, required review, it's going to be a public hearing. The applicant is Elcomp and Tires. The owner is Armenian and Kutuknionian. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for auto parts, new and rebuilt accessory sales and services, and auto repair garage minor on point-three-six acres located in forty-four oh one Stewart Avenue, and this is in Ward Three. The staff recommends denial. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open. Mr. Garcia.
Mayor members of the council, George Garcia, seventeen-eleven Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite One Ten. Pleasure to be before you, and I appreciate working with the councilman's office on this, and we have some suggestions that we think would be appropriate, one of which would be to include a tire closure on the backside of the building. If you'd like to see that location, I can show it to you. It's right next to the trash enclosure. In addition to which, there is currently, while the business is not operating twenty-four hours and is not allowed by condition to allow to operate twenty-four hours, the sign currently contains twenty-four in it, and so we would ask that that condition be added to, to remove or eliminate the twenty-four from the signage.
And what, what hour would you, are you considering working?
We would just, the hours currently are now are from, in the conditions of approval until six, from, I think it's from eight to six. And so we would just literally strike or remove the twenty-four from the sign, so that it would not be, the hours would not be twenty-four. And basically, other than that, we would ask that the trash enclosure be, come back before you with a six-month review and complete the trash enclosure within six months.
You missed the most important one, though. I, I, I don't want any work outside of that, the bays. If there's any outside work, if any, any city employee goes down and sees it, if I go down and see it, if there's any outside work at all, they're going to lose their license right then and there. I've been dealing with this for about four or five years now, and I'm tired of it.
Fully understood and agree to.
Okay.
All right, public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Councilman Reese, I just drove by there to check it out. There's two other issues to consider there, too. And you could see him in one, from one of the photographs from the, looking east. The siding that, right there, if you see that, the siding is peeling off and falling down. And, you know, there, these people, I think, are trying, because there's some roof tiles missing, and they, they replaced them. But I wonder if we can revisit this in like another six months?
Yes.
Because, I mean, you know, I, I mean, it could be fixed up. The other thing is that the, where they're talking about, the, the trash enclosure, the bend is too big for the enclosure, so the gates are, are open. So if they could resolve that issue, I'd appreciate it.
Anybody else like to be heard? Sorry, yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Farlow.
Anybody else like to be heard, public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing.
For Mr. Farlow's benefit, we also have another problem down there on Stewart and Eastern Avenue, too, at that tire shop, too. This is, that's a hundred times worse than this one here. George, I, Mr. Garcia, I really appreciate you working with us on this item. Margaret, do I, do I have to put a condition in there for the, yes, please?
If I may, as this is an SUP and not an SDR, the issues that Mr. Garcia discussed will be noted in the file, and staff will follow up on those changes. The added conditions with regard to the use that we would recommend is that there shall be no exterior storage of tires... be no exterior storage of tires, nor exterior repair work conducted at any time, and then that there shall be a six-month administrative review. At that time, the staff will then review the exterior storage, the enclosure of the tires, that would then have them not be stored in the exterior, and we will check the work and also the general property maintenance. If there is a problem at that time, then we would be bringing it back for a hearing at the city council.
Mr. Garcia.
Those are, they're also understood and agreed to.
Thank you very much.
So those are just those two added conditions.
Thank you. You're not making motion to approve this item seventy-six with the added conditions or corrected conditions, and again, thank Mr. Garcia for working with us on this item.
All right, very good, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, good luck.
Mayor, council, thank you.
You're welcome. Item sixty-one through sixty-four may be considered in one motion, one vote, they're, bless you, they're considered routine public hearings, the non-public hearing items with no condition changes, and any person representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Does anybody want item sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, or sixty-four removed? All right, then we'll read them all together. Sixty-one is WVR three-five-seven-one-oh, applicant owner is Montecito Partners LLC. Request for waiver of Title nineteen-point-twelve-point-oh-four-oh-E-two to allow a three-hundred-and-ninety-four cubic foot utility box to be set back zero feet from the public right-of-way with no required landscaping or three feet of landscaping is required at sixty-six oh five Grand Montecito Parkway in Ward Six. Number sixty-two is SUP three-five-seven-three-four, the applicant is Jewelry Manufacturers Exchanging, the owner Durango Commons L P D LLC. Request for a special use permit to add a jewelry store class-three used to an existing jewelry store at eighty-five fifty West Charleston Boulevard in Suite one-oh-eight in Ward Two. Number sixty-three is SUP three-five-seven-five-five, the applicant is United States Veterans Initiative, the owner six-ten LLC et al. Request for a special use permit for a proposed social service provider at six-ten North Las Vegas Boulevard in Ward Five. And number sixty-four is DIR thirty-six-two-three-six, the applicant is Bellacre Board of Directors, the owner is Bellacre Community Association. Request to allow the operation of a hundred-and-thirty-five square foot water feature located at the entrance in front of a guard building at six-nineteen Meadows Canyon Lane in Ward Two. The planning commission and staff recommend approval for all of these items. Items sixty-one through sixty-three are public hearings, which I now declare open. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on those items, sixty-one, sixty-two, or sixty-three? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, I have a motion then to approve items sixty-one through sixty-four, please.
Yes, I make a motion to approve those items with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-six is SUP three-five-three-four-six, special use permit, a public hearing, the applicant is Winona Purdue, the owner is Tonopah Craig Road Company LLP. Request for a special use permit for a proposed six-thousand square foot thrift shop at forty-four sixty North Rancho Drive in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Anybody here on behalf of the applicant?
No, Your Honor, if I may?
Yes.
I have a verbal from the applicant to table this agenda item, I'm hesitant to do that until I have written verification, so at this point, I'd like to move to obey this item for ninety days until I've had time to work with the applicant to do, get the paperwork right.
Okay, Ms. Bridges' vote, would ninety days be? All right, January sixth? Is that it? Watch your head. January sixth? All right, there's a motion to obey to January sixth, let's vote, please. February. February third, that's the motion? Let's vote? Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item sixty-eight and sixty-nine. Sixty-eight is ZON three-five-seven-two-three, request for a rezoning from C-one, which is limited commercial, and C-two, general commercial, to C-two, general commercial. And sixty-nine is SUP three-five-seven-two-four, request for a special use permit for a hotel residence extended stay. The applicant owner is YSPM Investment LLC, and the project is located at, on a hundred, one-point-four-oh acres at eleven-fifty South Las Vegas Boulevard. That's one-point-four-oh acres at eleven-fifty South Las Vegas Boulevard. The planning commission recommends approval of item sixty-eight and denial of item sixty-nine, and the staff recommends approval of both items. These items are in Ward Three, they're public hearings, which are now declared open. Yes, sir.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council, I'm Dennis Rusk, architect, thirty-five thirty West Torino Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, representing the applicant. On the first item, this is fundamentally a housekeeping item, where we need to join the property into all one property, but currently it's zoned in two different zones, so by making it all one zone, then we can join both pieces into one piece of property, which will eliminate some of the building department issues that I have with the property line going through the middle of the unit. So I'd ask you to please support this housekeeping item for us. On the second item, extraordinary times that we're living in need extraordinary options on how to get through this period of time. My clients who are Las Vegas residents, they're not out-of-towners, they're on-site every single day, they have invested a great deal in upgrading this particular piece of property to make it consistent with the goals of the downtown centennial plan. What they're asking for is to allow a monthly stay for individuals, primarily the ones that are working at, like at the city center or other places coming to town, that don't want to commit to a year or a six-month apartment lease, but can live there while they're working there, and then they go home on weekends to give additional income to keep this operation viable during this very difficult time. We would request that you look at it in terms of a six-month review, and to show that we have no desire to have any unseemly, unruly, or unacceptable people in the motel, because the rest of the bounce of the hotel will still be in Econo Lodge with its standards, and show that we're doing the very best to further the interests both of our, my clients as well as the neighborhood.
All right, thank you, are there any questions to the gentleman?
Just a couple comments, Your Honor. For the record, I've had six emails and other calls opposing this, item number sixty-nine. I do have two I'd like to read here. Virginia Brunner called a little while ago opposed to the SUP Econo Lodge, eleven-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard South, cannot make the meeting, and Steve Schwink posted Econo Lodge, SUP, SUP feels that it goes against the downtown plan, cannot make a meeting this afternoon, and I just want those on the record.
All right, thank you, make those part of the record then, this is a public hearing, anyone like to be heard?
Cindy Funkhauser, twelve-twenty-eight South Casino Center Boulevard. I have been a resident and a business owner in the arts district for nearly fourteen years. While we certainly understand the circumstances and the times they're going through, because we're all going through those times, based on that, I should be asking for my property to be turned into a titty bar, because that's more economically sound. And, well, it's more economic-
I have no idea what you're talking about.
I said that's-
Would you like to define that?
I said that's more economically sound than being in the antique business, so what I'm saying is, I don't think it should be based on economics, I mean, it's a redevelopment area, and these are the issues that I have. This type of use does not foster the economic growth of our area, it's only a few blocks outside the arts district, and it is in the redevelopment area. You know, myself, and I know other people that are here, and some people that couldn't come today, have their, you know, while we understand, again, the economics of it, we have our life savings invested in that area. You know, I mean, I'm totally vested down there. And, you know, Mayor, you've been a really great supporter of us, and we hope that that will continue.
I like the motion that you just made. I want to, I want to vote on that.
Well, you know, if I could-
Can I do that?
If I could, I'm really disturbed right now. I was, I met with the applicant on Monday, and I referred to the fact that you'd come over to see me, and I, he's saying that you was very much in favor of this project.
Absolutely not, I didn't ever say that.
I will not stand for anybody to lie to me, ever.
No.
I seen Cindy out there, and I'm saying, well, we got some people in here in favor of this project. I was told by the applicant that she was very much opposing it, and I says, well, it's awful strange, I said, she came by my barber shop, and told me she was very much opposing it. And he says, well, I don't know where she came from, where that came from. And so I want, I want them to know, I'm really, really disturbed with this, with this revelation here today.
Yeah, I absolutely never, never said that, what I actually said was that I would never make a decision like that.
The applicant sat right there in my office, him and the representative, saying that you support this project.
No, that is, that is not correct. I do not, nor did I ever say that I did. I did, you know, do some research on the things that I could find, and like I said, the issues I have is this, this isn't going to foster growth in a redevelopment area. They, the weeklies all over town, you know, historically have never fostered growth in the areas they're in. If you check any of them, any of the weekly or monthlies, you'll find that the crime rate is up since they have been implemented. And I don't think, or at least not to my knowledge, you know, even if there's something like a six-month review, it's my understanding that a special use permit, you know, I'm not worried about six months, I'm worried about six months and one day, because in six months and one day, that property could be sold, and the next user could not be as friendly to, you know, keeping it up as, as the current owner is. So we just have no guarantees, and, you know, I would ask the city attorney to tell us on the record how many times these, these special use permits for extended stay, how many have actually been revoked?
None, to my knowledge.
That's what I thought, that's what I'm afraid of, you know, if none have ever been revoked-
But that's not to say that we've had problems with them in the past either, so you can't read, you can't read that into that.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's another one of my issues, that, is that I feel this would probably not be revoked, I mean, we already have some down the street, within two to three blocks in various directions, and they're all a problem. So I hope you will consider that seriously in your vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Veronica Holmes-Litvak, I'm also against it, I'm on the opposite end of the street from Cindy Funkhauser. We've all put a substantial amount of our life savings into our businesses down there, and some of us live down there. I have eleven tenants down there who are also opposed to this, they put a lot of their money into their places and have signed long-term leases, and this really puts a jolt into everything that we're doing down there, it brings the wrong element of people. Again, I was interested in the answer that the attorney said, because I wanted to know specifically if this were granted, and if it were a, based on a six-month review, does that go with the property, that zoning? So a review wouldn't make any difference in this case. If we were in agreeance to, to support a six-month review, in other words, at the end of six months, if he kept his place up and did everything that he says he's going to do, would it really matter? If it goes with the property and he sold in six months and a day, like Cindy said, wouldn't really matter.
All those conditions that were placed on this SUP would follow, they run with the land, so if they required another six-month review and another six-month review, the new owner would have to adhere to all the conditions that the council placed on it.
Okay, that was something I needed clarification on. I haven't gone to see the property, and I, and I'm sure the gentleman is as nice as he can be, I've talked to him a couple of times, we certainly all want to be good neighbors, and I know he's put a substantial investment in that, too, the only difference is, we're all down there trying to create an antique and arts district and businesses, and bring something to the city that we haven't had here before. And as I have heard from him directly, and as was stated in the last meeting at the planning commission meeting, he is in it for the real estate value. So what happens to us when he leaves matters not to him, but we feel like what happens down there now matters to the whole city, because we bring something to the table this city has not had before. In all major cities, there's been antique and arts districts, we've never had one here. Cindy and I have worked very hard, along with a lot of people in this city and on this council and our neighbors, to bring something to the table that other large cities have, and we're so close to getting there. Now, Third Street is just about finished, we have shopped the block starting, there's so much going on down there, and we're fighting every element as it is down there, I mean, we have hardships, too, excuse me, with the economy, everybody does, but we can't all come crying up here and want you to change and grant us different licenses and permits and waivers, because we're having hard times. You know, I mean, Cindy's idea of what she'd convert her business to is just a thought.
That was a good idea.
We can all come up here and ask for different licenses and permits and everything to help us get through the hard times. I mean, if that works for her, I'd like, I'd like the gentleman that just spent a million on his place to give us a half a million, so we can make it through these hard times, too, because we don't have a million to put into our places. So that's all I have to say, other than that, whatever happens, we want to be good neighbors, and there are other ways to get business to your place, and we're all willing to help do that, you know, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hans Siewer, thirteen oh two South Third Street, I've been a resident of Las Vegas for twenty-five years, worked in Jubilee for seventeen. For the past year, I've tried to open up a gallery on Third Street, and I only saw the area for one year. And basically, the only people that walk around there are hookers, drug dealers, and bums, you know, and what we're trying to do is change the area, and I, in my opinion, this would not help it, it would be detrimental, you know, one has to take it step by step. And so I'm in agreement with them, and thank you very much for, for your listen to me.
Thank you. Corntway.
I'm Michael Corntway, I'm also a local businessperson and a resident, I live on Eighth Street, and on a daily basis, I deal with weekly motels, there's a lot of them around the Las Vegas Boulevard, Fremont, Carson area, and I make a lot of phone calls to the Metropolitan Police Department, and I would say, out of probably five calls a week, four of those have to do in one way or another with the weekly motels, whether it has to do with prostitution or drugs, drug trafficking, overall drunkenness, derelicts, break-ins, just about everything could be traced back, either directly or indirectly, to one of these weekly motels in the area. So I also understand how difficult it is to make it during these times, and I would also like to apply now for my adult cabaret license.
I like that idea, too, this is excellent. No, we're now, we're now beginning to develop the city that I foresee, it's, it's a one between Cindy and yourself, Michael.
Let the red light district begin.
This is really very titillating, as they say.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Good afternoon, I'm Jennifer Harrington, I, I think that, I'll echo everything that Michael said, because I live with him, so there's, there's a lot of extra talking about this, but I also will turn the gallery into something else, if we can, you know, figure something out for, for next month's meeting as well, Cindy and I can get together and maybe do something. But anyway, I just wanted to echo Michael's sentiments, and my gallery's in the midst of eight weeklies, and, you know, the same sort of people are all around, and I have to keep my gallery door locked, so that I can be safe in there. So thank you so much, and I apologize, but we're all just not in favor of this.
Sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Lance Rake, I'm with the Progressive Leadership Alliance of Nevada at the corner of six and Gas, we are not applying for a cabaret license.
Darn.
But I, I point that out to indicate that we, that I, as an organization, we have a dog in this fight. I also live in the Hunt Ridge neighborhood, and Gary Reese is my councilman, so I thank you for this opportunity to speak, and it's good to see you again, councilwoman. The reason I'm here is because, not because I think that there's not room in downtown Las Vegas and in, in our city for weekly and monthly rentals, I think those are actually important for our community. What I am concerned about, though, is that we have quite a few, starting around Bonanza and Las Vegas Boulevard, through the downtown area, all the way now to south of Charleston Boulevard. My concern is that we're going to have a swath of these, and it's going to really work as a disincentive to develop the arts and antiquing kind of district, the cabaret district, that we'd like to see in this redevelopment area. I know how important that is for you, Your Honor, and for the other members of the council. My concern is that in a planning way, that putting a concentration, increasing the concentration of these short-term rentals is going to, well, kill this idea, and I think that would be a tragedy. You know, I just moved to downtown Las Vegas, or the downtown Las Vegas area, about six months ago, I got to tell you, I love it, I love the vibrancy, I love the different mix of folks down here. I love the vibrancy, I love the different mix of folks down here. But one thing I, I would really like to do, if I can, is prop up that, those redevelopment ideas that focus on the cultural amenities of the downtown area. So thank you again for that opportunity. For the record, I'm at 1234 South Seventeenth Street.
Thank you. Farlow?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North Nineteenth Street. There's two items here. I'm not against the rezoning at all. I think it ought to be one zone. Second of all, I appreciate the applicant for all the money and the ways fixed up this property. But the third thing is, and I can't, Commissioner Evans expressed it very eloquently, and I concur with him completely, that, that, that the special use permit should be denied. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then. Mayor Protam? Did you want to have anything additional you'd like to say?
Yes, I would. I would like to set the record straight as far as what was represented to me from my client in our meeting with Mayor Protam Reese. Cindy came to the site. We showed her the lobby, we showed her the rooms, we gave her an extensive tour of the entire facility. We had the distinct impression when she left, that she was leaning towards a favorable impression of what we're trying to accomplish. We did not mean to represent that she was going to be totally supportive, but that she left with us, left us with the feeling that she was inclined to be supportive today to adding the monthly rentals to this property. Now, that was what was conveyed to me from my client, and I believe that was exactly the impression that she left after she left the meeting. She has it in her mind that once this is granted, it can never be rescinded. And I do not believe that's the, the impression that you gave me, Mayor Protam, that we asked for a six-month trial to see how it would work, and that's what we have asked you to, to consider. Give us six months to show that we're not going to have an adult cabaret, sorry, Mayor, a, any kind of illicit behavior, either drugs or prostitution, in this motel at all. What they stated is true. My clients have invested over a million dollars into this property. They're having a very tough time competing with the downtown areas, where the El Cortez is giving rooms for $9.95 a night, but they've got a casino, and they've got buffets and things to offset those costs. We don't. We're just simply a quality-in-franchise motel, looking for a way that we can offer rooms for people that are coming to work in the city center and finish that up, that are here during the week, and they leave and go home on the weekends, and to do that type of thing, so that we can help make it over this very difficult period of time. But I did not want to leave the impression with you that we wanted to misrepresent them. If Cindy changed her mind from the time she left our meeting, and when she talked with you, that's something that was out of our control. That was the impression that she left us with.
Well, I'm not, I'm going to get into an argument with you, either one of you. I respect you too much for that. You left a distinctive impression with me that Cindy Funkhauser was supporting this project.
Yeah, your Ben Moshe, I'm the owner of the property, 2286 Trafalgar Court, Henderson, Nevada, 89074. I was the one that revealed the information to you, and I met with Cindy and another guy by the name Steve. When they visit the property, and I walk them through the lobby and the rooms, and I show them what I have done to the property, they left me with an impression that they changed their mind, especially Steve. And what she told me is, if I would consider reviewing that within six months. That came from her. And I said, absolutely. Then she asked me if she can look at my books and see the franchise agreement, and I agreed to that as well. She didn't show up next day to look at the book. She did call in, but I left with an impression that they have changed their minds since they visit the site. And I think I indicate, sorry, I think I indicate to you, please visit my site, I think you'll change your mind, too, after you see what we have done to it, and you concur on that.
I went down and looked at it.
And I think, and I'm sorry if I misled you, but that's the impression I left with.
That's fine.
And I have no intention, I knew that they would show up today if they were against it. Why would I tell you something?
Apparently Cindy changed her mind, which ladies have that prerogative to do, so thank you very much.
I would like just to address one more thing, sir. I'm concerned about the same concern that they have, and I 100% agree with them. I'm running a hotel right now, and I'm on site every day. And I indicated in the past, I am a developer in town, and I bought this property for the future, and I'm going to redevelop that property when the time comes. Unfortunately, we're going through some crisis now, and I don't need to repeat this whole thing. However, my intention is to keep that place clean as possible. The fact is that there is prostitution today in other hotels, there is drugs in other hotels. Doesn't prevent, doesn't stop them from happening, and it doesn't happen in my place. Why a monthly will bring it in if I don't allow it today? What is the difference from a guy to walk in and stay in my hotel for three weeks, or one week, which I'm allowed to do without any consent, and he will do it if he will stay for a month? It's up to the management. I'm obeying Choice Hotels' rules and regulations. I'm keeping the property clean. Nobody comes in cash, only credit card and an ID, valid ID. So we screen our customers. There is no way that I would allow rooms with plasma TV and brand-new bedding to be trashed. I have no intention, the only concern I have is to keep my property open and keep my doors open, so I can pay my bills. I don't know if that's 100% going to save me, but that's one way that I can take, that one route that I can take to bring more income. It's not a matter of making more profit, it's a matter of stop bleeding. At this point, we are bleeding. I'm open to do 30 days inspection, 60 days, 90 days, six months, anything that the neighbor would like to do with me, I'm open. They even offered me to come and do some art explanation, so I'm agreed to do that as well. I mean, anything that they want me to cooperate with, I'm willing. I'm going to keep that property clean, because that's the only way I can keep the value. I'm not leasing the space, and I have no intention to keep it clean. It is my property, I invested my money in there, I have a lot of money invested in there, and I intend to keep it clean.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your Honor, you know, I certainly appreciate the gentleman coming up and giving us his rendition of what happened. I can certainly appreciate that. You know, we, we've been very supportive of those entrepreneurs, those peoples come in and trying to do something in the, the arts district. I understand this is on Las Vegas Boulevard, has Las Vegas Boulevard address. I've always maintained that we try to listen to the residents that work in the area, live in the area, have properties in the area. Sometimes it's really hard to make a decision, not basically how I feel or why I feel the way I do, but as you can see, we have nobody here except yourselves in favor of this, this project. So therefore, Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion for item 68, for approval of that item, all conditions.
All right, let's vote on that, please.
And...
Wait, what's, hold on. Post? Motion carries.
And item 69, I appreciate the residents coming down, and I voice their opinion, and those calls that I, I received, the emails I received, I want that in the record also. I am going to make a motion to follow the planning commission's recommendation for doing now this item, and that's my motion, Your Honor.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Let me just say this from my perspective, what I would like to see happen, because the folks who spoke here this morning, they're the heart and soul of what we're trying to accomplish, as far as the private sector in the downtown, and we listen very carefully to you. But at the same time, this gentleman made a very compelling presentation, where he says he will open himself up to you and your comments and your criticisms. He runs a good shop there now, and I would hate for him to go out of business because of the economic times. So I would hope, with your intelligence and his intentions and intelligence, that you do get together and he could come back to us at some later time and seek this kind of relief. And I think that if the neighbors were in favor of the project, that perhaps it could turn out differently. We don't want to see anybody go out of business here. We really don't. So I, I hope you listen to what I suggest, because I think it's in everybody's best interest. It's a very clean place, it's a, it's a nice place, and I'd hate to see it deteriorate because of the economy. All right, thank you.
Could I ask one question, please?
Sure.
Margot, what would be the time before we could reapply for a similar use?
One year.
One year?
Be a year.
Well, there are, there are other ways that could happen, too, though. I mean, if, if the neighbors came to us, or came to the Mayor Protam and made a compelling presentation to him, somebody who voted against the project could move to rescind, and we could reconsider it.
That's correct, Your Honor.
That could, that could take place as well. I just think there, there are too many nice people involved in this one. No one, no one's a winner on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'd like to, I'd like to obey items 70 and 71.
All right, to when?
Till our December 16th, 2009 meeting.
Okay, there's a motion to obey on 70 and 71. Let's vote on that, please. Post?
December the 16th.
All right, motion carries. 72 and 73. 72 is VAR 35754, request for variance to allow 19 parking spaces, where 26 parking spaces are required for proposed government facility of fire station. And 73 is SDR 35751, request for site development plan for a proposed 7,600 square-foot government facility of fire station, with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer between the sidewalk and back of curb, where five feet is required along arterial streets 100 feet in wire, which is Bonanza Road. The applicant owner is the City of Las Vegas, the project is located on 1.45 acres at 4551 East Bonanza Road. The planning commission staff recommend approval of both of these items. The items are in Ward 3. They're public hearings, which I now declare open. Mr. Tolman?
Sam Tolman, with Public Works, Your Honor, and Mayor Protam and Council. We agree with staff recommendations, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Are there any questions of Mr. Tolman at this time?
Show us what we have down there, Sam. You got any pictures or something?
Yep.
At least the computers, we don't even see the pictures.
They were submitted with the SDR, and we didn't get this far. This is the, the overall building.
So we're deviating from the cookie cutter type?
It's basically the same plan. The colors changed depending where we put them, but it's basically the same plan as the 107 and 106. Tried to tie into the neighborhood. These are the elevations. If you can see the...
What?
And the... Only goes over, and the site, the plan we submitted with SDR was colored, but I don't have that, that's, has been submitted, but this is the, this is Page, and this is Bonanza.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, we got one down here.
Yes.
They came, I have a question. I see a staff recommends approval, and I'm a little confused, Director, if you can help me. This is a parking variance. When has staff ever recommended approval of a parking variance?
Mayor and Council, when a compelling argument is made, that the use that will be conducted here is one that the number of persons utilizing the facility and the hours that they do so are such that the lesser number of parking spaces are acceptable.
All right, just checking, Director. You know, I am about parking...
I'm here for you, sir. And there you have the color plans that are in the system.
All right, it's a public hearing, folks. If any of them would like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then.
It's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful rendering, Sam. Thank you for showing it to us.
Thank you.
I welcome this fire station in Ward 3, especially down there on East Bonanza, where we need that kind of development.
It's going to help the response times for the residents as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. On the variance, as Councilman Ross very graciously asked that question for me, I'd like a motion for approval of that item with all conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries.
And item 73, site development review, we got to see what we're building down there. There's going to be a fire station, we are going to be able to save response time, so my motion is for, to follow the planning commission's staff's recommendation, approve this item with all conditions.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Your Honor and Council.
75 is SUP 35739, special use permit. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant is Shree Sanis, DC. The owner is T.I.H. Peak LLC et al. Request for special use permit for a proposed 2,800 square-foot massage establishment, with waivers to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a city park, where 400 feet is required, and a 270-foot distance separation from another massage establishment, where 1,000 feet is required, at 7250 Peak Drive at Suite 106. This is in Ward 4, and this is going to be heard in conjunction with the morning item, which is 43. 43 is discussion and possible action regarding a review of conditions for massage establishment, the license subject to provisions of the planning codes. Chiropractic Healing Center Unlimited, Inc., doing business as Chiropractic Healing Center at 7250 Peak Drive, Suite 106. The 75 is the public hearing, which I now declare open. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions. So, Mr. DeFiori, why don't we hear from you, and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Mayor, members of the council, actually, I would like to recommend we hear about the special use permit first, because my recommendation will be based upon those conditions.
All right, would you like to be heard?
Shree Sanis Johnson, 7250 Peak Drive, and I've been here for seven years, and just want to continue operating the way I did before, some changes were made this year.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions of Ms. Sanis? Okay, it's a public hearing, folks. Would anyone like to be heard on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then, and we'll now hear from Mr. DeFiori.
Okay. In June of this year, the council approved the massage establishment license as an ancillary use to the business operation that she has for her chiropractic business. In doing so, the limitations on an ancillary massage establishment include that it would be less than 150 square feet devoted to massage, it would be only during the hours of operation for the chiropractic business, and there were some limitations on the advertising. With council now approving the special use permit for this location, we'll ask for a review of the conditions to remove those conditions on the ancillary massage, and adopt any conditions that they may have that are included in the special use permit approval.
All right. Any questions of Mr. DeFiori? Ma'am, did you understand what?
Yes.
Mr. DeFiori, are you in agreeance?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, the public hearing is closed then, and Mayor Protam, is this yours? No, Councilman Anthony.
Which item are we on?
This is on 75.
Okay, move for approval.
All right, let's vote. Post? Motion carries, and on 43.
Move for approval.
Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you for your patience. Item 77 is SDR 32534, site development plan review. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant owner is MFE Inc. Request for a major amendment to improve site development plan review for a proposed 3,600 square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps, and 1,300 square feet of retail, with waivers of the town center commercial development, landscape, and streetscape standards, where a 3,500 square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps was approved on 1.12 acres at the southwest corner of Tenaya Way and Azure Drive. This is in Ward 6, and this application has been amended for proposed 3,334 square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps and 1,665 square feet of retail, where a 3,500 square-foot convenience store with fuel pumps was approved. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions of public hearing, which is now open. Yes, ma'am?
All right, Jimmy Isley, 2111 Edgewood Avenue, GK3 Architecture. We have respectfully asked for your approval today of our plan. We did meet with the neighbors, and they were very curious what was going to happen on the site. They were happy with the building placement, and we're very happy to accommodate the conditions they requested at our neighborhood meeting we had in October. So I certainly can answer any questions, and we, again, respectfully ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the young lady? All right, folks, a public... Thank you. Are there any questions of the young lady? All right, folks, a public hearing.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Can we see the elevations on this? I have in my notes that they were quite nice.
And there is also color elevations that were submitted previously, but here is a black and white copy.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilman Ross, your pleasure.
Thank you, Your Honor. Are you the young lady that went out there, met with all my friends in that neighborhood?
I certainly was.
I don't think curious was what they were, was how they were acting. I think concerned is how they were acting.
Yes, I think that they had spent a lot of time working with the previous developer and just was nervous not knowing who we were, so.
They did. They worked very closely with the previous developer, who had some entitlements on this parcel. I need to ask you a question, because I haven't had a chance to ask you anything.
Okay.
Are you going to, are they going to build this?
I think so. They're really gung ho. They've gotten their franchisee agreements in place, so he's really hot and heavy to finally start building something.
Well, as the city councilman represents that area, I'm kind of hot and heavy to get some good economic...
I understand.
Economy and volume and businesses going up that corridor right there. That's important to me, that those businesses survive and this store gets built. So I appreciate your efforts in going out to do that with the neighborhood. Director, are we good on all the conditions?
Uh, yes, sir.
And with that, Your Honor, I would move to follow planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item seventy-seven.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Item seventy-eight is, I would like to ask Ms. Bridges to please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. Now we have citizens' participation. Citizens' participation. These items have to be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. Those subjects may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. Please come up to the podium, give us your name. We'll put the three-minute timer on and be happy to hear from you.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Deanne Wiesner, your right, seven oh two, seven eight seven zero 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 two. I represent a class of mothers whose children have been abused and neglected and continue being abused and neglected, to the point of wrongful deaths, which, as you all have been noticed, is up two hundred percent since we filed a police report with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department regarding the crimes to our children. That was filed January fifth, two thousand and nine, a report number fifteen ninety. We find it very curious that you seem to be spending a lot of your time dealing with civil litigation and using our tax dollars in civil litigation because of you and your staff's malpractices, yet you are not giving any attention to the criminal litigation against you. And that criminal litigation is naming you as participating in those wrongful deaths and the abuse and neglect of our children. We are here publicly renoticing you, and your attorney, Brad Sherbig, has been noticed, your general counsel, rather, that you are not to hide, conceal, or transfer any private, public, or personal property. We are now attaching damages to your personal property because we did get a favorable ruling in the Ninth Circuit in the case of Abdullah Elkid, who is a Las Vegas resident. At the time, crimes were committed to him also by the leadership of the Las Vegas City Council, and that case is against Attorney General, the United States Attorney General Ashcroft et al. The authority we come to you this day on will be explained tomorrow in the Las Vegas Sun. You may wish to read more about it. We also demand that you summon Sheriff Gillespie and find out why his abuse and neglect unit is not investigating the crimes to our children. We also ask that Sheriff Gillespie, when he is summoned, conduct due diligence and tell you that he has not been investigating children's crimes for nine years, which has been documented and evidenced in discovery. And finally, we demand that you contact Andrea Beckman of the Citizens Review Board and find out why her board is not contacting us parents with abused children in the decisions of the board.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Rasan Joshua Collins, activist for the homeless and for the protection of children also. And I'd just like to remind the city council that under Nevada law statute chapter two oh one, we're supposed to uphold good moral and public decency. Every time I ask the city council about that chapter of law, they seem not to remember that. And under NRS one ninety-six is treason if you don't do so. And under NRS two oh one dot oh nine oh, contributing to delinquency and neglect of children, uh, delinquent, it basically means habitually using intoxicating liquor or drugs, rude or immoral life, vile, obscene, profane, or indecent language, or guilty of indecent, immoral, lascivious conduct, or violate state law. And since sin city is promoting a sin every day, you're daily contributing to the delinquency and neglect of children worldwide, and that's going to bring judgment on the persons involved, and hell is very real. And I just encourage the city council to think about their eternal destinies. There's a lot of other Bible, of course, verses that talk about heaven and hell, and the need to turn away from sexual sin and to be sober, and, you know, holy. And we're in the last days. I'm also concerned about the abuse of the homeless as well. A lot of them are locked up and arrested, and I see a lot of approval of sin and, you know, the, what are those, I don't want to use the words they used earlier, but the strip clubs, and also, but then at the same time, they will abuse the poor and lock them up and put them in jail. We shouldn't be approving things that God doesn't approve. You know, this was a Christian nation in the beginning, and I pray it comes back. And I just encourage people out there that are listening to pray for the Lord, to just continue to bring this nation back to Him. I encourage you to speak out and draw people to the Lord, those of you that believe in Christ. And don't be a hypocrite, you know, because He says hypocrites aren't going up. And we need to really live this thing. Don't put money before God, you know. Real quickly, I'll just read a verse out of here for you. Gee, well, Jesus says in Matthew, chapter twenty-one, I believe it is. Let me look here. That, you know, tells the, let me see if I got it here. Where are we at? You know, in verse thirty-seven, well, we'll go to twenty-one. You know, twenty-one, verse thirteen, it says, "He has said to them, 'It is written my house should be called the House of Prayer, but you made it a den of thieves.'" And that's what the world is supposed to be, is a house of prayer focused on God, and it hasn't become that. And recently, just so you know, I was arrested at the Salvation Army for reading the Bible in the chapel, and Judge DeSaw gave me over four months in jail for that. And I really believe that, you know, he's guilty of many crimes against the poor, locking them up for sleeping outside and that kind of thing. And we need judges that will put God first, so I just encourage people to investigate the laws and to speak out. Thank you.
Next, please. Mr. Camacho.
Yes, Mr. Reese. Hector Camacho. I came to here to ask Mr. Goodman, but I left copy to everybody, to the city council, and to ask him why I applied for a business license on April twenty-first. And I got everything I needed to get that business license. That place, it was zoning for auto mechanic repair. The person, it was before my tenant, it was for the auto repair. And I still, today, I don't got no answer for the fire department, why they denied the license, because according by the business license, I work with Susie Martinez. The only thing I needed is certificate occupancy. I provided certificate occupancy. The same person has told me, given the deny for the license, isn't one, he signed it two weeks before I applied for the license. He signed for the certificate occupancy. I left him in your office. I gave it to the business license. I gave it to the fire department up to today. It's no response. And the person, Larry Kussler, is the same person four years ago, you know, as the ghost followed me, because I made a complaint, the building department. And I believe that you people clean the building department, forcing the director of building department to retire three years early. The only thing I came to ask him, like Mr. Goodman said, they not putting people out of business. The economy is tough, okay? I going through hell. The only thing I asked him is to get my license. You leave me alone. I comply with everything. If you treat me nice, I treat you the same way. But you, I made a complaint, and I try, and I believe in the office of the city manager, you need to be changed to oversee the other department. It's lousy the way they doing. And I asked him to everybody, before you leave a post, to try to help people, not to damage, okay? Because it's not only me. And you know how many people calling you, complaining to fire department, because they are tough. They not helping people. The economy is bad. People don't eat it. I hope you can, and I take anybody to talk to the people today. Lot of kid today, he working eating just eggs and a couple, and a little, a little bit of rice. You need to put people back to work, not to damage. The only thing I asked him, and I got held respect for you, Mr. Reese, because you did a lot of good things for the city of Las Vegas, but I still, I don't have no answer. I went with Susie Martinez to the business license a couple of days ago. People in the business license is the nicest people you can meet. They give me excuse. They can't tell me. I ask them for something and write, and they can't tell me, because the only thing they show on their computer is a certificate occupancy. I give it. Why still? What I complained, they sent, I asked them to help in the city manager's office. What happened? They sent the Ramon Torres with Tony Specter. What happened after that one? I lost the tenant. People is scared. And I showed, I made a Susie to talk to my tenants, okay? I just, I want a piece with the city of Las Vegas. I don't want people, some people in the back to take a revenge. Like I say, you got a lot of nice people, but I hope you can do something to try to prevent all the trouble and to help people to go open a business and go back to work.
We can't take any action on what you're talking about here today. If you'll stick around for a minute, I'll make a few comments on where we have, where we can speak on these items, okay?
I left, I know that's a public record. I left, I left copy to everybody today. That way they can look at it. I hope they can do something good for the city before you, everybody leaving office. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. I guess he doesn't want to hear my comments.
Mike Brew, owner of Las Vegas Water and Power. I just wanted to make it a public record that Las Vegas, Southern Nevada Water Authority, had been offered the water from underneath the Colorado River, where there's thirty times the amount of water flows below the Colorado River, then above it. And they denied it because they said that they bought their water up north already. And since there's thirty times the amount of water underneath the Colorado River, then above it, and the U.S. Department of the Interior has already approved the NEPA reports for the area right there by Pabco in Colville Bay, that someone that would be interested in developing water, since there is no water developing companies like Southern Nevada Water Authority, they don't develop water. They buy water rights. USGS, they don't develop water. They get hired to produce water. There is no companies out there that go out and drill and produce water. And I was wondering if the city of Las Vegas would be interested in providing a report that proves that there's water underneath the Lake Mead area. The thirty times the amount of water flows underneath the Lake Mead, there's water that comes out of Thousand Palms through Primm, which has never, ever been a study done on that at all. From the USGS, you could ask Dan Bright, no one has ever went to the USGS and asked for a report to be done. Why is there so much water here in the Las Vegas Valley? Because it comes out of Primm? It's never been done. Why, how much water comes out of Nevada and through Utah and Colorado due to Las Vegas lava trench? It's that lava mountain that goes from Thousand Palms, California, through Primm, to Boulder City, into Colorado, and up into Utah. It funnels all the water from four states to Las Vegas. That's four states of water, all flows to Las Vegas. And how could we say that there's no water here? Where if you dig a hole on, right there by Sunset Park, you go five feet underneath, you're going to be in the water table. On the strip, twenty feet. Why? Because no one's ever did five twenty-three, one six five duty studies and inventory. The state engineer shall conduct necessary studies and inventories of the state's water, which has never been done. He's also supposed to contact, like when I talked to him, I wanted to put a water company out by the lake. He's supposed to contact the USGS and all water development. Never talked to Dan Bright about that either. So how could we possibly have water here in Las Vegas if no one is in charge or develops water or is even interested in water? And I'm asking you guys, would someone be interested in developing water? It costs five hundred bucks, send it over to the water quality, and we can drill a well. They'll ask for your water quality report, you send them five hundred bucks, we can drill tomorrow and prove that there's water there. But who's going to come up with the five hundred bucks? I don't see anybody interested. Thirty thousand dollars for the well. I don't see anybody interested in putting up thirty grand for a well. I can put eight wells in between Pabco, on the power line road that goes to Colville Bay.
Sir, I'm going to have to cut you out, please. Your time's up.
What's that?
Your time's up.
All right. Well, if you guys are interested in water, there's thirty times the amount of water flows below the Colorado River and above it.
Thank you, sir.
And here's my name and address. And if you guys are interested in water, anytime. There's plenty of water underneath the lake. All you do is have to develop it.
Thank you, sir. Any others to speak on this side? Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is Evo Ivo Plejko, P-L-E-C-K-O, founder of Peters LLC, P-I-T-E-R-S LLC. I want to make a short progress report on the Peters Home Project for affordable housing for poor, disabled, homeless, students, veterans, and seniors. In a very short time, probably before the end of this month, the local manufacturer will put together a prototype unit based on the design the local manufacturing company is working on. And at that time, you will receive an invitation to visit the plant and have a discussion what can be done in the future. Second, the second phase will be then coming from Slovenia, and I just received from the Ministry of Economy, from the minister, encouraging information that the Slovenians and manufacturers over there will also contribute on the second phase, which will deal on the total solar-powered housing unit. All I want now is to be aware, and if you have any questions, please address them to the email, PetersHome, P-I-T-E-R-S-H-O-M-E at gmail dot com. And developments and progress will be posted on the website, PetersHome, P-I-T-E-R-S-H-O-M-E dot W-E-B-S dot C-O-M. I hope that things will start now when we are entering the next ten-year homeless plans in action, that we can contribute the issue on the housing affordability.
Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Uh, our next item is council member recognition, comments made by the individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on agenda and scheduled for action. Mr. Klein, could you please come forward? Mr. Klein? I don't think we're taking any action here, Mr. Scott, Mr. Lewis.
As long as you're not deliberating or voting on anything, Councilman.
No, all I want to do is have Mr. Klein just give a quick dissertation about why Mr. Camacho was here today, if you would, please.
Yes, sir. David Klein, Deputy Fire Marshal, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. Mr. Camacho has a couple outstanding business license due to non-compliance issues in his properties, particularly forty-five sixty-one East Bonanza. There are items within the suites themselves that the individuals, the tenant holders are handling, and there are specific site requirements that are not being complied with at this time. Excuse me. In general, we've had a long-term, long outstanding history of non-compliance issues for many, many years with this gentleman. This is just one more in many, many issues we've had with him, with the property.
Thank you. That's fine. I just, I just want to reiterate also that, you know, my offices work very, very closely with Mr. Camacho. Susie Martinez has spent many, many, many hours working with him, and it seems like that if we don't agree, then we're wrong. And no matter what he does, he's right. And we just, we just agree to disagree, I guess. He just, he just will not comply with the rules and regulations that he's supposed to follow. to follow. And how you get somebody like that to do it, I have no idea because we've tried just about everything, so, thank you very much, Dave.
Yes.
Any other council members have anything to add today? Thanks, Dave.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, three weeks to Thanksgiving. Okay, here now, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.